Live from Burbank, the media capital of the world.
To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes, dependent on the number of speakers.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome from our first meeting, both part of the council and the city of Burbank and part of us here in our nation's capital. Welcome to a regular meeting of the Burbank City Council. Tonight is Tuesday, February 27, 2024. Before we begin, I'd like to make a brief programming announcement. As you can see, I am joining remotely this evening because I am currently in our nation's capital attending the American Public Power Association Annual Legislative Rally. I currently serve on the APPA Policymakers Council on behalf of the City of Burbank and Burbank Water and Power. I should note that teleconferencing for public meetings is allowed based on Assembly Bill 2449, which was passed on September 13, 2022. It permits teleconferencing for public meetings if there is just cause or emergency circumstances to justify teleconferencing. This evening, I would like to at the outset thank Vice Mayor Perez, who will be ready and willing to step in and administer the meeting should I lose connectivity. She'll also be playing a role in handling several duties tonight. So Vice Mayor, thank you very much for your help tonight. Now, before we begin, I would ask that the community join us for our usual moment of reflection. This moment is intended to begin our meeting with a positive and collective support and spirit of our beloved community that we all call home. The city council welcomes everyone joining us this evening, both in person and remotely. We encourage you right now to take a moment to reflect on our community and the work that we will be doing together tonight. Although each of us has our own unique reasons for being here, we're united in our shared passion and love for this wonderful city. And as we pause, let us consider each of our individual contributions and what it means to those around us. Let us find comfort and solace in knowing that by working together with a shared spirit of community and partnership, we will always act responsibly for the betterment of Burbank. I also ask, in a most sorrowful note, that is part of tonight's moment of reflection, that we remember and honor the memory of one of our own, our beloved city employee Marcos Gonzalez, who passed away this weekend. Marcos served the city of Burbank for over eighteen years, most recently as the city's housing development manager. Marcos was a valuable member of our city family, a dear friend to so many, and a devoted father and husband. His dedication to serving our community was unmatched, and his absence leaves a void, a hole in our hearts that can't be easily filled. Let's take this moment to remember everything that was wonderful about Marcos and to keep his kind and gentle spirit alive in all of our hearts. Marcos, we love you and we miss you, and our hearts go out to your family at this most difficult time. Vice Mayor, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance by standing.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Madam City Clerk, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can, Mr. Mayor.
Standing. Please conduct the roll call.
Councilmember Anthony.
Here.
Councilmember Mullins.
Here.
Noting the absence of Councilmember Takahashi, Vice Mayor Perez.
Here.
And Mayor Schultz.
Present.
Thank you.
I would also like the community to know that Councilmember Takahashi is feeling ill tonight. She's watching from home and she sends her regards, but I wanted folks to know that she's at every meeting and she would be here but for not feeling well. So we wish her a full and speedy recovery. We would like to advise the community that there will be five, you heard me correctly, five periods of public comment this evening. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public comment period, as well as the public comment periods for both of tonight's public hearings. Additional in-person-only public comment will be available after both of the reports to council. Now, the first general public comment period is for any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda item except for both of the public hearings tonight. If you'd like to provide a public comment by phone, please call right now at 818-238-3335. The second and the third public comment periods, which have both in-person and telephonic options, are for tonight's public hearings. To comment by phone, please call when the public hearing begins and we'll be sure to signal you when is the appropriate time to call in. The fourth and fifth public comment periods tonight will immediately follow both reports to council, and again, those will only be available in person. Next, we have several announcements this evening. So let's go ahead and roll the tape. So, the first announcement is an adjournment this evening. I'd like to mention that the city council will be adjourning in the memory of City of Burbank resident and Veterans Committee Member Pat Wamsley. Ms. Wamsley was a member and a patriotic soloist of the City of Burbank's Veterans Committee, a lifetime member and patriotic soloist of Southern California Motion Picture Council, a recipient of the SCMPC President's Award in June of 2007 and again in March of 2016. She was a member of Media Focus and Cowboy Social Club and was Secretary of the San Fernando Valley Business and Professional Association. Pat was a member of Beta Sigma Phi International Sorority, American Business Women's Association, Society of Singers, and was elected as a member of the 43rd Assembly District Republican Party County Central Committee in 1996. Pat served as chairman of the Community Affairs Committee of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce in 1980, and she earned certificates as Certified Employment Counselor with the State of California and Immediate Care of the Sick and Injured with the South Bay Hospital in Torrance. Ms. Wamsley is a native Californian, attending schools in Burbank, graduating from John Burrows High School, and was one of the vocalists in the treble clef octave at Glendale College. Pat sang in the Glendale Symphonic Choir under the direction of Leo Damiani and in 1985, in the Billy Graham Choir at Anaheim Stadium. Pat retired from Horus Height Productions. She has three children, twelve grandchildren, nineteen great-grandchildren, and four great-great-grandchildren. Ms. Wamsley was a dedicated member of the Burbank Veterans Committee for so many years, and she added so much heart and character to each of our events that we would hold on Memorial Day and Veterans Day. I know she helped plant many of those occasions and those ceremonies, and suffice it to say that she will very much be missed this year and moving forward. And our heart goes out to the family and her loved ones. If staff would now roll the tape for the remaining announcements.
Following our announcements for February 27, 2024. Planning a trip this summer? The Burbank City Clerk's Office will offer walk-in passport processing in addition to scheduled appointments during BUSD and LAUSD spring breaks to help families get travel ready. Walk-in hours are available from March 18 through March 29, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, at the Burbank City Hall Passport Facility at 275 East Olive Avenue. For more information, please visit burbankca.gov/passport or call the City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851. The Burbank City Clerk's Office would like to remind residents and candidates that candidates are prohibited from placing election signage on private property without permission of the owner and are prohibited from placing signage on any public property, including the public right-of-way. To report violations, please contact the City Clerk's Office at cityclerks@burbankca.gov or by calling 818-238-5851. The presidential primary election will be held on Tuesday, March 5. All registered Burbank voters should have received their official sample ballot booklets and their mail-in ballots. There are four 24-hour vote-by-mail drop boxes at the following locations: Burbank City Hall, Buena Vista Library, Jocelyn Adult Center, and Ralphoi Park. The 11-day Vote Center at the Magnolia Park United Methodist Church is now open, and the four-day Vote Centers located at the Buena Vista Library, Courtyard Marriott Los Angeles Burbank Airport, and McCambridge Recreation Center will open on March 2. Eligible voters who miss the deadline to register to vote in this election can still register as a conditional voter at any vote center in Los Angeles County. Questions regarding voter registration and the issuance of ballots can be addressed by contacting the county at 800-815-2666 or by visiting lavote.gov for more information. You can also contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office at cityclerks@burbankca.gov or by calling 818-238-5851. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for one vacancy on the Planning Commission for an unexpired term ending July 31, 2027. The deadline to apply is Monday, March 25 at 5:00 p.m. If interested, apply online at burbankca.gov/bccapplication. For more information, please contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov. The Burbank Parks and Recreation Department will celebrate Older Americans Month in May by recognizing up to three exceptional volunteers with the Peter McGrath Older Americans Volunteer Service Award. This award, renamed in 2021, honors Mr. McGrath's legacy as a respected Burbank resident known for his extensive community involvement. Nominee should be sixty or older or Burbank resident and should have a noteworthy record of volunteerism. Nominations close on March 1. Learn more by visiting burbankca.gov/adults55. Join us for an exciting informational meeting about the Dick Clark Dog Park. Discover the features that will make this dog park possible. Find out more by visiting burbankca.gov/parksandrec. The Community Development Department invites you to join us for a community meeting regarding ongoing work on the firearm and ammunition retail uses zone text amendment. The meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 11 at 6:00 p.m. at the city's Community Services Building, Room 104. City staff will present an overview of the draft standards and will be available for comments. Join us to provide your feedback and ask questions of staff. No decisions will be made at this informational meeting. For more information, please visit the city's calendar webpage or contact the project planner Xavier Thomas. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
Wonderful. Thank you, staff. At this time, I'd like to turn things over to Vice Mayor Perez for our two council presentations tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have two council presentations on the agenda. Our first presentation this evening is a proclamation declaring March 1 through 31st, 2024, Women's History Month in the City of Burbank. And just to say a few words about that, I'm truly honored to present this proclamation tonight, and I'm filled with gratitude to the many women that served the city of Burbank. This past election, our city made history with the election of Burbank's first majority female council. And in thinking about what to say today, you know, I thought about including some statistics about women in government, and I'm pleased to say what I found was very positive. Roughly 50% of Californians are women, and 50% of the state legislature is also female. And roughly 50% of Burbank residents are female, and 71% of our elected officials, as you can see in the room, are female, which is a stark contrast to a few years ago. So I think we're doing pretty well for ourselves, ladies. And all that to say, representation is important because our young women and our children are watching. And in the good words of our First Lady Jill Biden, "Every little girl must know that she belongs in all places of power, that her boldness is beautiful, that her body is her own, and her future can be anything she wants it to be." So tonight, on behalf of the Burbank City Council, we would like to dedicate this proclamation right here to all of the women who are making history and paving the way for our future generations. And now bear with me because I have to read the proclamation. So, whereas Women's History Month had its origins as a national celebration in 1981 when Congress passed Public Law 9728, which authorized and requested the president to proclaim the week beginning March 7, 1982, as Women's History Week, and throughout the next five years, Congress continued to pass joint resolutions designating a week in March as Women's History Week, and in 1987, after being petitioned by the National Women's History Project, Congress passed Public Law 109, which designated the month of March 1987 as Women's History Month. And, "American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways." And, "Whereas, American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and especially the peace movement, which created a more fair and just society for all." And, "Whereas, each year, Women's History Month offers an important opportunity for us to shine a light on the extraordinary legacy of trailblazing American women and girls who have built, shaped, and improved upon our nation. I, Nikki Perez, Vice Mayor of the City of Burbank, on behalf of Nick Schultz, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim March 1 through 31st, 2024, as Women's History Month in the City of Burbank. The Council of the City of Burbank commemorates and encourages the study, observance, and celebration of the vital role of women in American history." Can I get all the elected women in the city present to come down and take a picture?
I know when I'm not needed.
All right. Is this on? Thank you. Now I get what he means by the back and forth. It is, it is work. Alrighty. So, our next presentation this evening is a proclamation declaring March 1 through 31st, 2024, Procurement Month in the City of Burbank. And, it quite frankly fits perfectly in our theme of Women's History Month, as all of our staff members on that procurement team are women. So, come on up, everybody, and I will invite Financial Services Director Jennifer Becker to join me.
Good evening, everyone. Jennifer Becker, I'm the Financial Services Director. I am pleased to recognize for the very first time National Procurement Month. The Institute for Public Procurement has proclaimed the month of March as Procurement Month to further expand the awareness of the procurement professional's role to government officials, the general public, and businesses and corporate leaders. And it's also a time to recognize those in the industry for all the hard work that they do and the impact that they have on society. Public procurement is responsible for ethically sourcing contracts and purchases that benefit the public. And, in fact, they operate at the local, state, and federal levels, accounting for $4.5 trillion per year in government spending, representing around 13% to 20% of US GDP. So, it's a big role that they play in our society. Here in Burbank, we have a total of eight individuals who make up our procurement team, and this team works as partners for all of our 15 city departments, doing everything from buying office supplies, procuring vehicles, assisting with RFPs for professional services, and bidding out large public construction contracts. Roughly 60% of the city's annual expenditures pass directly through this office, which makes it an extremely busy and fast-paced environment, and I'm incredibly grateful for the work that they do to maximize the value of our public dollars. So, it's a great opportunity for me here to recognize our team, and I'll go ahead and introduce them if you don't mind. Our buyer one, Claudia Semenkes. Thank you. Account Clerk Angine Petrosian. Buyer two, Lisa Villegas. Clerical Worker Lulu Cornelius. Buyer two, Karen Little. And Purchasing Manager Alisa DeJoyos. So, thank you all for being here. And I apologize, Lisa, I got your title wrong. She's our senior buyer.
Alrighty. Thank you, Jennifer. And as you all heard, these ladies are doing a very important job for our city. So, we're grateful to all that they do, and now I have another proclamation to read for all of you. This one's shorter, I promise. All right. So, "Whereas, the public procurement and contracting professions play a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business, and whereas the city's public procurement professionals dedicate themselves to providing the best value for every taxpayer dollar as they adhere to public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency established by the Institute for Public Procurement as fundamental tenets of the public procurement profession, and whereas in addition to the purchase of goods and services, the city's public procurement professionals add value to the agency by performing functions such as executing and implementing contracts, developing strategic procurement strategies, cultivating working relationships with suppliers and other departments within the agency while expanding their knowledge, skills, and abilities. Now, therefore, I, Nikki Perez, Vice Mayor of the City of Burbank, on behalf of Nick Schultz, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim March 1 through 31st, 2024, as Public Procurement Month in the City of Burbank. And I urge everyone in our city to join me in thanking all of these wonderful folks who make sure that our city keeps functional, and to join me in the special observance. Thank you all for what you do." So, I'm now going to hand it back to the mayor.
Okay, there we go. All right. Well, excellent job, Vice Mayor. Thank you for presenting both of those. Mr. City Manager Justin Hess, do we have anything to report on this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We do have one item to report on. I'd like to call up Marissa Garcia, our Parks and Recreation Director, and we're going to provide you a quick show and tell on the department's recent Adaptive Sports Expo at McCambridge. So, it's all yours, Marissa.
Good evening, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor present, members of the city council. My name is Marissa Garcia, and I have the honor of serving as the city's Parks and Recreation Director. I am thrilled to stand before you this evening to share news of a historic event that took place here in the city of Burbank on February 17, 2024. The city hosted the first Burbank Adaptive Sports Expo put on by the Parks and Recreation Department. This event marked a significant milestone for inclusivity and community engagement. I am proud to say that it was a resounding success. I would now like to introduce Jennifer Lev, our recreation services manager, who played a pivotal role in coordinating this extraordinary event. Jennifer will provide further insight into the significance and impact of the Burbank Adaptive Sports Expo.
Thank you, Marissa. Thank you, council members and Mayor Schultz. Like Marissa mentioned, my name is Jennifer Lev, Recreation Services Manager for the Parks and Recreation Department, and it was a labor of love and an absolute pleasure spearheading the Burbank's inaugural Adaptive Sports Expo. The initial vision and goal was to create, excuse me, initial goal was to create an event focused on adaptive sport activities in an effort to bridge together resources and showcase diverse program offerings. Early on, through discussions with the Burbank Adaptive Council on Disabilities, we connected with three organization leaders and advocates who guided us through this planning. Andrew Skinner with Triumph Foundation, Michael Rosenkranz with SoCal Adaptive Sports, Joseph Burton with Hearts for Sight were essential in this event. For our inaugural event, we activated McCambridge Park Recreation Center and the Burbank Tennis Center, and through coordination with 15 organizations, including community groups, nonprofits, and municipal partnerships, we provided 18 diverse adaptive sport activities all in one centralized event space, including wheelchair rugby, power wheelchair soccer, wheelchair basketball, para fencing, chair yoga, adaptive martial arts, visually impaired judo, visually impaired soccer, a drum circle, visually impaired baseball, adaptive disc golf, adaptive park-and-play games, adaptive golf, wheelchair tennis, adaptive pickleball, tennis for persons with Down Syndrome, tennis for persons with autism, and baccia. In addition, the event secured 19 event sponsors and boasted a popular vendor booth area. The Burbank Adaptive Sport Expo preregistered nearly 200 athletes and over 100 volunteers. On the day of the event, the park site experienced over 1,000 visitors, and the energy was electric. We are proud to say that the event was a huge success and a very proud moment for the city of Burbank. The Park and Rec Department is dedicated and continuing to champion diverse program offerings, inclusivity, and transformative power of adaptive sports in our city for our community. I'd like to take a quick minute to thank our generous event sponsors pictured on this screen here. And in addition, a big thank you to our event partners for hosting each of our sporting activities, and this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garcia, through City Manager Justin Hess. And I just want to say, as a point of personal privilege, it was a really great opportunity to be there. The turnout was really tremendous, and I hope that this will be the first year of many years of truly inclusive sports that we offer here in the city. And, Ms. Garcia, I know this is something you're very passionate about. My sincere hope is that we'll be able to work in closer partnership with the school board moving forward so that every person can play rugby or basketball and really enjoy everything that there is to offer about team sport. So, thank you to the entire Parks and Rec team for your work on this. So thank you to the entire Parks and Rec team for your work on this. Mr. City Attorney Joe McDougall, is there anything to report out from closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, for the benefit of the public, City Council met this afternoon at 4:00 PM in closed session to discuss three matters. The first matter was conference with Labor Negotiator, Management Services Director Betsy McClinton pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 concerning Burbank City Employees Association. City Council also met in one matter of anticipated litigation with the city as a potential plaintiff pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4. And City Council also met with Labor Negotiators, the mayor and vice mayor pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 concerning the city attorney terms of employment. City Council took no reportable action this evening.
Thank you, Mr. McDougall. Now is the time and place for general public comment, and for the ease of administration tonight, Vice Mayor Perez, I'm going to ask you to help with the administration of in-person comments.
Of course, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for members of the public who are here in person and wish to speak, please complete a yellow general public comment card and pass it on to our city clerk right here. And any person speaking during general public comment may address the council on any matter concerning city business except the public hearings. If you speak to the public hearing items, your comment will not be included in the public hearing record. Persons may choose to use the first period of public comment to address an agendized report but will not be able to speak on that item following this segment. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. In order to promote fairness, please stay within your maximum allotted time of three minutes. A timer is available at the podium. And for those wishing to call in during the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. Tonight, I have 21 comment cards, and our first speaker is Eddie Polan, followed by Alan Dermar Dersian. And apologies if I mispronounce your name, please feel free to correct me at the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Eddie Polan. I am a member of the Transportation Commission, also a 30-plus-year resident of our city, and as of 11 days ago, I'm a new grandparent. Commenting in favor of consent item number five, awarding a consulting contract to the Dorado Company for management of the Complete Streets Capital Improvement Projects and the NoHoT Burbank Bus Rapid Transit Project. I believe that our city has arrived at a once-in-a-generation opportunity to dramatically improve our transportation infrastructure, especially as it relates to safer streets and better public transit. At this moment, especially as we enter the final design phase of the BRT, it is essential that Burbank takes a leadership position by bringing in skilled managers to coordinate with Metro and Caltrans to ensure that our city interests are protected. These capital improvement projects, especially the BRT, will enable Burbank to continue to grow and modernize in ways that benefit current and future residents, workers, and business owners in our city. Without strong city oversight on these projects, we are likely to end up with results such as the recently completed Burbank Bridge, which while structurally sound, does not serve our community's needs. Had our planning department had a bigger say in the design and implementation of this bridge, we would have gotten a piece of infrastructure that not only served the needs of Caltrans but also met the needs of Burbank residents, workers, by offering better and safer travel within Burbank for cars, bicyclists, and pedestrians. Thank you for your consideration. I look forward to returning to council next month to discuss the tremendous opportunities that are afforded by the Burbank Rapid Transit, and also the tremendous hope that I have that this will lead to the creation of a new Olive Avenue Bridge and a new multimodal transit center that's going to connect the BRT to MetroLink, to the LoSan Train Corridor, and to hopefully to active mobility options like e-bikes. So I think we have a great thing ahead of us, and I look forward to returning. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next comment is Alan Dermar Dersian, followed by Ron Backs.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, council members and mayor. I think it was an 11th-century abbot who said, "The path to hell, the road to hell is paved with good intentions." As a resident of Country Club Drive, I think that road can be named as Olive Avenue now with the new restriping that's going on. I've been, as a resident of Country Club Drive, we have an email list, and I've been in contact with the residents of our street. No one is happy with the way it's been restripped. I reached out to some people, I've called the city engineers' office. I got a return call from someone named David, I forget his name. I've been unable to connect with him and to find any explanation as to why it was restripped that way. But furthering my investigations, I've found, you know, some reports from the city. One report I heard was concerning the noise and the speed on Olive Avenue, that it wasn't consistent with the nature of the neighborhood. It's a four-lane street, and it's part of the neighborhood. I don't know who determined it wasn't consistent, but that being said, the other reason I found was connected with the BRT project, and also something to do with the way it's going to connect, as we just heard, with the rest of the city. I don't know that those solutions are consistent with the needs of the residents of the city. It's a four-lane road. I drive it every day, and every day I wonder, "Why did they do this? And who's the person responsible for that?" I still don't have an answer. I guess I'm getting the answer here. The other thing I've heard from someone today is that there's something called the Smart Cities Program that I guess Burbank has enrolled in. I seem to remember from our PBS programs in the 80s that cities are designed around a one-hour limit, that whatever the basic means of transportation is for that city, that one hour from end to end. So back in the medieval times, people walked, so a city had to accommodate that. We live in California. It's a state build on the automobile, and we need that traffic in both lanes, two lanes each side, in order to facilitate the efficiency of traffic. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Ron Backs, followed by Linda Walmsley.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, wherever you are, Vice Mayor, members of the council, and Ms. Takahashi, I'm sorry, you're feeling under the weather. My apologies to Ms. Walmsley, her card was below me, so I expect her to be before me. You're not angry with me, are you? Okay, good. She's going to give me detention. I did not collaborate with my brother in the preparation of his presentation at the last meeting. He presented real-world cases of what I and other speakers have been hypothesizing and/or giving broad examples of over the course of the last year. He shared a client or a family member of a client's reality. He explained how AB 1482 suppressed the rental income by not allowing it to be brought to market level, which is commonly used, along with the gross rent multiplier, to determine the value of property, thereby establishing a value 30% below the market because the owner had been kind-hearted. Prior to AB 1482, a property where the rents had been maintained below the market could be brought to market level if the need arose. Now, a prudent owner should maintain market levels because no one can guarantee to be able to predict a life-changing event. He ended with, "Don't be happy, she is getting $1 million because she has a mortgage." He failed to continue with, "She surely will have capital gain taxes." I would like to add that if she has borrowed against her equity, maybe due to a loss of income during COVID, she may walk away with nothing, and few people take into account the cost basis when determining the net proceeds of a sale, which further reduces the net. And let's not forget the sales commission. Now, since I only have a minute left, I can't complete the next section, so I'm going to elaborate on these last three scenarios. The property is worth $1.4 million. She can probably sell it for $1 million. She's going to have a sales commission of $50,000, and since she's probably had a long time, she's going to have capital gains on the entire amount of $950,000. So she's probably going to have $800,000 come out of it. If she had a mortgage of $600,000, she'll get $200,000 at the end of the day. That will keep her in her assisted living for what, two years maybe? If she had $800,000, she walks away with nothing. If she had borrowed against her equity because she thought she could raise the rents at any time, she will walk, it's up to $1 million, yeah, $1 million, she owes $200,000. All right? So she has nothing. In fact, she owes the government because the IRS will be the last ones coming to get their money, and that is not going to be fun for a retired, well, for a person. Okay, I can read the last paragraph, I forgot. Oh, I'm out of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Backs. The next speaker is Linda Walmsley, followed by Dana Morris.
Good evening. Prior to my remarks, I was pleased to hear the mayor say such nice things about Pat Walmsley. While we were not related, when I was a teacher, I had the honor of having her grandchildren in my class, and I do remember her coming back and forth to pick them up from school, so it was nice to hear such kind words about her. Good evening. My name is Linda Walmsley, and I am speaking to you tonight as a homeowner and citizen that wants Burbank to continue to progress toward a future that creates sustainability and economic viability for everyone. My specific concern tonight is item five on your consent agenda. I am opposed to the dedicated bus lane on Olive as part of the BRT plan Metro is bringing to our area. It is my hope that you, my elected representatives, have had conversations with Chief Albinaz and Chief Garcia about the safety concerns that a dedicated bus lane on our major east-west corridor could create. I would also like to challenge you to let the citizens of Burbank find out exactly what a dedicated bus lane could do to traffic flow by doing a two-week trial. If you were to shut down a lane in each direction for a short time, everyone could realize exactly what this change would do to our city. Even those of you that favor this change might learn that this is a bad idea for Burbank. Thank you.
Our next speaker, folks, for the sake of time, so everybody gets a chance to speak, if we could please limit the applause or do jazz hands or something, just so everybody gets a chance to speak. I'm just asking for some cooperation here, but that's okay. Okay. So our next speaker is Dana Morris, you have three minutes, followed by Mark Scroggs.
Good evening. I am Dana Morris, a proud Burbank resident and a property manager, both commercial and residential units, almost exclusively in Burbank. As every child knows, when you squeeze a balloon in the center, the trapped air does not disappear, it just bulges at the ends. As a resident of South Keystone, I'm concerned about the natural consequences of squeezing Olive Avenue down to half its vehicle capacity in order to accommodate two lanes for the BRT bus line. My street, Keystone, is likely to experience even more cut-through traffic than it already does as drivers find their way around the Olive bottleneck. My residential tenants on Angelino and Alameda are likely to experience even more new traffic, making exiting their parking more treacherous as frustrated drivers speed along their alternate routes. As one who manages a maintenance team serving our tenants, I shudder to imagine how the traffic delays will add to the response times it takes to deal with plumbing, locked-out tenants, and other emergencies. We can kiss any mobility we still have goodbye. In summary, I say, mixed flow or no-go.
Our next speaker is Mark Scroggs, followed by David Donahue.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mark Scroggs. I'm not here to talk about traffic. As I said, last weekend, I attended a Television Academy event about AI. It was a seminar, it was fascinating. I went there about ethnics and legal aspects of it all, which was really interesting. But I also saw some presentations of what the future holds, and a lot of it's fascinating. If you have a chance to go on YouTube and look up Sora, do it. It's amazing what this can do already, and it's just moving quickly. But once this is fine-tuned, there's going to be a lot of jobs gone, a lot of people are going to need to be retrained, and there's going to be a lot of displacement. I already see it, because I have people I work with at Nickelodeon who are already starting to, you know, feel it, and I can feel the effects. So a major issue coming up with the IOTC and the Teamster strikes this coming, next week, starting next week, and I think as a community, they talked about the state and federal level, but also a few people brought up more of the local county level. I think we should start looking at it and like educating people, start thinking about retraining, start thinking about how to promote the people who are working in these jobs, not just in entertainment, but medical, you know, payroll services, all sorts of businesses are going to be affected. And I think if we, you know, just want to plant that seed right now for the future, that in the next few months, we should start thinking about how we, as a community, you know, can be ahead of the curve for once on some, one of these things, and just to avoid disruption. So that's it for tonight. Go back to the traffic.
Thank you, Mr. Scroggs. Our next speaker is David Donahue, followed by Danielle Vincent.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. My name is David Donahue, I'm the president of Vision Burbank, and I'm going to ask all of those who are in the chamber to stand who are in favor of keeping Olive Avenue four lanes. I would ask you to stand as my Burbank photographer takes a picture of this. I can't say it be any better than Linda Walmsley or Dana Morris said it about the intent of what I think the metro would do to the city and to the community. This would be a horrible effect, the result of traffic congestion and the impact to the businesses. I give a particular personal appreciation to the owners of Tallyrand, who have put a handwritten petition at their front register. They have our flyer, and we are going to be continuing to urge the public to be able to reach out to you and to us to sign the petition that says, "Keep Olive Avenue four lanes. Do not make it a dedicated lane." And I'm going to limit my comments because I made the promise not to take the fullness. So for everybody here in the chamber, thank you for coming, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Danielle Vincent, followed by Chuck Mercier.
Hello, good evening, council. I'm here about the BRT as well. I actually live right off of Olive, near Paquito Moss, and I go down Olive four times a day to take my daughter to Burroughs High School. Taking out two lanes would obviously probably increase that time. Verdugo is just as terrible since they've taken that down to one lane. And I just don't understand, it doesn't seem like this is really serving the Burbank residents. It seems like it's going against, you know, people that are trying to get their kids to school and work and all that, and, I mean, it almost seems like you're putting people on the road for a longer period of time, which there's more emissions in the air. It just doesn't make any sense. So I just don't understand also why the people that live in those communities didn't even really know about this, and it has to, it should be a vote. And I thought two years ago that you guys decided that mixed flow is the way to go. So thank you for listening, I appreciate your time.
Our next speaker is Chuck Mercier, followed by Cheryl Weaver.
Good evening, everyone. I've been a business owner for 45 years in Burbank. The businesses that are on Olive, I don't know how much consideration you guys have had for them and what it will do for their businesses, but my experience at the corner of Burbank in San Fernando, where the freeway was gone for two years, I had two mountains built behind me, two bicycle lanes. It hasn't helped my business one bit. I can imagine how devastating it's going to be to these businesses along Olive. Period. Who came up with this idea? Who knows? But I know it will have a drastic impact by having 50%, picture the five freeway, 50%. Picture- Picture Burbank Boulevard or San Fernando, where there's only one lane going south still. Imagine how much it's going to affect the smog, the air pollution, by people sitting in line, waiting. What's the point? What's the reason for it? It's not going to, number one, transportation in Burbank is what? Cars. Number one. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cheryl Weaver, followed by Barry Sarna.
Good evening, Council. Three years ago, I bought a home and moved to Burbank because I was tired of the failed bureaucracy of Los Angeles. Previously, I lived in the neighborhood of Eagle Rock and had watched Metro manipulate politicians in charge to force a huge experiment called the NoHo de Pasadena BRT on the community and its citizens. I watched Vision Burbank and was excited that Metro had actually come here and there was a balanced and fair decision made, which was to say, Metro, show us your ridership, and after that, we'll let you have a single lane for the BRT. Before that, we'll have mixed flow. That was a big, believe it or not, a big decision as to why I moved to Burbank. I could go anywhere, but Burbank, Vision Burbank surprised me. Our democracy was built on government for the people. How does this have to do anything with Metro BRT? Because Metro is the antithesis of what our founding fathers had in mind. It operates as a secret, inept, unresponsive, untruthful, and disingenuous quasi-government institution. In the past few years, Metro has antagonized, disrespected, been unresponsive to the following communities of Burbank, Los Angeles, Eagle Rock Community, Glendale, and more. There may be other communities, but that's what really comes to mind. Again and again, I experienced the deceit of Metro. Out of one side of the mouth, they talked about creating parking for the loss of parking for this project that would be caused. And then the EIR comes out and is approved, they flat out said, nope, there's no money for funding, for funding, parking. Then they talked about a business interruption fund. That sounds great, huh? However, it's failed to tell the public or the businesses the details that those funds will only be available as a loan. That will put small businesses further in debt and cause them further harm as to a project that will cause them economic harm in the first place. In Eagle Rock, we found in discovery of backroom dealings and blatant violations of Brown Act, and we filed a court case. In that court case, the 800-pound gorilla of Metro crushed the citizens' group in court with delays and other courtroom tactics. When the citizens demanded real-life studies to be done, they showed us a simulation that they created out of whatever data, because there's no studies that have ever been done on how this is going to back up traffic or cause cross-traffic into the neighborhoods. They instead showed us a two-minute clip of traffic flowing just fine, but didn't show any of the choke points that they were going to cause. In a request for information, they pronounced basically all redacted emails.
I'm sorry, Cheryl, your time is expired. Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Barry Sarna, followed by April Fangio.
Good evening, Council members. I'm Barry Sarna. I am a 34-year resident of Burbank, a retired Burbank teacher, and on the Board of Directors of Vision Burbank. I want to remind you of the sensible decision City Council made in 2022 concerning Metro's BRT plan through Burbank. The previous council, which several of you were part of, told Metro to implement mixed flow through Burbank and prove with ridership of 17,500 over 36 months of its opening that the proposed BRT route was in fact viable. When asked in 2022, David Krisky, Burbank's Assistant Community Development Director, said, "What we don't want to have happen is the bus project open, and it's not carrying as many riders as predicted, and we have a massive congestion and potential cut-through traffic impacts." I hope you will not go back on the sensible decision made in 2022. I'm pretty sure voters will be watching what you do, as will I, to make sure elected officials are responsible and do not waver from sound decisions made for the citizens of Burbank. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is April Fangio, followed by John Schaefer.
Good evening, Council. So my name is April Fangio. First, I'm speaking on behalf of only myself and not an organization. I would, I am opposed to the BRT, and I wanted to voice that. And I'm only speaking on myself, so here's my own personal story with it. I live right off of Olive Avenue as well, with the BHC housing area. BHC is Burbank Housing Corporation, for those who aren't familiar. It is the lower-income housing here in Burbank. Oftentimes, I think a lot of these projects are developed with the intention of that is someone who they would serve. So that's why the idea of that seemed enticing to me. However, when my family, we do take a lot of walks, and we go down, we actually take, we don't take the Olive, we don't take Olive Avenue, and we would never consider taking a bus on Olive Avenue because it's not an ugly, or it is, sorry, it is an ugly walk because we have the bike trail. What is that? The, not the Chandler one, the one off Olive, the one that goes the river, along the river?
Riverwalk.
The Riverwalk. We, thank you. We take that one because it's a prettier, prettier walk, and we do ride our bikes. So my concern is that, you know, I'm only speaking about where we live, is that we don't even have a place, most people don't have even bikes. And is because we do have people who are not so mobile and who would want, who would consider taking a bus. But I even asked them about this when they say, and they even said, no, we don't want more, more of a bus. I'll let them come comment sometime. But we don't even have a place to put bikes in BHC area. There's no, so most of us don't have them because anywhere that they would allow us to put them, they don't want us to put them there, and we don't have any covered place to do it. They say, oh, you have to keep it up in your apartment. Our 700-square-foot apartment, you want me to have five bikes? That's how many people I have in my family. It doesn't make any sense. So what I'm saying with that is, can we back it up? Please do not do this, the BRT thing. Back it up. What the citizens do need is maybe we have a place for bike racks. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is John Schaefer, followed by Kathy Wiles Sarna.
Good evening, members of the council and staff. My name is John Schaefer. I'm a lifetime resident here of the city of Burbank, and I'm calling to ask that you do not approve the BRT on Olive Avenue. My concern is that for our police and fire, they will not be able to use that. It's a main thoroughfare through our city. It's going to throw vehicles onto, into the neighborhoods, and it is just not going to be a good positive move for our city. It's going to bring it to a standstill. And that's it. I'm going to keep it simple. There's plenty of other people that want to speak to you on the same thing.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kathy Wiles Sarna, followed by Kevin Harrop.
My name is Kathy Will Sarna, and I was going to repeat my husband's speech as I agree with it, but I decided to try my own. I've lived and taught in Burbank USD for, in Burbank, and I taught at Roosevelt Elementary for almost 30 years. In a school district, when we are going to get a new curriculum that will change the work of hundreds of teachers and thousands of students, we form a pilot committee. We try the curriculum, we have monthly meetings, we talk to other districts who use the program. Have we done this research with the bus lane? Can you show the public the data and the research that you have? Have you counted cars at various times of Olive? Have you checked in with cities that tried it? I know they added a bus lane on some pulveta between Ventura and 101. It took the street from three lanes to two. The buses don't like to drive in it because it's not wide enough, and the buses, the bus lane's on the far right, so the buses cross over into the middle line, causing the cars to have to stay behind the buses anyway because they crowd the lane. So it just makes it tricky for the cars and to turn right, they have to use it, they have to use the bus lane to turn right onto the freeway. Has anybody checked out this? Surely, we wouldn't want any of those problems in our city. It feels like there's more of a, if we build it, they will come. The Burbank community is also poorly informed. Outside, I met this lovely lady, Claudine. She heard about it from a friend in Studio City today. She texted her, and she's a senior, and she's mad. She's going to move to this place across the street. She's like worried, how am I going to get onto Olive in my, with my 120 other residents? And she's a regular reader of the leader and said, she's baffled why people in the district, I mean, in the city don't know. Like my husband said, you voted to try mixed flow, and I hope that you show the residents your plan. I hope you prove that you've done some research, and you have some data to show us, and I hope that you do a better job informing your Burbank community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Kevin Harrop, followed by Jessica Vitonta.
Hey, Joe. How you been? I'm well, thank you. So Nick and Tamela and Council, we're old friends. It's been a long time since I've been here. I think Will Rogers was still mayor when I asked if I was here. Those were the days. I've been a resident of Burbank for 23 years now, and I got to tell you, this is a bad idea. This is a really bad idea. And I know the city doesn't know it's going to happen, and once they find that it's happened, they're not going to be pleased. And they're not going to be pleased with you, and they're going to remember you on Election Day. I urge you to reconsider this. It's just a can of worms that you're going to be sorry ever got opened. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Jessica Vitonta, followed by Chris Rizzotti.
Good evening, members of City Council. This is my first time standing here publicly. I've done it on remotely once before, and it was BRT, actually, that got me involved on this level with the city. I'm a 13-plus-year business owner here in Burbank. I own a gym, Functional Fitness, on Verdugo, that shares the Olive intersection over there. Because of BRT, I've spent additional time in the community with business, local business owners and residents. I have the pleasure of speaking to hundreds of people on a daily basis, and so I like to ask questions. And specifically, right now, we're all chatting about BRT, and I can tell you that there has not one bit, there's not been one person, resident or business owner, who has said, yes, I'm all for this, please sign me up. In fact, quite the opposite. So I stand here proudly as a business owner here in Burbank and also a member of this wonderful community that says, we really hope that you guys, well, some of you were on City Council in 2022, will continue to hold that vote of mixed flow for Burbank, for Olive.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Chris Rizzotti, followed by Joe Pimienta.
Good evening, Council members. Chris Rizzotti, lifelong resident, and I'm here to speak on BRT. And I know that it's not on the agenda tonight, but I've been out meeting with residents and businesses in the area, and quite frankly, they urged me to be here tonight. So I'm here. Hopefully, I can provide some points for you to consider for the March 26 meeting. I love Burbank, and I know that the people here love Burbank. They care very much about Burbank. I'm for transportation. I think most of the people in this chamber are for transportation and making the connection. But I think we need to look at the data and the potential impacts. And I brought some points that I'd like you to consider between now and the 26th. I understand that this is a sequel exempt project from a traffic study, but that doesn't mean we can't perform and hire our own company to do a traffic study. And I think, to be transparent, we should. By having dedicated lanes, where will the Uber drivers and the delivery drivers stop? What I've seen, in my experience, is if they don't have a place to stop, they'll stop in the center medium. And do we really want people mulling around in the center medium of a busy intersection? Our 2035 goal is to build 12,000 units. That can be as many as 24,000 additional people in Burbank. Should we be constricting major thoroughfares? Our population doubles during the day as workers come in and out of Burbank. Same question. Should we be restricting our major thoroughfares? And lastly, I know other communities have done paint studies where they paint off the area to see what the effects would be before implementation. This should be the top consideration before we implement anything, is to do a paint study. And thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Joe Pimienta, followed by Mary Rago.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, staff, members of the public. I'm a little out of breath because I was just outside Adam Schiff's office demanding a ceasefire, along with other Burbankians, because the atrocities in the Middle East continue. As you all know, my name is Joe Pimienta. I usually come here to advocate for tenant protections and to make sure that the residents of Burbank have a stable way of making sure that they can stay here because we're seeing a lot of displacement due to a lot of rent increases. Anyways, so a couple of things to say today. The BRT line, very excited about that. As a cyclist, as someone who goes around everywhere on a bicycle, it is wonderful to know that there will be more options and more avenues where I can bike safely. And also, I will, I don't like to do this, but I will speak on behalf of other reluctant cyclists who do not like to go around, you know, who cannot find ways to go from the west side to the east side, because the only ways to do that are either through bridges with very low railings while you're looking over a freeway, or under an underpass where a lot of people love to, love to display how loud their engines get. So presenting alternative options and more bike lanes is actually a positive thing that has a lot of people very excited. So I do speak for them in those regards, but not my words. Anyways, other than that, just the option of having more bike lanes always provides a stronger sense of safety. As a proud pedestrian, same thing, like first thing you want to know is that you're walking around in a safe place. And when there is, the more options of public transit, when there's more options for bike lanes, it just says that this is a safe place to walk. So that's great for that. So yeah, very excited about that. Anyways, another thing that I want to bring up is that this Sunday, I attended a vigil in West Hollywood for the passing, or should I say, the murder of Nex Benedict. Nex Benedict was a 16-year-old who got beat up in his, in their school bathroom, and the next day, they passed. The reason why I bring that up is because I know that several council members here have multiple times said how supportive and how proud they are to be, to be included with the LGBTQ community. And this is an excellent moment for you to get louder about that, because we continue to see over 400 anti-trans bills in this country. That means that there are, half of this country is not safe for trans people, and those bills continue to pass. Now, you can say all you want about like what the bills mean, but what I'm getting at is that those kinds of bills breathe permissibility to bully the people in the trans community, non-binary people included. So for those of you who continue to be loud, thank you. For those of you who speak loudly against LGBTQ hate, thank you. I know how much hard, you know, how hard you work. And once again, just because I have 10 seconds left, yeah, this BRT line, bringing in more cyclists into Burbank, sounds fantastic, and I'm very excited about it. Have a good evening. Thank you for your work.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Mary Rago, followed by Simon Hamel. Welcome, Mary. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Oh, I have a timer. Yay. My name is Mary Rago, and good evening to all of you. I
Mary, bring it down just a little lower in the mic. I can't hear you. There you go.
Okay. Thank you. I asked them to tell me that because there were several people we can't hear back there very clearly. My family has lived in Burbank since 1935. That's 89 years. I'm a lifelong resident of the city. We've always been proud to be Burbankians. My problem is taking the upper part of Olive, which is where I live, taking away two lanes from there without letting us know. Maybe you let the people on Olive know. You didn't let the people on Sunset Canyon or any of the other streets know until I came upon it last Saturday, and I was aghast at the changes. Why? Why must there be a dedicated lane for a bus that might be there once an hour? Who knows? Most of us don't ride buses. We don't choose to. They're not safe. Why must we have a dedicated lane for buses? You've ruined the aesthetics of the only large avenue that goes up the hill in Burbank. It's the only large street at all, and so that's the one you need to take, and you need to have the four lanes there. Why worry about pretty flowers or trees in the median? That's what the houses are for on the side, and they have plenty. So you sent out cards? That's getting off my topic. We didn't get them. Sorry. Pedestrians don't need to cross the street except at the intersections. I know jaywalking is now legal in the state, but they don't need to. They can use the intersections that almost everyone has a stop sign. Almost everyone has a stop sign already. Change it back. We don't want it. You have fixed a problem that did not exist. In addition, the driving lane is too narrow, and the parking lane is too narrow. I talked to a woman the other day, and she said, how am I gonna get my daughter out of the car? That's the side her seat is and has to be. It's not gonna be safe to get her out of her car. We don't want a dedicated bus lane. I've been reading a lot of the comments on Nextdoor, Burbank or neighborhood, whatever the name of that thing is. Many, many, I haven't seen one positive comment to BRT yet on it. Everyone is against it now that we have seen it and seen what you have done. You have created something to which we all, nearly all, object. We request that you reconsider what you have done to make people outside of our city, the higher-ups, whoever wants us not driving, and change it back to the way Burbank citizens will be happy. Have your bus. Don't take our lanes. Don't make a designated lane. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Simon Hamel, followed by Matt Fabius. Hi, Simon. You have three minutes.
Simon Hamel, longtime resident. Our family would not have chosen Burbank if we couldn't buy a home in the strong, single-family neighborhoods that Burbank is known for. I've returned tonight to be on record as your constituent to ask that you follow up on the study you received after last week's hearing. As you know, the articles you received detail opportunities that other cities have taken to use deed restrictions to encourage both low-income affordability while also encouraging the expansion of owner occupancy in their versions of SB 9 implementation. Right now, we don't have any of those provisions, and they were not discussed last time, and I'd like to be able to show people that you didn't just pass up the chance to make sure that Burbank's laws benefit families wanting to own their future here rather than rent it from a land investment corporation. As the number of lots with a nice-sized yard for a family to own gets reduced by SB 9 splits, those remaining kinds of properties that families are striving to achieve could become even more expensive, incentivizing them to look only outside of Burbank and maybe California to live. Please ask staff about these options before you vote. I'm also here to ask you to bring back final orals because I would have responded to what you described as democracy in the process of losing our rights to govern ourselves on the night you celebrated that loss of suffrage of your own constituents. The stripping of people's rights to self-determination of the most local of governance of the land they own, they paid to improve, solely paid the taxes for, and actually live on by people 400 miles away who do none of those things is not something to celebrate or defend under any circumstance. Even if one of those people was elected by any of the people who live in a part of the area that only affected properly, especially when that person redlines their own Rancho Neighborhood out of their own Banana Republic-style version of allegedly-created power grab. I'm not talking about the store where I go to get cool tropical loungewear. I'm talking about places like Russia that democratically voting to annex Ukraine with the duly-elected officials of Nazi Germany democratically voting in Hitler. Using a constitutional process to strip people of democratic process will never be democratic, even if it's something that you support. The legislature finds and declares that ensuring access to affordable housing is a matter of statewide concern and not a municipal affair, as that term is used in Section 5 of Article 11 of the California Constitution, et cetera, et cetera. And that's used in all the housing bills. That's the language in SB 9. What if they passed a law that read, "The legislature finds and declares that ensuring the protection of all life is a matter of statewide concern and not a municipal affair. Therefore, the government code is amended to prohibit the commercial licensure of abortion services in the state of California by any local or state agency." Now, I don't believe that's right, and I don't believe you'd be so compliant or champion a law like that. So I ask you to be consistent and reconsider your position. Good night.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Matt Fabius, followed by Liz Backs.
Hi, my name is Matt, and I'm a Burbank resident, and I do not own a car. I bus, bike, and walk everywhere I need to go. As you can probably imagine, I am in favor of amending the Complete Streets Initiative to include public transit as a consideration. There are not complete streets without public transit. We have only 26 years left to reduce global carbon emissions to zero in order to prevent the worst effects of climate change. The U.N. first signed a treaty on this in 1992. In the 32 years since, greenhouse gas emissions have risen significantly while we've done little to address the problem. We cannot afford to twiddle our thumbs for another 10 to 20 years while people, including us here in Burbank, suffer from more extreme weather and natural disasters. The experts agree. We cannot meet our global greenhouse gas emissions without getting people out of cars and onto public transit. Complete streets is a pleasant way to solve this problem. If we continue our current trajectory of prioritizing car infrastructure above all else, the measures we'll have to take when this is still a problem in 2040 will be much more drastic. Nobody wants that. This is not a problem we can continue to put off for another day. According to the EPA, transportation is responsible for 29% of greenhouse gas emissions in the U.S. A report from C-40 Cities and the International Transport Workers Federation shows that transit use must double by 2030, six years from now, to meet our emissions goals. That's because bus emissions are half of that of private vehicles, including EVs, according to a study from International Transport Forum. Not to mention that research from UC Davis has shown that massive expansion of lithium mining required to electrify all of our private vehicles would have an extreme negative impact on the environment, including water shortages, the destruction of ecosystems, and could jeopardize our chances directly of meeting that 1.5 degrees Celsius limit. This is not a problem we can solve without public transit. And this is not to even mention the other benefits of public transit and bus rapid transit. The research definitively shows that the alarm system about the potential downsides of bus rapid transit are just not true. Cars are a very inefficient way of moving people around. There's this very famous picture that shows people in cars versus the same amount of people on a bus. It's one bus, and the same amount of people take up four lanes of traffic across an entire block. This is a more efficient way to move people around, and we've seen that in other BRT projects around the U.S., like San Francisco's Van Ness Corridor has significantly faster travel times, more reliability, a large increase in ridership, more business and investment in the corridor as a result. As a reminder to the neosayers, the bus is for all of us. You can take the bus, too. You might even like it when you can read a book on your commute instead of having to stare at a bumper for an hour. The choice is obvious. Please support BRT.
Thank you for your comment. Your time is up. All righty. Our next speaker is Liz Backs, followed by Gina Blake.
Hello.
Black, apologies.
I am not for the BRT at all, but I wanna start by saying, once you change a community, you're not gonna get it back. And I know that you guys are starting to feel that the changes that we are making in Burbank as a whole are supposedly going to make Burbank better, but I'm not feeling it at all. And I'm gonna start with raising canes. I love raising canes. A lot of people like raising canes, but it created hell in my neighborhood. And what did you have to do after you said yes to it? You had to go back and fix it. And I'm afraid that everything we're doing here, you're gonna have to go back and fix. And it starts with all the high-rises of all the people we're gonna move into here. And are they all gonna ride that BRT? Because I can't ride that BRT to get to Costco. I can't ride that BRT to get to Target. I can't ride that BRT to get to a lot of places. But I live right where the BRT is gonna be. I gotta get across it. And when the BRT is being built, where is all that traffic going? For probably two years, it's going into my neighborhood. I live close to Huarta. I live close to Burrows. I live close to Disney. All that traffic is going to go into the already heavily trafficked, when the kids are going to school. Some kids walk, but a lot of parents drive their kids. And all that is going into my neighborhood on Oak or on Clark. Nobody's gonna drive on Olive. And I just don't know how Burbank is benefiting from the bus at all. Going down to two lanes? Even a worse idea. It took me two stops, getting through two signals to get past Victory to get up here tonight, and there's no bus there yet. And SB 9, that's not helping matters either because there's more traffic in my neighborhood because I have people that have four units on their property already, and there's not enough parking on the street. And has anybody paid attention to AB 413 lately? Because you are not gonna be able to park as many vehicles in this city anyway. And you can't, you only have so many parking spots in each of these high-rises. Let's take the one over there by the park on Empire. They have seven units. They have seven, they have a whole bunch of units up there, and they are going to have seven parking places. Where are the rest of those people gonna park? The people that have four units near me? Eight cars! No garage. In Long Beach, you have to use your garage for parking. It's an ordinance. We are already screwed up with the canes. We can't get in and out of our area very well. You've closed off streets because of it.
Thank you.
Start thinking about it.
Your time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker is Gina Black, followed by Brooks Piper.
Hi, good evening. I live in Burbank, up Olive, and I just wanted to say, I didn't understand why they put in the new striping. Our neighbors were really upset. It seemed very narrow. So I wanted to find out more. So I left a message for a gentleman, I think David Christie. Very nice gentleman. I don't know if he's here tonight, but he told me the reason they did the one lane was for the speed. We had, you know, too many people driving really fast in our neighborhood, which they do. I get that, you know, young kids driving their Maseratis, you know, 100 miles an hour up Olive is annoying, but I mean, that's the truth. So I got the logic of that, but then they started striping right in front, like if you park your car on the side of your house, you have this little, little area to park your car. So now the lanes are narrower, and then they put the white stripe where you could park your car on the side of the street. So when you open your door, the car could be right there, so you have no room to get out. And I know this because my gentleman that mows my lawn had to park in my driveway because he can't even get his stuff out. So that's kind of my issue, is more of the striping. He did say, David Christie did say, that they would survey this for two months to see if it did help with the speeding. I get the logic, okay? I'm okay with that. The striping, I don't know if the planners really, I wish they would just, you know, come and look at that because I don't think it's, I don't think they did it right. I don't think they did it correctly. I think it needs to be redone. I know that's probably gonna be a lot of money, but I think that they need to, to address that. And then this big, huge island in the middle, why? I mean, why? Why? I wanna be on a planning committee for this because I don't get it. And we're not gonna put a yard in the middle of the street. That's not gonna happen. And if it does, it's not gonna be for years, and it's just pointless. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Brooks Piper, followed by Laverne Thomas. Brooks Piper, followed by Laverne Thomas.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor online, I think, and Madam Vice Mayor and members of council, my name is Brooks Piper. I'm a Burbank resident and a member of the Transportation Commission, though this evening just speaking totally of my own opinion. It's funny, I've agreed with so much of what's been said tonight, but I'm seeing things and drawing totally different conclusions. I believe that there are a lot of cars on Olive, maybe too many cars on Olive. And so it seems to me the conclusion should be that we need better options for transportation around Los Angeles County and in and through Burbank. One way of that would be a rapid bus system that could bring people where they want to go quickly, and many of them, thus relieving congestion. Not only, hopefully, it would be a system that could be expanded over time, but not only on Olive, but in other places of the city as well. And so I'm in favor of that. Also, the concerns about police and fire, they need to be able to travel quickly. And so giving them a dedicated lane to travel quickly seems like a great idea to me. And that would be, of course, with the buses. But I believe that it would be a lot faster in a bus lane than with mixed flow. Also, I believe that if we had options for people to travel quickly to the city of Burbank and not have to worry about parking, that people would come from Pasadena and Glendale and North Hollywood to patronize downtown businesses, and that they would come because they don't have to worry about finding a place to park. And so I believe it would be a boon for businesses downtown. Also, I would remind everyone that it's just paint. It's just paint, is what I believe we're considering, so we can take it back if it doesn't work. Culver City has done something that they've decided to take back, and it's been done before. If it doesn't work, we can take it back. Also, I agree that we need more space for cycling, as the woman spoke about earlier. And that space comes with the BRT. Having that space, that lane for bicycles, I believe makes a lot of sense. And so that's my opinion, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And before we go on to our next comment, folks, let's keep it civil. Let's remember, everybody gets their three minutes without side commentary. Let's give everybody that space, whether we agree with them or not. Let's give everybody their three minutes without commenting in between, and let's everybody get a chance to be heard. So our next commenter is Laverne Thomas, followed by Polly Steinberg. Laverne, you have three minutes.
Well, it's been 22 years at this podium. Seven years in hiatus. And what do you think brought me back? Tell you what, certainly doesn't have to do with staff. Kudos to staff, kudos to management, and kudos to this council. It has to do with what staff and this council proposed to Rancho Providencia, the NoHo Pasadena Rapid Transit, and for that matter, many other things that have come down in Burbank and probably will come down. What you have in front of you, and unfortunately, I couldn't get here early enough to pass out the copies, here are excerpts from Barry's documents with regard to the Burbank Rapid Transit through Burbank, okay? From staff, from council, et cetera, from our city manager. Here is a copy, unfortunately, could get it up there, of Rancho Providencia, okay? And also, here is what I received probably about a month ago. And then about a week and a half later, I heard about a meeting that was held by Vision Burbank with regard to the matter and what the proposal is for Olive and through Burbank. Look at these streets. Rancho Providencia. Rancho Providencia, if I crawl, I think we had 18 streets, 18 streets in total. We presently have six speedhumps. What this says, people out behind me and out there in the public, is all of these streets that we're proposing additional speedhumps on, which take in all of Rancho Providencia. You mean to tell me this is the best that we can do? Come on, folks. That's approximately 40 speedhumps. Do you know what a speedhump costs? $5,000. That's $200,000. We have stop signs. We're bordered by Olive. We're bordered by Alameda. Olive is a major intersection, rather a major arterial, and frankly, so is Alameda. Alameda is a smart corridor. It is a relief for the 134. It's a bus route, if it's still there. I don't know. I haven't followed up on it, but it goes right into the media center also. We have stop signs. Olive intersects us between Olive and Alameda. We have stop signs at every single perimeter street around us. We have stop signs all the way down Olive Avenue, I mean, sorry, Oak Street. What are you guys proposing? You have your own comments here about- You have your own comments here about what it will do to the neighborhood. Forget about the speed humps for a while. You talk about, uh, let's put in something temporarily, like you did with Orchard over there, because Orchard's gonna end up being a cul-de-sac there probably. And that alone, I won't even, I won't even discuss that alone, and what staff should have done, and what management should have done, and council should have done about canes going in there, and don't give me the grandfathering either, because I don't believe it. What you did was you took it up after the fact with everybody else around town and drive-throughs and everything else. We gotta do better. We have got to do better. This is no, this is horrible. Absolutely horrible. And I will leave the copies out there for people to pick up, and they can see, because the proof is in the pudding. When you lay it down on paper, when you talk about it, you don't necessarily, you can't, you know, you can't click it all in, especially if you don't know the streets. But when you see it down on paper, you see it, and it's there. Speed humps on every single street except two, actually, three. Edison, the little cut-through street that, you know, there's nothing on. Nothing on. And two, two are dead ends. Shelton and Reese, the lower part of Reese off of Alameda. Maybe instead of speed humps, calling on speed humps, maybe we should go in and put in every single, you know, you have stop signs in all the streets, right? So, up on Oak, Olive, Alameda. So, why not really look at our, um, what do you call them, average daily transit and everything else?
Thank you, Laverne, that's your time.
Yeah, thanks.
Our next comment is Polly Steinberg, followed by Kevin Muldoon. Thank you, Polly, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Polly Steinberg. Um, I'm a Burbank resident. I've lived here since 2015. Um, I have two children. They're in the Burbank Unified Schools. I'm usually here speaking, uh, to the school board. I'm, been very involved in, uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts in the schools. Um, and I co-founded a educational nonprofit called The Destiny Education Project, and we, uh, have been organizing in the schools for the last few years. This is, I'm here for, um, uh, a reason that, uh, is very, very personal to me. And, uh, when I had to choose what agenda item that I was speaking on, I put down, um, Women's History Month, and I'll tell you why. The city of Burbank is gonna recognize Women's History Month, and that's very powerful. Um, and, and tonight, I'm speaking to three very powerful women in this room, and that's you Zazette, you Nikki, and you Kimberly. We need powerful women right now to speak up on behalf of life. My personal history is that I am Jewish, but I come from, uh, a Palestinian lineage. My grandmother was born in Palestine before, uh, Israel existed. And I was raised that all human life is precious, and that never again, when we speak about genocide, means never again for anyone. And I know that this council has taken the position of, or a guideline of not winging in on, um, matters of international affairs. But we need every elected official at every level of government to do anything that they can in their power to stop the tremendous loss of life that is happening in Palestine every day. It is not an anti-Semitic gesture to speak up for life. I can think of nothing more Jewish in my understanding of my own upbringing than to speak up for life. Israel is not synonymous with being Jewish. We need bold voices to speak up for the dignity of all life. So, in this council bodies, Zazette, we have you, Nikki, we have you, Kimberly, we have you. I know where Konstantin is on this issue. I've spoken at length with Nick. I have not had a chance to speak with Tamala. But together, we can pass a ceasefire resolution. We can let Representative Adam Schiff know that his policy does not represent what we want as a city, and, uh...
Thank you for your comments, your time is up.
...your support.
Our next speaker is Kevin Muldoon, followed by Paul Dyson.
Good evening, council. I've been sitting at home watching the, the proceedings here, and, uh, the BRT, first of all, is a joke line. Who's gonna take a bus from Pasadena to North Hollywood? Gets on the 134 twice. You look at the 134 each direction when they're going in the morning, the afternoon, it's gridlock. They're gonna be sitting in a bus, waiting to get to destinations no one wants to go to. Second, look around as you go to Burbank. My wife's tired of me saying, "Oh, that bus is empty, that bus is empty, that bus is empty." We already have 100 buses a day going through Burbank that are empty. Now, bringing back to the agenda item tonight, it's about bike lanes, about walking, about buses, it's all this, where's the money? Where's the money coming from this? The young lady wants bike racks. That should have been up to her developer to put the bike racks in, not the city, not the taxpayers. This is, the safer street thing, it's admirable, but what is the percentage of people that are gonna use the bike lanes? We, someone mentioned earlier, how do you get home from Costco on a bike? How do you? I, I am a bus driver now that I have four grandchildren. I am up and down Glen Oaks 15 times a day. I could not take my grandchildren to dance, to gymnastics, to school on a bus, couldn't do it on a bike. All this money and all this effort for all these safer streets are pie-in-the-sky ideas by individuals that think that it's gonna save the planet by getting all these things off the thing. The federal government just had to roll back the electric car thing into 2036 because it's an unattainable, uh, goal that they put before us. So, these goals are unobtainable. We need to slow down, and like I say, where's the money? LA is, right now, is a proposition, and the controller came out and said, "We don't have the money for this." It's in the billions for the things they wanna do for all these added things in, in LA. And back to the chief, I don't know why the Fire Department and the Police Department aren't up here in arms like the LAFD is, saying, "All of this choking, all of these lanes, all of this, uh, cutting things down is gonna affect our response times, and the citizens of Burbank are gonna suffer from that." And getting back to the Olive, I come down Olive all the time now, and everybody here already pointed out, the lane's too close to the thing. You watch people come down Olive, everyone's got a tire over the, the left side of the lane. I measured Angelino Verdugo and all that, from the center line to the curb, there's an extra 10 feet on the artery streets up and down the hill that weren't allowed. There's, you can see where the lane used to be, that's where the lane should have been. So, slow down on this. And SB 9, I wish the city would have fought back on that. Like Simon said, they're taking away our individual rights of how we rule, take care of our city. It's gonna be a mess what they're allowing to have happen. And you guys gotta put the protections in. You know, I'm only, only because the Rancho got protections. There's also, in that bill, fire areas get protections, flood area gets protections. But if you guys included those in our plan, no. The Rancho gets special consideration. Think about that.
Thank you for your comments. My final speaker card today is Paul Dyson. Mr. Dyson, you have three minutes.
Good evening, council members, Paul Dyson, former Chair of the Transportation Commission, fairly frequent transit rider, and a bit of car owner nonetheless. And my thought is that when you want to invest a lot of money into a project, in this case in transit, that money invested ought to have a return, whether it's a financial return or a return in quality of life, or even if it's just an improvement in what you already have. What we already have is an express bus, which runs between North Hollywood, Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena. It was put into place rather hurriedly when Measure M was announced. But that bus service already exists. So, for those people making those long trips, they have an adequate service. And in fact, if you read the detail of the EIR and the, and the proposals for the BRT, it in fact gets you there faster, even in rush hour traffic, than the proposed timings of the BRT. So, there's nothing to be gained there. With regard to local trips, we have Burbank Bus, which, in my case, would take me direct to the MetroLink station and not make me walk from Lake. We have the Burbank Bus, um, and, uh, the proposal in, again, the proposal in the EIR says that these, uh, the, using the BRT will save you two or three minutes maximum on a local trip. If you're going a mile, you can't pick up that much timing if you're going, even if you're going 30 miles an hour instead of 15, you're still not gonna make, uh, make up that much more time. So, my proposition is, why are we spending $300 million on something that's not gonna be provide even anything better for the existing transit riders? Now, admit, there are a few trips, for example, somewhere along the midpoint of Olive, going down to somewhere on Glen Oaks, where currently you would have to make a transfer in downtown Burbank, but that's a small minority of the trips. The great majority of trips that people make to and from downtown, to and from the media center, if they were, if they were inclined to take public transit, they would do so already. The only thing I would say is that some of that money could well be spent on improving the environment for existing and, and potential public transit users by providing good information systems. When I grew up, where I grew up in England, fairly small village, the main bus stop in the village still has, uh, a neon or illuminated sign, tells you when the next bus is coming, even if it's not coming till next week. But, uh, but it's there, the information is there. We don't do that here, and we don't provide good shelter for inclement weather and the heat. So, let's spend a small fraction of that money improving on what we've got, but let's not waste money on something that doesn't do us a lot of good. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That is my last speaker card. Madam City Clerk, do we have any callers on the line for public comment?
We do, Ms. Vice Mayor. We've got several callers waiting.
The first caller is Susan O'Carroll.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I'm a longtime Burbank resident and a former transportation planner, and I'd like to speak on the BRT and also consent item five. From Henry Huntington and the Red Car System on, the history of transit in Los Angeles is the history of using transit to facilitate development. The BRT is no different. The BRT will trigger state laws that allow for densification in proximity to transit stops, and will facilitate the destruction of single-family neighborhoods within a half mile of Olive. It will result in ugly, high-density, predominantly unaffordable rental housing, while wiping out homeownership and community. Don't facilitate the BRT project, oppose the BRT project. The BRT cannot be justified based on ridership. According to data from the Federal Transit Administration, metro ridership declined 35% between fiscal year 2018-19 and fiscal year, uh, 2022-23, with bus ridership declining 28%. Fairbox recovery also declined from 18% to 4% of operating costs. Although during this, although these stats reflect the fact that ridership has recovered somewhat since COVID, safety and health concerns have kept ridership from rebounding. According to BRT DER Table 3.1-1, in, in 2042, it's projected that only 2.2% of all person trips in the region will be transit trips. Why are we destroying neighborhoods and businesses when transit is projected to account for only 2.2% of person trips in the future? Council should oppose any form of BRT. But when it comes to BRT as a separate lane, that's really not justified. The EIR for BRT anticipates BRT buses would have a 10 to 20-minute headway, depending on time of day, and they would seat 40 people. If the buses are full, that means 120 to 240 passengers per hour. Olive is classified as a major arterial. Major arterials can typically accommodate 1,900 passenger car equivalents per hour per lane. That means that if the BRT included a dedicated bus lane, it would serve three to six buses per hour and a highly optimistic 200, 240 passengers per hour versus the lanes serving 1,900 passenger car equivalents, which would include buses if it remains a regular lane. There's therefore no reason whatsoever for a dedicated bus lane on Olive. In terms of agenda, consent item five, it's a sole-source professional service agreement for program management services for complete streets and the BRT. A couple of questions. One, why are we...
Thank you, your time is up. Thank you for your call.
The next caller is Karen Ross.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Schultz, council members, and city staff. My name is Karen Ross, and I'm co-owner of Italianland Restaurant. I'm here to talk about BRT. We have dealt with a lot of challenges the past four years, and the thought of the city removing two lanes on Olive Avenue is horrendous. We're concerned about the future of Olive Avenue, which is a major thoroughfare beside freeway. Our city council is in place to represent what citizens of Burbank need and want for the city, and the BRT plan of removing two lanes of traffic on Olive would be a disaster for residents and businesses on Olive and surrounding streets. Burbank is near and dear to us, our city where we've planted roots. We do not believe we've considered the impact on all parties involved. In 2022, our city council voted in favor of mixed flow. Why the change of heart now? What has changed to make this a better option? This is an issue that impacts my business and the residents of Burbank. As a business owner, we've worked six decades to establish a warm and inviting neighborhood restaurant that is easily accessible for our customers. Removing two lanes on Olive Avenue would be detrimental to many small businesses, including Italianland. This is the wrong part of Burbank for this intensive project. We are here together. We're here together, and we have a no, a hard no on this project. Where is the transparency? We're getting mixed messages from different parties. This is not a residential or business-friendly decision on behalf of the city of Burbank. We need this project to be mixed flow. Please do the right thing and protect the residents of Burbank and the businesses on Olive Avenue. Thank you so much.
The next caller is Gino Pira.
Uh, dear members of, uh, City Council, uh, my name is Gino Pira. I've been a resident of Burbank for over 20 years. I was extremely disappointed to hear that the BRT line was being considered for adoption yet again after being, uh, voted down, and not that long ago. I know this project well. I attended Assemblywoman Friedman's online forums regarding this project, and I was absolutely disappointed to see that there was no input from public, uh, input at all. And it, and it was especially impactful to those of us that were living right near it. I live close to St. Finnbar, and this is gonna directly impact my street. Crime is way up on the MTA systems. I used to take public transit all over the city, but I refuse to take, take it today. I have witnessed way too many dangerous incidents. I would rather drive and pay to park than to take a bus anywhere in the city. Until LA County wants to start prosecuting crimes, we're not gonna take this bus line. This project does nothing for the residents and businesses of Burbank, which are the vital blood that give Burbank its identity. Many of you will leave Burbank City Council to seek higher political aspirations. I urge you to throw, not throw us under the bus. Please vote no on this project. Thank you.
The next caller is Jim Barnfather.
Hello?
Hi, Jim, you're on with the Burbank City Council.
Thank you. My name's Jim Barnfather. I'm a 76-year resident of the city of Burbank. Uh, the first comment I wanted to make was, I really appreciate when people come before the council and they identify their name and how long they've been a resident of the city of Burbank. I think many times we're getting comments at the podium from people who don't even live in the city, and yet they're providing input into the city as to make decisions that affect the citizens of Burbank. The next point I wanted to make out was, we use the term metro very easily, but do you really know what metro means? It's the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority. Burbank is not a metropolitan city. The city of, and county of Los Angeles are. Me, Burbank is 17.35 square miles. The county of Los Angeles is 4,084 square miles. We are just a little blurb in the county of Los Angeles, and yet they're pushing down our throats, this BRT that will drastically affect the quality of life of the city of Burbank. And the question I would ask is, what alternatives to this proposal has metro offered? They currently have a transportation system already in place that would take people from the North Hollywood bus terminal and... the North Hollywood Bus Terminal on Lancashire to Pasadena. It's the 170 freeway to the 134 freeway, right into Pasadena, 22 miles. It would not impact anything within the city of Burbank. Another alternative would be to take it down to the Los Angeles River, build it up over the river into the city of Glendale, and then Glendale could decide how they want to get it from Glendale to Pasadena. But I think we, as the citizens of Burbank, and you as our city council, who represent us, should voice a solid no against a cut-through path down Olive Avenue, which will drastically affect not only the businesses that are there, the residents who live in the community, the high school that's there, the middle school that's down on Oak, and even the elementary school that's there. So this will have a major impact on the entire community. I urge you strongly to vote no on this pass-through BRT through the city of Burbank. Go back to Metro and say, you provide another alternative, which already is in place. And all they do is take an existing bus line if they want, or a carpool line, make it the bus, add another lane for the carpool, and you've got your pass-through right from North Hollywood right into the city of Pasadena. I thank you for your time.
The next caller is John Jarreau.
Yes, Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing me to address you, Honorable City Manager and City Attorney. The traffic on Glen Oaks, as I understand the metro flow, traffic on Glen Oaks near Providencia is critical as the lanes narrow from three to two lanes coming from Glendale. And this goes all the way to Olive, then it goes down Olive to Buena Vista, turns left, and when it gets to Alameda, it makes a right-hand turn and impacts all of the medical buildings on Alameda across from St. Joe's and the Point. There is limited parking for businesses on Glen Oaks and Olive, and for many businesses, street parking is the only public place where clients and visitors can park. There are numerous shops that would be adversely impacted. And it's not practical nor economically desirable to allocate a separate designated bus lane. It will reduce the flow of traffic, narrow the main arteries of the city, and pose enormous traffic issues and congestion. It is suggested that the buses just continue the normal routes, which are sufficient, and not usurp any existing lanes. From what I have seen previously, the impact on Alameda, Buena Vista, and Olive would not be very safe and would adversely impact people attending the medical buildings and the hospital-oriented offices. Thank you very much.
We have one more call coming in.
The next caller is Gary Brick.
Caller is Gary Brick.
Good evening, Council. This is Gary Brick, former councilman and mayor. And I may not be 100% up to speed on all this stuff. I would like to make a couple comments, and that is, number one, I am thoroughly against SB 9 about allowing four-unit apartment buildings in R1 zones. I think I've been commented on that once before, and I think you're just going to destroy R1 neighborhoods. So I'm totally against that 100%. And the other thing I'm concerned about is this metro bus line on Olive. I don't agree with that at all. I got home just in time to listen to Mr. Muldoon's comments, and I agree with him 100% on everything he had to say. So the time spent, the time saved by using this bus line, this makes no sense whatsoever. And this is a major arterial we're talking about. When I was on council, we had to decide on Verdugo to reduce it to one lane or two. And originally, I voted no to reduce it because there was a couple intersections where they were supposed to put in two left-hand turn lanes. And once they did that, I agreed and voted yes for it. But this is in a residential area, and it's not a major arterial. It's basically a cut-through between Magnolia and Olive. So those are my comments I'd like to throw out there, and appreciate what all you're doing. And one other comment is, I think Mr. Anthony, you should get back to a coat and tie and look the, well, what a councilman should look like. Thank you.
We have two more callers at this point.
The next caller is George Jarreau.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor, staff, city attorney, city manager, and everyone in attendance tonight. Thank you very much for your time. I have a question about what makes a good leader. What makes a good leader? Is it somebody who is smarter than the constituency and ram-rods a policy notwithstanding the divisive nature of the policy? Or is it somebody that unites the community and brings together people who may have different points of view but can find the commonality and play to people's strengths? In this case, I could see why maybe a study shows that organizing a city a certain way is going to lead to some sort of outcome. And of course, I believe that the goal of this dedicated bus line is not to punish drivers. I would hope it's not to punish people who drive cars and reward people who do not drive cars, because that would not be a proper policy goal. But I think that sometimes you have to implement common sense, and even if some study shows that you can technically improve some metric with some isolated considerations, you have to also zoom out and say, okay, that's what the study says, but what about, what makes sense? What's going to bring people together? Is it worth dividing a community over the traffic to increase, potentially increase the traffic severely in a city? And I'll give you an example. Olive Avenue above Glen Oaks has been converted into a two-lane street, and it's not a good idea. The cars driving up the street are so close to the parkway that all you need is one kid to chase a ball three feet into the street, and they could get hit by a car. That's not good policy. And it's not good policy to force that upon people when otherwise they would have a choice whether to drive a car or take public transportation. But now if we're going to shut down half of the street to have a dedicated bus lane, it's just not good common sense, and there could be consequences to such a decision. So I'm speaking out against the dedicated bus lane. Please find a way to bring the community together. Don't force a policy just because, you know, it's group think and people say that it's a good idea, okay? Thank you so much.
The next caller is Sharon Perkins.
Hi, Sharon, you're on with the Burbank City Council.
Council, I've lived in Burbank for 40 years, and there used to be a very even flow of traffic all over the city. I understand that we have a lot more population than we used to, and we're going to have even more. So when you mess with the streets, even the lights, the corners, the stop signs, you mess things up. And going down Verdugo, as I do continually, I used to flow down Verdugo with no problem. They wanted to put in bicycle lanes. That's fine, but they knocked down the lanes to one lane on each side. Now, when you're at the stop sign at Buena Vista, it's backed up two to three blocks. And guess what? I'm lucky if I see one bicyclist, even during the school time, going down that street. There aren't any. So here I am, hearing a bus putting lanes down Olive, and I've been experiencing the Verdugo situation, which, by the way, it doesn't just mess up those streets. It's Magnolia, it's Buena Vista, it's all of the other streets that are around. The buses aren't carrying the ridership to qualify to disrupt the neighborhoods of our town. I just voted today. If this is a situation, why aren't we putting this on a ballot? I don't understand why, all of a sudden, this is a situation where people have to come in, hearing about it at the last minute, trying to voice our opinions, to hold on to our town. It's bumper-to-bumper traffic, and it's going to get worse, and the buses aren't going to help. Nobody rides them except for transits. And that's our responsibility for our children, our neighborhood, to hold on as much as we can.
The next caller is Michael Hastings.
Good evening, City Council. Michael Hastings, 50-year resident of Burbank and a very involved citizen. Couple of things. First of all, if we're going to be looking at spending money on consultants, I truly do believe that a traffic study, even though it's not required, is something that is due to the community to see what the shortcuts are going to create when it comes to residential neighborhoods. As it is now, we're losing residential neighborhoods to cut through traffic. Number two, City of Culver City did a plan where they painted in and put temporary pylons in to see what it was going to be like. I believe that went for six months. When it came back to the city council, they voted it down for additional bike lanes because it was just too congested on that main thoroughfare. I am in favor of the mixed flow only because that's something that, once people realize that no one's using that bus, it can certainly go back to a normal traffic. And this morning and this afternoon, I happened to be on Verdugo during school hours at John Burroughs High School. I went from Olive to Verdugo because Olive was backed up with the four lanes. I went to Verdugo because the two lanes were backed up all the way to Buena Vista from Sparks. I then went up to Oak. Oak was backed up all the way to Sparks. I went to Magnolia and finally found a way to get across town. What worries me is that we made the mistake, in my opinion, of making Verdugo two lanes, and the gentleman that called in earlier about bike lanes on Olive, wow, right up the street is Verdugo, and right up from there is Chandler. We do have great transversing bike lanes, and I'm a cyclist, so there are ways to get around Burbank if you please. So I'd appreciate if you'd have second thoughts on research studies and then also inclusion with all the people that surround that area. Thank you very much.
That was our last caller.
All right, thank you, Madam City Clerk. There being no further public comment, I now declare the general public comment period closed. Now is the time for a brief response from City Council, the City Manager, and/or the City Attorney. Do staff have anything to respond?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. If I could call up Mr. Krisky to clarify a few things regarding the Olive restriping above Glen Oaks.
Welcome, Mr. Krisky.
Good evening, Ms. Vice Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is David Krisky, Assistant Community Development Director, and I am following up on Mr. Hess's request to clarify and provide some more information on two related projects that are very different, except for the fact that the name is Olive, but two very different issues. The first is concerning the NoHo to Pasadena Transit Corridor BRT project, and particularly item number five on your consent calendar, which is for you to consider approving consultant services to help manage that project, as well as six other projects on your capital improvement program that are local. The Metro BRT project, we are not, the council's not making any decision on that project tonight. To give some brief background, in 2020, 2021, and 2022, Metro conducted an environmental review of their proposed project to connect North Hollywood to Pasadena through Burbank and Glendale with a bus rapid transit project. The city provided comments during the draft environmental impact report portion of the process, as well as the final environmental impact report process. And in April of 2022, when the council adopted the final EIR comment letter, very clearly told Metro that for the portion in Burbank and the portion on Olive Avenue between Buena Vista and Interstate 5, where Metro is proposing a, taking a travel lane to provide a bus lane, that the Burbank City Council would only like to see that section being constructed as mixed flow, which means the bus travels in the mixed flow with other traffic and does not reserve space for the buses. For many of the reasons that were discussed with some of the comments tonight, in terms of kind of the trade-off between improvements for transit versus impacts to vehicles, the risk of cut-through traffic, the ability to integrate that with that particular part of Burbank, the council felt that was problematic and communicated to Metro that we only wanted that section as mixed flow. So since that time, staff has been running with that direction, and we have been working with Metro as they've gone into the design of the project and also considering, will be considering, an agreement for how Metro and the city will relate with each other in developing the project. We've been very clear that we're implementing the City Council's direction in that regard. So as far as this community is concerned, we will be implementing that section as mixed flow. And as we also communicated to the council at the time, this is a unique project in that we own the right-of-way, and so we issue the final permits for construction, and so we have the ability to direct how it will be constructed on our city streets. So that's where we will be going in terms of how we're addressing Metro in that regard. With regard to the other Olive project, unrelated to the BRT completely, I want to assure everyone that we will not be running bus rapid transit up to Sunset Canyon. We will not be going any higher than Glen Oaks. That is a completely different project, city project. The city took the opportunity in repaving most of Olive between Glen Oaks and Sunset to look at the roadway configuration and the striping, and to look at the City Council's Complete Streets Plan. And the city took the opportunity to, in essence, make a bit of a trial, which is some of the commenters on the BRT project talked about, of a complete streets project that would reduce the area devoted to cars and increase the area devoted to landscaping and aesthetics with the primary purpose of improving safety. So the purpose of the restriping in the near term is to address crashes, conflicts at intersections, and speeding, and a lot of the complaints that we get on Olive in regards to those three things. And so the purpose was to narrow the lanes on Olive, which, above Seventh, or huge, the biggest lanes in the city, I think, reduce them down to standard-width lanes. They do look very narrow, I think, because of the overall cross-section of the street. They look narrower than normal, but they are standard-width lanes that you see, we'll see on most streets in Burbank. And the purpose is to slow the traffic, which is pretty fast right now, potentially reduce accidents, which are higher on Olive versus comparable streets in the city, Magnolia being a particular one, and also, as I mentioned, to reduce conflicts at intersections and then to implement, or at least test out, what the Complete Streets Plan shows for Olive. We've received a lot of comments about the restriping, a lot of critiques of it, a lot of confusion. I've talked to a lot of folks, particularly on Olive, who have had mixed opinions about it. I think one theme has been, especially to the Olive residents, that they are very interested in looking at reducing speeding. They are happy that the city is taking an effort to try and do it. Some don't think that what we have done will help, but... Some don't think that what we have done will help, but they appreciate the sentiment that safety and speeding and addressing some of those concerns was the purpose. But we've also been collecting all of the input. It's been kind of all over the map, but it really has centered around the narrowness of the lanes, the wideness of the median, which is a very large median, and maybe some skepticism that those things won't improve the two metrics that, or the various metrics that we want to improve. And so we're taking that to heart, and we are definitely cataloging that and trying to get the word out on what we're doing. The other thing we would like to do is, after this has been in for several months, we would like to measure those same metrics again and see if it has had any improvement, because part of what we do, what we want to do with some of these quick projects is respond to community complaints and make changes, and then test them, and then see if what we think will be implemented will actually work. And that's a, a new thing in transportation, and it's a newer process for Burbank, but we think it's important because it really allows you to see, how everyone see, the things that we think will improve, the complaints we're getting, will they actually do that? So we will be measuring speeds and, and volumes, and looking at crashes, and seeing if there's a change. And while the staff believes that it was a good decision based on the information that we had about the street, that this was a good move, and we think that's gonna be successful, if we're not successful, it is just paint. We are able to adjust, and so we can certainly respond to that, and, and try and do it with a data-based, data-based effort. But we will continue to take comments and calls and emails and, and phone calls and police, particularly the folks on Olive. We really want to hear about what you're seeing out there every day, and so that's the purpose of the East Olive Restriping, again, completely different than the BRT project. And I hope that clarifies the, the two projects and the motivations for each, and of course available for questions as part of the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Krisky. Appreciate you, you sharing all of this, and I appreciate your attention detail. We see your responses to, to members of the public and appreciate you and your staff taking the time. Thank you for the thorough explanation. Councilwoman Anthony?
If I could ask, Mr. Krisky, do you mind sticking around a little bit in case somebody wants to ask you some questions out in the hall? Anyone from the general public? Mr. Krisky, I encourage you to stick around.
I'm here mid-years at the very end, so I'm here all night, so yes, please.
Great.
He's here all night, folks. Alrighty. Any other responses from staff? Alrighty, responses from council. Since we have the mayor online, we're gonna go in order and be a little civil tonight, so.
Could, could I just make one comment about council comment, and that is, because most of the comment was concerning the BRT, and the BRT is at least included in the consultant services on agenda item number five, rather than me having to cut council members off in their chain of thought, if we could move any responses to public comment to consent agenda under item number five, whether you pull it or not, I think that would be most appropriate.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mullins, Anthony, if you'd like to go.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for clarifying that, because I'm sure we're all anxious to respond to a lot of the comments that were made tonight, and all the emails that we have received over the last couple of weeks. I do want to thank everyone. I know it takes a lot to be here and speak before council. I want to thank everyone who emailed us, and I want to start with the Olive striping project. I completely feel for you, and I understand, however, Mr. Krisky provided a very good explanation to the purpose behind it, whether it makes sense or not. This is not permanent, and I do appreciate all your feedback. The more feedback you give, Mr. Krisky, the more knowledge and information we will gain so we can make this a permanent project that would actually be successful for everyone. So continue sending emails to him, ideas. I think they're all about the same concerns that we've seen so far. I personally drove in there, and I, you know, on Olive, and I saw it, and I do understand your concerns, so I can just get an idea, but we will get there together. Just be patient with us, and eventually, we will make this right. The only comment, and I don't know if it's the appropriate time to do it, but if possible, before staff makes this a permanent project, if they can come back to council with the data and information, but I can ask for that at the end of the meeting, Mr. City Attorney.
That's my preference.
I got you. I, I, I saw how you're looking, so I, I got you. So we, we will get some feedback. As far as BRT, we will talk about it really soon under consent calendar. I do want to give shout-out and congratulations to the Women History Month for the proclamation. That was great, and also to the purchasing staff, entire finance department, and the adaptive sports, great job. I'm sorry I couldn't make it, I was under the weather, feeling under the weather, but I heard it was amazing. So thank you, Marissa, for doing that. Then I'll keep my comments later for the BRT. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming down. Laverne, I was here in the room seven years ago, the last time you gave public comment, and you are absolutely correct. Raising Canes was a mess. If I'd have known then what I know now, I think we would have handled it very differently. That was on us. We messed that up. We did. I'll be, I'll be honest with you. We didn't take care of the city the way we should have. After the fact, we did a lot of work, probably more work than we should have done. It would have been a much easier situation had we headed off at the pass. Hopefully, we learn from our mistakes. I can't say we won't make any more, but I'm hoping we learn from past mistakes moving forward. Cheryl, I agree with you. Metro is an absolute mess. I often call it 500 of, feet of red tape and a trench coat. It's a bureaucratic nightmare. I will remind everyone that your local LA-
Councilmember, if you could hold your comments on the Metro item to the-
Oh, I'm just talking about Metro in general, but that's fine.
Okay. That's not a response to public comment.
Yeah, I, I'll save it for later. The last thing I will say is, yes, Mr. Mayor, I will, Gary Brick, I am definitely gonna go back to a coat and tie. I have been working very long hours. Yes, I, I hear you. I'm excited to get back to that. And to our current Mr. Mayor, I did see a, a photo of you on the, the wheelchair rugby, so kudos to you for getting out there, getting in the chair. All right.
Thank you, colleagues. I, I agree with the sentiments of my colleagues. I, I just want to generally thank everybody for coming down tonight and sharing your thoughts. I think it's helpful for us to hear your thoughts and for staff to hear your thoughts, especially those of you who live in the impacted areas. You are all the experts in your community, so we appreciate you bringing that to us. I won't make any further comments, as to avoid the city attorney's looks, and so I'll just say thank you for coming down, and thank you for those of you who called and waited on the line. We appreciate all of you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Mayor. You did an admirable job tonight. I just wanted to thank everyone for coming down in person, and for those who called in and gave your comment. Most of the comment was related to agenda items, so I'm gonna reserve my response there. There was one thing that I did want to just address, and it is not about the BRT or Metro, but it was a comment that we heard on the telephone, the second or third-to-last comment. I appreciate every perspective on the issues that we'll be discussing later tonight, but there was one thing that troubled me. I don't want to name the, the individual, but the comment was to the effect that only transients ride the bus in public transit. I know that not to be true, from both personal experience, and I can see many of you in the room, and I know your stories, and I know that you are students that are regularly taking the bus. I, too, take the bus, so mayors also take the bus in public transit. And I bring that up to say that when I was a kid who didn't have a car, whose mom had to work, I relied on the bus to go to high school, to do extracurriculars, to set myself up so I could go to college and law school. So I bring all this up to say, when we talk about who rides public transit, all I ask is that let's be inclusive of everybody's lived experience and try to take the stigma out of who uses transit like that. And to our colleagues from my Burbank who are in the room or watching live covering this, and from Burbank Leader, I have a great idea. Next month's mayor's podcast, let's do it live on Burbank bus, and let's talk and really expose the city's sights to how our transit infrastructure works for some and how it still leaves too many people behind. So with that, everybody, thank you so much. That concludes public comment. We're now moving on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, would you please read the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have six items on this evening's consent calendar. Item one, approval of the City Council minutes of the regular meeting of January 30th, 2024, and the dark meeting of February 6th, 2024. Item two is adoption of an ordinance amending Title X, Chapter One, Article Six, Division One of the Burbank Municipal Code to establish development standards for SB nine, second single-family dwellings and urban lot splits in the single-family residential R1 zone to ensure consistency with state law. Item three is adoption of a resolution amending the citywide objective development standards, Chapter One, Complete Streets Objective Development Standards, to extend its applicability to public transit projects and make changes to the pedestrian, bicycle, and equestrian sections. Item four is adoption of a resolution approving the filing of an application for and acceptance of grant funds from the Los Angeles County Regional Parks and Open Spaces District for Measure A funding for the City of Burbank adaptive sports equipment, acceptance of grant funds, and amending the adopted fiscal year 2023-2024 budget by appropriating funds. Item five is approval of a sole-source professional services agreement with Dorado Company Incorporated in the amount of $414,500 to provide program management services for complete streets and regional transit capital projects, and to amend the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. And the final item is approval of the Verdugo Fire Communications Dispatch Service Agreement between the cities of Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena, and the city of West Covina for dispatching of emergency fire and medical response.
Great. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Colleagues, before I call for a motion, would anyone, does anyone have a brief comment on any of the consent calendar agenda items or any questions? Yes, Mr. Anthony, your floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to pull item number five for discussion, the Complete Streets and BRT expenditure agreement.
Just to be clear, you're pulling that item, not commenting or questioning, correct?
That's right, pulling it for full discussion.
Okay, so by our council protocol and procedure, that item will be pulled, and we will take it up after the conclusion of our reports, unless the council would like to bring it up any earlier.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, given that we still have a full agenda and we have a packed house here, if it's possible, we can address this item and weigh in and make our comments based on the public comments that there were made tonight, if we can take it now, instead of putting it at the end of the agenda.
I'm happy, if the city attorney will let me, I'm happy to take it up after the conclusion of our public hearings. I believe we have to do those first, but we can take it up before the other reports. But if it's being pulled, we do have to consider it separately. Mr. McDougall, what say you?
Council can place it anywhere they wish on the agenda, so the, the, the procedure is generally to put it at the end, but given the attendance this evening, if you want to move it ahead, it does not affect the legality of the hearing if you move it ahead or following.
Thank you, Mr. McDougall. So, Mr. Anthony, it's your motion. What would you like to do?
Yeah, I would like to amend that motion to pull item number five and put it after the consent, but before the public hearing.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second that.
Fantastic. On that motion alone, is there any question, comment, any other discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call vote on just pulling item five and moving it to the end.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
We just want to clarify, Mr. Mayor, you said moving it to the end after, after we take the vote.
To the end, before public hearing, but after consent calendar, the remaining items.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz?
Yes. Motion passes, so now we have the remaining consent calendar minus item five. Any other questions, comments, or a motion?
I, I make a motion to move items on the consent calendar excluding item number five.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Fantastic. Motion second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Schultz?
Yes. Motion carries. We now take item five. So, Mr. Anthony, if it's all the same with you, I think it would be proper to have a very brief presentation from staff, and then we'll go into council deliberation. So, Mr. Krisky, I believe you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, David Krisky, again, Community Development Department. So tonight's item number five concerns the City Council's consideration to approve a sole-source agreement with Dorado Company Incorporated in the amount of $414,000, and to amend the fiscal year budget to appropriate funding for that agreement, to help the city staff implement several local capital projects, complete streets projects, and regional transit projects, including the Bus Rapid Transit project, in helping to staff to further manage and direct those projects. We have several projects on your capital improvement program that are underway now and in various stages of either conceptual development, design, or moving forward to construction. These projects are all managed through a combination of staff from the Public Works Department and the Community Development Department, but because of the number of the projects that are ongoing, kind of all at the same time, and the fact that a lot of them actually also interrelate with one another, staff has been utilizing program management services to provide some overall oversight of all of these projects, so that each individual project manager across both departments can be aware of the other projects that are being developed and help coordinate and manage those, and also because of the relationship that a lot of those projects have with regional agencies, sometimes it's difficult to navigate that, that, those administrations, and so the program management services would be used to help with that endeavor as well. We used Dorado Company throughout the development of the I-5 North HOV project, as well as the even earlier State Route 134 ramp project, and so Dorado Company has very well-understanding of both Caltrans and Metro, has a very good understanding of our city systems, which is really important, our internal processes, and helped the city staff deliver both of those complex projects. And so we are proposing to use that same model for these individually much smaller projects than the I-5 project, but if you take them all together, plus the BRT project, it's a very large program that existing staff is going to have a hard time to make happen without some extra support. I will say that in regards to the BRT project, the services are, we believe, are required to advance that project in either, in whatever form the project is taking. So currently, as I just said, we are implementing mixed flow. The project, regardless of its implementation, is a complex project that has, has a lot of moving parts, and we need those services to help manage it. So it is, this decision is independent of the final BRT project, and because the City Council's current direction is to implement mixed flow, these services would be implementing the BRT as mixed flow on Olive between Buena Vista and I-5. So I just want to reiterate and underline that again, that these services are for management of the regional BRT project, but also a lot of your capital improvement program that you've approved as part of the budget. And then finally, just to give a footnote to the funding, we are proposing to pay these services not through the general fund, but using transportation development impact fees. So these are fees that are charged to developers for new development that impact our, our infrastructure, and so we're proposing to use those funds for these services, not the general fund. And then finally, we, the council will be considering a potential agreement with Metro for the BRT. I mentioned that briefly. Part of that agreement, if the council wishes, would involve some reimbursement of costs for this contract, for the services related to the BRT. That's still being negotiated with Metro, and, and next month, if the council will be considering taking up that agreement, which will have that reimbursement. So some of these costs will come back to the city. I wanted to just leave that out, if council proceeds, proceeds with the agreement next month. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Krisky. Questions and comments from council? Yes, Mr. Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Krisky, for explaining that. Development impact fees, we're, we're charging, sorry, Dorado Company is charging us $414,500, and we're paying it with development impact fees. Explain to me this, how, this fund, this development impact fee fund, how do we get it? Where does it come from? What's the process there?
So since 1992, and then, and then updated in 2022, the city has imposed a fee on new development to help pay- development to help pay for the impacts that that development has on the city's infrastructure. And it's across several broad categories of infrastructure, and one of those is transportation. And then those funds are used with other funds, usually other regional funds, a lot of times grant funds, and other outside funding to perform a design and construction of capital projects. And so we are proposing to use some of those funds to manage the projects that the development impact fees are also partially funding. So all of the projects in, that would be managed with these services, at least some portion of them, are because there are impacts to the city's infrastructure from new development. And so we are proposing to use some of those funds to help manage those projects as well.
So none of this is coming from taxpayer dollars? This is all developer fees, the $414,500?
It's not from the general fund, which comes from all sorts of funding sources. It is specifically for fees charged on development, new development in the city.
Okay.
Well, so that was a very general question, and so to say nothing the government is doing on seven different projects as taxpayer funds, it's probably all comes from some source of taxes, transportation, countywide measures, statewide grant funds. Mr. Chriskey's talking about probably eight years' worth of projects that the city's been successful getting grant funds. However, for this contract, it's specifically development impact fees that are going to be paying for our project management consultant to help us with these projects.
Okay. And then you mentioned earlier that regardless of whatever the BRT, in whatever shape or form, comes forward, we don't have, what, the, the staffing, the expertise, the, the manpower to deal with that? We need to have a professional services agreement to be able to tackle this big project?
Yes, we believe so. We have staff working on these individual projects, and we even have staff working on the BRT on behalf of the city. But to have the oversight of kind of managing all of the moving parts for all of these projects together, we feel that these services are necessary for the coordination, and we don't have that on city staff, that, those, those services on city staff.
Okay. Sorry.
Can we get the feedback checked?
Yeah, what's going on with that? That's weird. Yeah, try that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chriskey, for choosing a different microphone and sparing all our ears. Sorry, everybody.
Dorado Company, have they, have they taken a look at all of the projects that we're sending them? They've had a glance at these?
Yes.
Complete streets and all?
Yes.
Have they taken any position on the BRT? Do they have input on that, or do they take direction from us?
Yes, they will have no input on, they're, they're not editorial, editorializing the project. They are implementing the council's direction and, and therefore the staff direction to implement the project and manage the overall interactions of what needs to happen between Metro and the city to make the project happen.
Okay.
But there's not providing any input on, should we do mixed flow? Should we do this configuration? No, it is all about working to execute the project as directed by the council.
All right. Here's the million-dollar question, or rather, the $414,500 question. If we have a professional services agreement with Dorado Company, would that put us in a better position to negotiate a contract with Metro?
No, it's unrelated.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Mullins?
Thank you. No, I'm, I'm gonna direct, I guess, my question to Councilmember Anthony. Great questions regarding the agreement. However, I'm just curious to hear from you regarding the public input that they just talked about, the mixed flow versus dedicated lane. I think this is the reason why we heard tonight from all the individuals that came in. So I understand there was concerns about the agreement, but I thought we pulled the item to address issues that were raised by the public for mixed flow or dedicated lane.
Oh, sure, yes, I just wanted to.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I think my line of questioning goes to the fact that this service agreement is not part of our discussion on what happens with Metro. It's not part of our discussion on what we feel is best for the city in regards to mixed flow or not. They are simply a hired contractor to do the wishes of this council. And the issues that were brought up earlier, the bigger issues of what is happening with Metro and with BRT, that is going to come, I believe, at a later date in March, and we are going to sit down and go through the entire project, and we're going to have that robust discussion. For me, today, looking at this agenda item, it is not attached to any decisions made, it is not attached to anything that we can do towards that contract negotiation with Metro. And so I wanted to pull it to make sure we got that clarified. This is simply hiring a specialist to deal with these kinds of issues that help the city move forward on a number of other projects. But also, when we do come to an agreement with Metro, we are going to need somebody to implement our vision, as given to us by the public, and that is why I wanted to go through this. After hearing from Mr. Chriskey and going through it, I believe I'm in favor of this expenditure.
Just for clarification, thank you, Councilmember Anthony. I would, I would agree with that assessment. Mr. City Attorney, can you please let us know, because I know Councilman Mullins, I think your question's better directed at the city attorney right now, can we talk about this, or are we getting into minutia?
Well, I like what, I like what Councilmember Anthony just said, because he limited it to the agreement that's on the agenda. So I think that's proper. What the, what the public can't appreciate is that the City Council is limited in what it can discuss. This is the closest we can get, but this item is really just an agreement for essentially a project manager, construction manager, to help the city on all of these projects, which will include the BRT, but it's neutral to what the BRT is. So approval of this agreement is not, neither endorsing nor disfavoring any configuration. That would be the subject of the actual agreement with Metro to carry out the project, which I believe is coming in a month or so.
Thank you for that. However, I do want to acknowledge the public for speaking tonight in regards to the direction that was given to staff in regards to mixed flow versus dedicated lane. We just need to be realistic. There is a reason why the public came in tonight to speak and express really their anger or disappointment or concerns. I think we heard a combination of things today. I do want to acknowledge that, number one, is transportation is really important for all of us on council. And I know a lot of members in the community, they understand the need of alternative transportation. So we're not really questioning the transportation if somebody is in favor or against, but I want to acknowledge the reason why, from my understanding, the public came to speak tonight, because they're anxious, they're disappointed about perhaps the different directions or rumors that might be out there, talking about a change on council's vote that was taken in 2022, to go from dedicated, from mixed flow to dedicated lane, which will be a change of directions that we have given staff, previous council, including Councilmember Anthony and Mayor Schultz were on council, that was the direction given. So I wanted to acknowledge all of you here tonight. I didn't want you to go home thinking, I didn't hear you, I heard you loud and clear. I heard the business community, I saw all the emails that came in, and I wanted to leave you with that acknowledgement. Yes, it's not on the agenda tonight, Mr. Attorney, and I agree with that. However, I owe it to all these people that came tonight to let them know, as of tonight, as what you heard from staff, it's still mixed flow. So the agreement that we will approve, I am not approving an agreement that says anything else except the mixed flow. I understand the report is coming in, on the 26th of March, but I also want staff, if possible, to give directions with the okay of the city manager and the city attorney. When you come back to us on the 26th of March, I want you to also look at, in the report, the impact on the neighborhoods from the BRT project. I know one of the speakers that called in, Susan O'Connor, I believe, and she did talk about the impact on single-family residents, so I'd like to, and I can ask for it in a separate item at the end.
Well, staff, staff can incorporate some information.
Yes.
Contextual information in the agenda item. However, the council's last comment on this matter was a comment letter on the final EIR. So some people who commented this evening might not have understood that, but Metro prepared an environmental impact report, and the city commented on that, actually several comment letters. And so we can provide context for that in the staff report, but a full environmental impact report with mitigations was prepared by Metro and approved for their project.
Okay, and, and thank you for that explanation. I'm really specifically looking for the letters that we, staff received in 21, 22 from the YMB group regarding the impact of a neighborhood on all the metro stops and projects, and I'm happy to provide additional information. So with that, because I know we still have a long agenda, I appreciate giving me an opportunity to address everyone, to let you know tonight, we voted on the agreement for mixed flow, nothing else. And I guess stay tuned on March 26th when Mr. Chriskey comes back, and to hear from the rest of the council in regards to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mullins. Vice Mayor, any comment or questions?
Yeah, thank you. I'm just here trying to contextualize everything that my colleagues have said. So basically what we, and I don't want to confuse anybody, we, what we are voting on tonight is an agreement with Durango to address these different projects that we will be working on through our department. We're not making any structural decisions on any of those projects. Please don't think that tonight's decision means either mixed or non-mixed or on the BRT, or any configuration on San Fernando. I just want that crystal clear, because I don't, you know, for the city attorney's sake as well, we're, we're just approving funding, folks, tonight. And I'm, I am glad that folks came to let us know what their thoughts are. I appreciate all of your thoughts, and we'll continue to receive them. This is not the end-all date, as you heard. Come back on March 26th, email us, send us phone calls, everything you can. I, I do appreciate the information. I think she's gone, but I do appreciate the handout highlighting, look, that's dedication and time from a resident, the fact that you took the time to highlight our avenues and highlight where speed bumps could go, and really contextualize that for council from your perspective in the neighborhood. We really appreciate that. So please continue to do that. And tonight, we are just approving the funding to get into contract services with these folks who are very capable in dealing with Metro, Caltrans, and other colossal entities that are, that are work to deal with. So thank you all for coming down. Thank you, my colleagues, for really adding the context there. And, Mr. Mayor, if you have anything you'd like to add to close us off?
Absolutely. Thank you, colleagues. I'm not going to repeat what was already said. I've been pretty steadfast about what is and is not on tonight's agenda. I will simply say this, we will certainly have our time for the dialogue, and I want everyone to know that I hear you loud and clear. That includes all of you who have packed the room tonight and are concerned. It also includes those of you who are there speaking in, in support of the project. Everybody is heard, and I want to leave y'all with something that Mr. Giraud, George Giraud, said, and I agree with him. Leadership is bringing a community together and listening to everyone, and not selectively listening to certain opinions over others. So all of you, I hear you, I believe my colleagues hear you. We look forward to talking about this another day, but for tonight, I absolutely support adoption of the agreement and the appropriations. So colleagues, if one of you would like to make a motion, we can move past item five. Yes, Mr. Anthony?
I'll move adoption of the professional services agreement with Dorado Company.
I'll second.
Okay, fantastic. First and second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's, oh, yes, Mr. Anthony.
One last, one last comment. For those of you in the audience that are disappointed with Metro, do remember that your local LA Metro rep is on the ballot next week. It's right at the top of page two, says LA County Board of Supervisors. Remember that. Thank you.
Okay, that, I'm gonna deem that the end of discussion. Ms. Clark, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz.
Yes, item passes. With that, colleagues, what I would like to see?
Mr. Mayor, there's a second item. So this was the agreement, but the second recommendation is to approve the budget amendment.
Understood. Mr. City Attorney, if I might inquire, Mr. Anthony, was that the intent of your motion?
The intent was to approve both the services agreement and to amend fiscal year 2022-2023 budget in the amount of $414,500.
That was also the intention of the second.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mullins, was that the intention of your vote?
Absolutely.
As it was mine. Will that do, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes.
Colleagues?
All right, fantastic.
Colleagues and Mr. Mayor, if we can, just to explain to the public, we are, because we have a virtual colleague, we cannot, not one of us leave this room, and we are all human, so we'd like to take a two-minute recess to use the bathroom.
Well, well, hold on now, I am the mayor, I have to decide. It is late back, okay, fine. I will give everyone a five-minute recess. Eight forty-seven, your time. Let's be back at eight fifty-two, we're in recess. Okay, I see a quorum. I'm going to gavel it in. 10 seconds. Okay. We all ready? Thumbs up? All right, I'm going to call it back to order, 8:54. Okay, guys, two minutes late. We got to do a little better than that, okay? All right. Now is the time and place for the hearing on the introduction of an ordinance establishing Article 16, Potentially Dangerous and Vicious Animals in Chapter 1, Animals, Title 5 of the Burbank Municipal Code. There will be a public comment period during the public hearing session, and I want to note that that, just like general public comment, will be handled by Vice Mayor Perez. Before we begin, however, colleagues, are there any disclosures relating to this public hearing?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I have two cats.
Cats are not included in this item. No, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I, we've heard it all, folks. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Anthony. Have any city council members had any communications, including written or oral, with any person regarding this matter? Take that as a resounding no.
No.
Madam City Clerk, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, emails, and all other documents?
Yes, you do.
Thank you. And has the city received any written communications on this matter and have they been provided to city council members?
Yes, and yes.
Fantastic. At this time, would the representative of the Parks and Recreation Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us this evening?
Good evening, Mayor Schultz and members of the council. My name is Kristin Smith, Assistant Director in the Parks and Recreation Department. Tonight, I'm here to introduce an ordinance for potentially dangerous and vicious animals to be added to the Burbank Municipal Code. Over the years, the city of Burbank has experienced a rise in cases of aggressive dogs that have caused harm to members of the public. These cases result in various degrees of bodily harm and impose threats to the public health and safety of the community. Attacks by potentially dangerous and vicious animals on human beings and domestic animals are attributable to the failure of animal owners to register, confine, and properly control vicious and potentially dangerous animals. Since 2020, the Burbank Animal Shelter has dealt with 18 potentially dangerous dog cases and eight vicious dog cases. Unfortunately, the city has seen an increase in severe bite, dog bite cases over the past three years. The Burbank? The Burbank Municipal Code does not have a section outlining a process for addressing potentially dangerous or vicious animals. Staff currently utilizes the California Food and Agricultural, Agricultural Code to manage enforcement of dog bite cases and have designated as either potentially dangerous or vicious. The current process is extensive, time-consuming, and not efficient. The process requires the city attorney's office to prepare declarations and petition the Los Angeles Superior Court for a hearing. The LA Superior Court, through the hearing, will determine if the dog that has bitten is potentially dangerous or vicious. Hearing dates are dependent on the court's availability, usually several weeks out while the dogs are impounded at the shelter. Once the hearing is scheduled, it does involve staff from the Burbank Animal Shelter and the city attorney's office to attend the hearing in downtown Los Angeles. This process results in longer wait for resolutions for all the parties involved. It also creates a chance for further harm by these animals to the staff or the public. If an owner with a potentially dangerous dog wants to bypass the hearing process, they currently have the option to enter into an agreement with the Burbank Animal Shelter for three years, outlining terms and conditions that must be followed, such as microchipping, quarterly inspections of the owner's residence, and a securely fenced yard. Muzzling of the dog is also required while out in public, and the dog must be restrained by an appropriate linked leash controlled by an adult. Burbank Animal Shelter has nine potentially dangerous dog agreements currently in place with owners. When owners won't agree to the terms and conditions for their potentially dangerous or vicious dog, then the Burbank Animal Shelter must pursue a court hearing. Dogs that have inflicted severe bites and are categorized as vicious can be relinquished by the owner to the Burbank Animal Shelter to be euthanized instead of going through the hearing process. The severity of the bite determines the designation that may be imposed on the involved dog. The designation possibilities are potentially dangerous or vicious. On this slide, the California Food and Agricultural Code 31602 defines a potentially dangerous dog as any of the following. Any dog which, when unprovoked, on two separate occasions within the prior 36-month period, engages in any behavior that requires a defensive action by any person to prevent bodily injury when the person and the dog are off the property of the owner. Or, any dog which, when unprovoked, bites a person, causing a less severe injury. Or, any dog which, when impervoked, on two separate occasions within the prior 36-month period, has killed, seriously bitten, inflicted injury, or otherwise caused injury attacking a domestic animal off the property of the owner. The next slide defines a vicious dog, California Food and Agricultural Code 31603, as any of the following. Any dog seized under Section 599AA of the California Penal Code, which is crimes associated with animals, example, dog fighting. Any dog which, when unprovoked, in an aggressive manner inflicts severe injury on or kills a human being. Or any dog previously determined to be and currently listed as a potentially dangerous dog, which, after its owner has been notified of this determination, continues the behavior described in the Potentially Dangerous Dog Code. Or continues to violate Sections 31641, 31642, or 31643. The main points of these codes are summarized on this slide, but they include properly licensed, kept securely at all times, and notification to the city of changes with the animal. The California Food and Agricultural Code 31604 defines a severe injury as any physical injury to a human being that results in muscle tears, or disfiguring lacerations, or requires multiple sutures or corrective or cosmetic surgery. I would now like to share with you the new streamlined proposed process. Staff is requesting adoption of the Potentially Dangerous and Vicious Animal Ordinance to provide the Burbank Animal Shelter with an internal process that would lead to more timely court hearings, quicker resolutions overall, and the Burbank Municipal Code language addressing how the city wishes to handle these cases in the interest of public safety. The proposed ordinance would allow the city to hold hearings through Data Ticket, the city's administrative citation processor, eliminating the need for the city attorney's office to petition the LA Superior Court. Hearings would be held within five to 10 working days after the notice is served, significantly shortening the amount of time all parties currently wait for resolution. Data Ticket assigns independent hearing officers, including attorneys experienced in animal-related cases, to preside over hearings. Should a dog owner contest the determination of the hearing officer, they may appeal the decision to the LA Superior Court. The determination of the LA Superior Court shall be final. The proposed ordinance includes several provisions to address the concerns of dog aggression within the city. It defines potentially dangerous and vicious animals based on criteria such as history of aggression, bite severity, number of bite incidents, and containment issues. Currently, owners of dogs meeting criteria to be designated as a potentially dangerous must comply with specific containment requirements, such as extra security measures to ensure a secure enclosure in the home, muzzling, and a secure containment when the dog is out in public, in addition to being required to register their dog with the city and maintaining current rabies vaccine for their dog. The proposed ordinance may require that the dog is microchipped, spayed, or neutered. An additional potentially dangerous dog, $150 registration fee will also be required. The owner of the potentially dangerous or vicious animal would be responsible for paying an administrative hearing fee of $125 per hour to the city to determine whether the animal is potentially dangerous or vicious. This hearing fee will be included in the fee schedule for approval during the upcoming budget process. Owners of animals designated as potentially dangerous may be required to comply with the hearing officer's orders, such as carrying additional insurance coverage for bodily injury, death, and property damage, and allow animal control officers to inspect the area where the animal is kept as needed. Fines have been included in the proposed ordinance to address compliance issues. Additionally, the city attorney's office has the option of initiating criminal proceedings if necessary. The potentially dangerous animal designation will be removed 36 months from the designation if there are no additional bite behavior incidents. Since 2020, seven dogs have been removed from the potentially dangerous dog list. Any animal determined to be vicious may be euthanized if it is determined that it poses a significant threat to public safety, and the owner may be prohibited from owning or possessing another animal for three years. Staff would like to note that there were some redline changes to the proposed ordinance that were included in a memo to the city manager that was shared with the council earlier today, including updates to the sequential alphabetical order, minor grammatical changes, insertion of words for clarity, and code reference corrections. The proposed ordinance will promote responsible dog ownership in the city and establish guidelines to address the issue of negligent owners who fail to control their pets resulting in such incidents. The city is specifically addressing a concern that has arisen due to multiple potentially dangerous and vicious animal cases since 2020. Staff is requesting that council approve the addition of Article 16, Potentially Dangerous and Vicious Animals, to the BMC. The ordinance is necessary to ensure the welfare and the safety of the community. Thank you. This concludes my presentation. Listed on the last slide is staff's contact information.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for the presentation. Before I move on, I will order that all written communications provided to council via staff be made part of the record, assuming there are no objections. Seeing no objections, Vice Mayor Perez, would you be so kind as to help administer public comment?
Sure. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the council for up to three minutes on the public hearing item only. For members of the public who are here in person, please present a completed Salmon Public Hearing Card to the city clerk if you wish to speak. For those wishing to call in during the public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. Madam City Clerk, do we have any common cards?
Ms. Vice Mayor, we did have one speaker, but I believe he's left the chamber. I will call his name. Damon Reiser? Nope, and we have no callers.
Alrighty. Damon Reiser going twice. Okay, so seeing that we have no speakers, we have completed in-person public comment for the public hearing. There being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Parks Department like to make any other further comments?
Thank you. Staff does not have any further comments, but will mention that the ordinance was a joint effort between the Parks and Recreation Department and the city attorney's office, and staff from both departments are here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleagues, do we have any questions?
I have a quick question. On page four, letter D, the, the animal shelter superintendent or their designee becomes the hearing officer during the administrative hearing, yes?
That's correct.
All right. That's my last question.
Councilwoman Mullins, any questions?
No questions, just a quick comment later.
All right. I have a few questions, and then I'll pass it on to the mayor. So, first question, just for clarification, I know the ordinance mentions what happens if a dog is off the property? What happens if they are on the property and they attack somebody who is not a trespasser? How would we handle that?
Good evening, counsel. I'm Brad Joe Hall with the city attorney's office. It would be handled in a similar fashion as if the occurrence happened outs, off of city, uh, sorry, off of private property. The same procedure would be followed, assuming no law enforcement contact was made. If there's law enforcement contact, then potential criminal proceedings may pursue at that point as well.
Thank you. My next question is from the staff report. You mentioned that the offending dogs remain at the Burbank Animal Shelter for several weeks. What's the longest day we've had?
Good evening. Brenda Castaneda, Animal Shelter Superintendent. So currently, the longest stay for a vicious dog that we had at the animal shelter was 45 days.
Thank you. Wow, that's significantly different from five to 10 days, right? Okay. And then, oh, you already answered that. If, if there's, if there is the potentially dangerous, may be required to carry insurance, that is decided by the hearing officer, right? Okay. And then, one question I had, I know our ordinance was formulated by looking at our neighboring cities like Pasadena, Rancho Cucamonga, Barstow. What are the differences there, if, if any stark differences?
So we did look at a variety of cities. We looked at Rancho Cucamonga, Victorville, Pasadena, we looked at LA County, LA City. We modeled the ordinance mainly off of LA County's ordinance, which mimics the Food and Agricultural Code specifically, addressing potentially dangerous and vicious animals. Pasadena addresses their municipal code in a more general sense. They look at designating a, an animal as a nuisance for a variety of different acts. Victorville is also a bit different as well. They don't necessarily only include potentially dangerous or vicious animals. So we felt that- So we felt that to address the concerns that we had in the city of Burbank, which is the rise in cases of potentially dangerous animals or vicious animals, that we needed to address that concern mainly. We have other BMC code, uh, code sections that address failing to license an animal or to keep up with vaccinations as well. So we kept our ordinance as closely aligned with LA County and the Food and Agricultural Code.
Thank you for that. And my last question, because I always like to follow the money. This $150 registration fee, what would we utilize the funding from that for? Where would that go?
So the fee that's collected would go into our general fund, into our Burbank Animal Shelter, it goes into our Burbank Animal Shelter account, but ultimately into the general fund.
Thank you. And those are all my questions. Mr. Mayor, if you have any questions, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Uh, no questions. So, Ms. Smith, fantastic presentation. Colleagues will open it to deliberation if anyone has comments. Otherwise, we can certainly entertain a motion. Yes, Councilmember Anthony?
Uh, yes. First of all, I'm, I'm in favor of this agenda item because the last thing I would want us to do is to deal with somebody's four-legged family member in Superior Court, miles away, after weeks of waiting and processing. You don't ever know which judge you're gonna get. Bringing this local means that we have our superintendent of the animal shelter overseeing this, someone who we know has experience, who sees animals every day, who works with animals. For me, bringing this local is very important. The determinations can be made easier, and I believe better and faster. If it's all right with my colleagues, I would like to add a section to the code, if it's possible. On page four of Attachment One, Section D, it starts, "The superintendent of the animal shelter," or their designee, "herein after referred to as the hearing officer shall preside over the administrative hearing." Coming down halfway through that paragraph, it says, "The hearing officer shall hear and consider all relevant evidence, objections, and protests, and shall receive testimony under oath relative to the alleged potentially dangerous and/or vicious animal. The hearing officer may admit into evidence all relevant evidence, including incident reports and affidavits of witnesses." I would like to add a statement, a sentence there, like to add a sentence. And this is just from my own personal experience, looking at these instances and accusations and the happenings of dangerous and vicious animals. This is the sentence I'd like to add. "To prevent undue bias, the hearing officer may not ask about the breed of the dog or enter into evidence any reference or description related to breeding." We've seen a lot of rulings made on vicious and dangerous animals based on breed alone, not based on the actions or even the size of the animal. And I would like to keep that bias out of our ordinance, if that's all right with our council. Mr. City Attorney, is that a viable sentence? Is that something that could be defensible?
Well, I don't like it because I can imagine there are circumstances where maybe a history of one of those things you just mentioned is, is prevalent in the case, and we wouldn't want to pretend it wasn't considered if it was relevant. For instance, if someone had been illegally breeding dogs for years, and it was part of the factual posture of the case, I, I think it would be imprudent to exclude that. Or to have a code section that says the superintendent may not consider something that's simply a fact.
So my, the statement is not about the action of breeding, but it is-
You said may not consider-
Any reference or description related to breeding, so-
But it may, it may be material. So why would you, so in, 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 I wouldn't want to see an ordinance that prohibits them from considering information that may actually be relevant, which could include a reference to, say, 12 citations for illegal breeding in the backyard.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, so-
Or the dog was a product of six months of, uh, from the property where illegal breeding had been carried out for years, including 15 administrative citations, and you have a code section that says they shall not consider any reference.
So, okay, my intent was not to eliminate the reference to the act of breeding, but rather the breed of the dog.
They could proffer an insurance policy that excludes certain dogs, in which case it would, it would not comply with the order.
What do you mean?
There are homeowner policies that exclude certain breeds of dogs. Regardless of whether you think those dogs are wonderful dogs or not, there are insurance companies that refuse to cover certain dogs. So for instance, if a dog at issue is one of those dogs that's excluded from policy, we may have a compliance problem.
Well, how would that affect, how would that affect this?
I don't know, because I haven't considered your language before the last 90 seconds.
Fair enough.
Councilmember Anthony, if I might. I hear where you're coming from. I know where you're going with this. And, and I hear you as a dog owner myself. I know that there are some breeds that are, I'll say discriminated against more than others, even though they can be sweet pets. But I think the fact at hand here is that for this dog to be considered a vicious or potentially dangerous animal, there has to be an act that premeditates this. If you hate your neighbor, or you just don't like that they have a pit bull and you go complain, there are no grounds, if you cannot prove that there have been bites, that there have been attacks, that there have been things like that. So I think the matter at hand is that we're looking at the attack first. And, and that would be what the office, the hearing officer, with the folks at the shelter, et cetera, would, would look for.
Well, I would encourage you to ask questions of staff that are here before you to actually talk about maybe how they conduct those investigations, so that you're more comfortable with how they would exercise their discretion under this new ordinance.
I mean, sure, I could do that. That's fine.
Idea of vicious, either Ray, Mr. Joe Hall, or, or staff from, from animal shelter can discuss. But they are, to Vice Mayor's point, looking at facts and circumstances of a vicious incident. And so that would be their primary focus. Your statement was just too broad, where the breed may in some case be relevant, good or bad. And, but it would have the effect of somehow tainting the record if this matter was taken further in legal proceedings. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Well, that's, that's my worry, is that by simply adding in, I mean, I have no problem, you know, a description of the dog, or its size, or weight. But if we enter into the record, the breed of the dog, what I'm saying is, in my experience and in my research, it has seemed to create biases down the line.
That's just, you know.
Let me ask a question. I don't know, is the mayor's on-
Councilwoman Mullins, go for it.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking for you.
I can see you all.
I'm looking for you. I don't know. So is, is your concern that someone would just have an allegation against a dog because of the type of dog?
Because of its breed, yes.
Even without an attack happen?
Well, there may have been an attack, not an attack that would level or merit this type of hearing, but because we have seen this in previous-
So let me, let me ask staff a question, based on your comment, maybe this would help. Is there a level of attacks to another animal, dog, cat, from a, a pet before it becomes an open investigation? And that dog needs to be put under, you know, having the hearing and going through the process? Is there a certain attack, a scratch versus a bite? Because that's what you're, you know, assuming people, if they, if a dog scratches another dog, that might prompt an investigation. I think that's what Councilmember Anthony is worried about.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So as far as an incident is concerned on a person, it would be the severity of the bite that would prompt the, the designation of either potentially dangerous or vicious. So, for example, if we have multiple sutures that are required for a wound corrective surgery, cosmetic surgery, that's considered severe, and that is when it rises to the vicious dog designation. And that is what we're, we're looking at, is the severity of the bite. And that is always my question, and that is always what we ask, is how, what, what happened, what, what type of bite is it? What were the injuries like? Not what kind of dog is it? We first go to the, to the injury. But I will say, though, that there, just please also consider that there may be video recordings as well that might be submitted into evidence which may show the, the incident.
Thank you, because I wanted to also ask, you would need for them to provide evidence, obviously, whether it's a video, or pictures, or a doctor's bill, something has to be provided. So that gives you the sense of security that this is not just because of a breed of a dog that they're gonna-
I, I'm not, I'm not worried about our superintendent or our hearing officer. That's not, that's not my argument. The point is, if we enter into the record certain breed types, when this is brought to other, either civil matters, or other trials, or even presented in the news or in the public, we have seen over time, certain breeds are targeted for no other reason than simply having a name that sounds vicious. And I would not want our work that I appreciate, I like this ordinance, I would not want us to start to add to those biases. I don't want to create records in the public where we have breed names listed as, "These are the dogs that bite people." And it's just, that, that's where I'm coming from.
Colleagues, may I weigh in? Would that be alright? Thank you all. Uh, so Councilmember Anthony, I hear you. And what I'd like to propose, now we're talking about Paragraph E on page four of Attachment One, correct? Just, just want to reorient-
Paragraph D, the last, second to last sentence, Paragraph D.
Got it, okay. So what I would suggest is maybe we could include some language in there to the effect of, "The determination of the hearings officer shall not be based exclusively on the breed of the animal, but shall instead articulate specific facts justifying the determination that the animal is, is dangerous or vicious." Something in that vein. Would that alleviate your concerns, Councilmember?
Yes, I would like at least some basic language there, so that we know moving forward, we've put some guidelines in. I see.
Before we continue, I believe staff would like to make a further comment.
Good evening, Mayor Shelton, councilmembers. I just wanted to clarify for Councilmember Anthony that really the purpose of this ordinance is to change the process. Currently, we're changing the process instead of having to go through LA County courts. It's really just bringing it, redirecting it, and, and so I just wanted to make sure that you felt comfortable.
I'm totally okay with all of that, yes.
Just, just wanted, just wanted to clarify that, right? So we're gonna do exactly what we've been doing for many years, continue doing it, and it's just really to expedite and be a little bit more efficient in our process. But certainly, if council would like to add some additional language to the proposed ordinance, we're happy to do so. But certainly, we're not looking to change our process in how we handle vicious and potentially dangerous animals. It's really just expediting the process. So just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, staff.
And if I, oh, if I may add as well, for us to initiate a petition for potentially dangerous dogs or animals, we would have to have two separate instances occur within a 36-month period. If it's a severe bodily injury or death, then staff can initiate a petition for vicious designation. So we're not looking at a solely, a single incident for the lower-level type of bites that we, that councilmember may, may be considering when we're looking at, you know, what, what could occur. We would need at least two separate instances where there has been an attack for at least the potentially dangerous dog designation to, for staff to even file the initial petition. Obviously, we'll have evidence of a vicious, potential, potentially vicious designation based off of the injury, and that would only requires one throughout the 36-month period.
Well, then, I feel comfortable, uh, Mr. Mayor, if, if, according to your language that you were proposing, simply putting in, you know, the hearing officer shall not use breed as a determining factor, like something simple as that.
Well, to be fair, Councilmember, you know, what I said was, it shall not be, any decision they make would not be exclusively based on breed. I'm trying to thread the needle here. It could be a relevant factor, as the city attorney is mentioning. I would hesitate, I would, I, I don't think there's any scenario where a determination would be made exclusively on breed, but for that reason, I don't see any issue personally, including language, just, you know, reiterating that they would need to articulate the factors that justify the designation. City Attorney, do you have any concerns with that?
I kind of like 5-1-1603, this is bottom of page three, top of page four, Paragraph A. It says, "If an animal control officer, law enforcement officer herein after referred to as investigating officer, has investigated and determined that there exists, that there exists probable cause to believe that an animal is potentially dangerous or vicious." I, I like the idea of inserting some language right here, saying, "Based upon, whether we call it physical incidents or facts and circumstances involving the dog, and not based solely upon the breed of the dog, they shall petition the superintendent." So in that case, it goes to the probable cause, and that it's based upon facts and circumstances, and shall not be based solely upon the breed of the dog. That is, rather than limiting the record, because down in D, you're actually-
Rather than tying the hands of the hearing officer, okay.
So, so I think that, that to me makes sense to insert your, your qualification. Staff can help me with, with what you want to call facts and circumstances or incidences, whatever the statutory definition is for that. When we bring this back for adoption, should it be introduced tonight, we can redline that change to include the language, and not solely based upon the breed of the dog.
I, I would be comfortable with that. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, was that your intent?
It works for me. Uh, I think that's a great suggestion from our city attorney. I see why we pay him the big bucks. Let's hear from our other colleagues. Any thoughts on that potential amendment?
No, I agree. Perfect location for it, just include the language.
I, I also agree, and just want to highlight, as we're wrapping up, thank you to staff for bringing this forward. It, it's a win-win for everybody. It makes life easier for attorneys. It makes life easier for all of you, because I know we have, we have no abundance of space in, in our, in our animal shelter. So thank you for, for bringing this forward. And it makes life easier on our residents, who may unfortunately have to go through this process because they get to, like Councilwoman Anthony mentioned, do it here at home, and not have to wait 45 days. So thank you for that.
Fantastic. Well, Councilmember Anthony, if you want to make the motion, go right ahead.
Yeah, okay, I will, yes. I move that we introduce an ordinance of the council and the city of Burbank establishing Article 16, Potentially Dangerous and Vicious Animals, in Chapter One, Animals Title Five of the Burbank Municipal Code, with the redline amendments coming on the second reading.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second, and just to clarify, the amendment pertains to proposed Section 5-1-1603 subdivision A of the ordinance, the added language there in the middle of that paragraph?
Yes.
Just confirming with the motion and second, okay? All right, any further discussions or clarifications or questions from staff?
One last clarification. My sister works at a dog and cat rescue, and she has dealt with many of these types of animals. I want to thank my colleagues and staff for allowing me to articulate the, the things that I have seen and could potentially be problematic with the dealings of vicious and dangerous animals. Thank you for bringing this ordinance. I think it is going to do a lot of good. I think it is going to do a lot of good and save a lot of animals.
Thank you for speaking up for our four-legged friends.
All right, well, as they say, teamwork makes the dream work. Good work, everybody. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz?
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations. We'll be talking about that again here at an upcoming meeting. Colleagues, before we go, everyone okay? Anyone need a break? Are we okay to proceed?
We're good, Mr. Mayor.
General nodding of the heads, great. So now we move to item eight. This is another public hearing. Before I hand it back to the vice mayor, let me just go through a couple prefatory remarks. This is the time and place for the hearing on project number 23-0003343, adoption of a resolution to confirm the community development director's determination and prior approval of the streamlined ministerial design review for a mixed-use multifamily residential project located at 3201 West Olive Avenue pursuant to Burbank Municipal Code Title 10, Chapter One, Division 12, and Senate Bill, California State Senate Bill 35. Before we begin, colleagues, are there any disclosures relating to this public hearing?
No.
Take that. Okay, we have a no. Any city council members have any communications, including written or oral, with any person regarding this subject matter?
No.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have, Mr. Mayor.
And do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, emails, and other documents?
You do.
Has the city received any written communications on this matter? And if so, have they been provided to all city council members?
We have, and they have been provided.
Fantastic. Then I order at this time that they be made part of the record for tonight's public hearing. At this time, with the representative of the community development department, please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us.
Thank you. Can I have my presentation on the screen? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, and members of the city council. My name is David Kim, senior planner with the city's planning division. The project before you is project number 23-0003343, a consideration of an SB 35 streamlined minister approval process application for a proposed mixed-use multifamily residential development at 3201 West Olive Avenue. SB 35 is a California state law that became effective in 2018, which provides for streamlined minister review for qualifying housing developments projects. The city of Burbank is subject to SB 35 because the city did not make sufficient progress on reaching its regional housing needs assessment, or RENA allocation, provided by the state for the fifth housing element planning cycle, which was from 2014 to 2021. The proposed project would address reaching the city's current RENA allocation numbers for the sixth planning cycle, which was from October 2021 to October 2029. The project will also make inroads in the city's existing three-to-one jobs, housing imbalance, as well as facilitating new housing units to meet the city's general plan housing goals, and the city's council goal of facilitating the development of 12,000 units by 2035. In the next few slides, I will be presenting a summary of the project description. The project is a proposed five-story mixed-use housing development with 144 units and 1,058 square feet of ground floor retail commercial space. The project will also include 181 subterranean level parking spaces. As proposed, the project will be consistent with the city's commercial and residential parking standard as applicable in the city's municipal and state density bonus regulations. In addition, this project's features includes a new publicly accessible open space area. 15-foot wide sidewalks will also be developed along all three frontages of Lima, Olive, and Alameda, which will be consistent with the city's goal of general plan standard, and set aside also 15 new affordable units for very low-income household. In accordance with state and city's density bonus regulation, the applicant is requesting a 50% density bonus housing development, which includes setting aside 50% of the proposed allowable base density units, or 15 units, as very low-income units, which will also be deed restricted for at least 55 years. As proposed, the project is providing the required number of affordable units per state density bonus law. Per state density bonus law, the project applicant is also requesting the permitted density bonus concessions and waivers. For this SB 35 application, the applicant is requesting one concession and three waivers. The applicant is requesting a density bonus concession for how density is calculated for a density bonus project. Consistent with state density bonus law, the applicant is able to use the gross acreage of the project site. In this case, it would be 1.64 acres when calculating the base density for the project. Therefore, the project includes a request for 144 units with the 50% density bonus requests. The applicant has also requested three waivers from the following standards: maximum structure height, average building setback, and also the required onsite private trees requirement of the MDC2 zone. A more detailed discussion on the proposed waivers from the applicable standards can be found in the staff report. Staff has determined that the requested concession and the waivers comply with applicable local and state density bonus regulation, facilitating construction of allowable units for the proposed affordable housing project. In the next couple of slides, I will be going over briefly the project timeline for this project. On June 24, 2022, the project applicant, Worth Real Estate Group, submitted an SB 35 notice of intent to submit a streamlined minister approval application for the proposed mixed-use development. The city initiated a tribal consultation process within the 30-day state mandated timeline, notified in the Native Americans tribes that were traditionally and culturally affiliated with the geographic area of the proposed project on July 6, 2022. The city did receive requests for consultation about the project from two tribes, the Tetevians and the Kiss Nation. In addition, on August 23, 2022, the project's NOI application went before council, where the council affirmed that the project met the psych eligibility criteria as described in Government Code 65913.4, subsection lowercase a to uppercase A to C. On April 20, 2023, the city provided the project applicant with an SB 35 notice of intent completeness letter stating that two enforceable tribal enforcement agreements with the Tetevians and Kiss Nations were finalized, and the SB 35 notice of intent application process was completed. The applicant was then eligible to submit the formal SB 35 streamlined minister approval application to the city. On July 3, 2023, the applicant submitted the SB 35 application to the city. In accordance with state law, staff reviewed the project plans for compliance with city objective standards, including zoning and design standards within the required 60-day review timeline. As stated in the staff report, the city has complied with the 60-day shot clock review for each applicant recent middle of the proposed project. The project before you tonight for consideration was based on a recent middle of the project received by the city on January 11, 2024. The project site is a triangular-shaped area bounded by North Lima Street, West Olive Avenue, and West Alameda Avenue. The site is currently vacant and has limited landscaping features and gravel ground cover. The proposal includes a law tie agreement that would facilitate the development of the proposed mixed-use project. As for the surrounding areas, west of the site is the existing Teleria mixed-use project and existing commercial land uses. North of the project site, across from Alameda, is an exist, are existing residential uses, including an established single-family residential neighborhood. South of the project site, across from Olive, are office, restaurants, and studio uses, including Burbank Studio property. The project site is zoned currently MDC2 Media District Media Limited Commercial, and the general plan land use destination is Media District Commercial. The project site is also located in the city's existing Media District specific plan area, and is surrounded by planned development zones, Media District Commercial, and multifamily zones. In the next few slides, I will be providing a summary of the project analysis. Staff has determined that the proposed SB 35 project is consistent with all applicable city objective standards found in the Burbank Municipal Code, including any adopted rules and regulation and applicable city adopted plans at the time that the project was submitted for the NOI application. These standards include the MDC2 development standards, and also the city's density bonus and inclusionary housing ordinances. The project is also consistent with the Burbank 2025 general plan. This includes, combined with general plan standards for floor ratio and density requirements as a proposed density bonus project. Furthermore, the project will be consistent with land use goal two, sustainability policy 2.6, mobility element goal three, complete streets policy 3.5, and noise element goal one, noise compatibility land use policy 1.3. This slide shows the proposed site plan. The proposed building, represented in the color blue, is an LSHA building with the main residential lobby facing along Alameda. The purple color area represents the residential amenities, such as the outdoor deck and the swimming pool area. The orange color represents the proposed retail commercial space along with Olive Avenue. The green color represents the publicly accessible open space area. The yellow color would represent the proposed entry and exit of the subterranean parking area. And lastly, the red dash line represents the existing property line. This is a proposed rendering of the project site area overlooking from the southeast. Staff has determined that the project is consistent with applicable objective design standards of the MDC2 zone. This includes requirements such as compliance with recessed building entries, wall heights, and building reflectivity standards. For the proposed design of the building, the project applicant proposes to utilize different exterior materials, such as concrete, wood composite panel, and metal panels. The proposed building massing is also broken up by the facade treatment along the three street frontages. Furthermore, the project's design would also include new landscaping areas along the street frontages and the publicly accessible open space, which is located east of the proposed mixed-use building. This is the proposed landscaping plan. This includes 16 new, the project will include 16 new street trees in accordance with the city's street tree master plan. In addition, there will be 39 private trees that were planted along the building's frontages, and also in the publicly accessible open space area. In accordance with the city's SB 35 application process, the following required notices were provided. The public notice was mailed to all property owners and occupants within 1,000-foot radius of the project site, and was published in newspaper 10 business days prior to the council meeting. Furthermore, in accordance with the additional noticing requirement for certain projects in the Media District specific plan area, the project was noticed to all property owners south of Oak Street, between Mariposa Street and Clyburn Avenue, located north of the Ventura Freeway. In accordance with SB 35, the housing project that qualifies for SB 35 application review is not subject to CEQA. Furthermore, the project at the time of the SB 35 notice intent submittal was not required to prepare any studies that will otherwise be required under CEQA as well. Therefore, in accordance with the requirements of the city's SB 35 application processing regulations, city staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution of the city council of the city of Burbank, confirming the community development director's determination that project number 23-0003343, located at 3201 West Olive Avenue, is consistent with all applicable objective zoning and design review standards, and approving the project's streamlined ministerial design review. This concludes my presentation, and my contact information is on the screen. Staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kim. Excellent presentation. Vice Mayor, would you assist again with public comment?
I believe we have the applicant here, though, and we have a presentation from them, correct?
Oh, fantastic.
Please join us up here, Mr. Worth. Thank you so much for being here.
Of course, if we could pull that presentation up. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, Jeff Worth. Last time I left my pointer here, so this time I have to put the leash on my hand. Can I advance the slides, or do you do, what do I use this? Okay, thank you. I'll be quick, I know it's been a long night. Little history lesson, the site, you know, is there in red. We bought this back in 2012. At the time we purchased the site, it was, there's an existing development agreement for about 110,000 square foot office building. We came to final agreement with Mrs. Hope at her home over some lemon meringue pie in her dining room. And I assure you, the pie was good, and the price we paid her was better for her than the pie was for me. This is an example of what that project looked like, the office building. What you'll notice, I don't know the right place to shine this, but I'm trying to show at the corner, that open space, that was a requirement in the development agreement at that time. It was very important to Mrs. Hope to have a plaza kind of highlighting and celebrating her husband, Bob Hope. In addition to what you'll see in a minute here, a statue featuring Mr. Hope, there was an intention to have a comedy walk of fame and have some highlights of different comedians that he worked with through the years. We came back with this residential project, but with no requirement for that open space, but we still decided to include it. I made a commitment to her back then that we would develop this project and honor him, and so that part of the project remains, although it's not something that we were required to do. Here is the image you just saw from Mr. Kim of the project. Just to give people a sense, this project has about 25% of the peak trips that the office project that was previously approved here will have. The, there's the statue of Mr. Hope there on the corner, and the open space. You know, we're hopeful to get this off the ground soon. We all know we could use some housing. I think with our office buildings, you can't really see him here just across the street, we could fill this project two times over, I'm sure. So thanks for your time, I'm here for any questions.
We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. As with our last public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak must present a pink salmon-colored, oh, I did it again, a salmon-colored card. For those wishing to call in during the public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Any...
Can I? May I?
I don't have a card, but yes.
Mr. Razati, can you just present a card to the city clerk after you're done with your comment?
I certainly will. Chris Razati, just wanted to...
I certainly will. Chris Rosati, just wanted a couple of thoughts here. I like the location of this project. It doesn't impact residential neighborhoods. Um, it's good walking. Um, there's a lot of of shops and and um restaurants in the area. So I really like that part of it. But I think the place we fell down on, and when I say we, I include me, is um Talaria, where we didn't have the proper curb cuts for deliveries and moving trucks and um and delivery of food to uh to Whole Foods. Um, so sometimes the the delivery trucks park on on Alameda and they block one lane and it clogs and people are trying to get around that lane. They drive into other traffic. So I would just say, just make sure that that uh the delivery of the um in and out of the of this project doesn't block traffic, because I think that's one thing that, and I I look at that at every project when I'm on the planning board now. It's just, it's it's in my head. The Bob Hope, uh, I I like, I every time, every time I seen a rendition of this project, I was always leery about the park. It's a very busy street and yet it's distracting when people are out there and cars are driving. I would rather have the amenities on the inside of the project for the for the tenants rather than the exterior, just it's a safety thing for me. But in honor of Mr. Hope, maybe, maybe it's not a bad idea. I I I understand keeping your promise. Um, I just think it's better to have it on the interior. And then lastly, boy, you know, I'd really want to see us, I I want to see us focus on for sale housing. And folks, we got to do it. We we got to incentivize for sale housing. We 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 need to keep residents in Burbank. We need to drive our inventory levels up to keep kids in school, to get enrollment in our schools, to help our budget crisis at our schools. We 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 need to focus on that element. We keep getting this product. I like the product. It's a great, it, Mr. Worth does, I've seen them all, they're great. But we as a council, as a community, have to focus on for sale housing to keep residents in Burbank and and bring housing prices down. Not everybody wants to rent at five and six thousand dollars a month. You're never going to get anywhere. But if we can get our inventory levels up on for sale housing, it'll bring prices down where people can can spend five thousand dollars and at least they have ownership in something. So I I just want us to bring that to the table and and just, we have to start focusing on that. The developers are are renting and and they're making money and I I know, I understand we're trying to provide housing, but I I think there's another element. There's, people are telling me all the time that there's just no options to buy. You know, there's one listing on Riverside Drive right now in Toluca Lake, one condo for sale, one, that's it. So let's focus on that. Uh, I think with staff's help and 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 a strong focus uh for our community, I I think it 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 may benefit us in the long run. I know it'll benefit our schools. I know it'll benefit our residents and I know it'll benefit young people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Rosati. Please complete a a salmon card, not pink, a salmon card. We have one caller coming in. Great, we'll put him on the line.
The first caller is Kimberly Narcit.
We, um, to the caller, we we cannot hear you. Is there a way you can get closer to your phone?
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Madam City Clerk, can we restart their time? Thank you so much. You're you're on with the city council. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, good evening. Yes, I just wanted to talk about the uh new development in the media district. I don't know how to properly announce it. The one with the Bob Hope Park. Um, I kind of just wanted to reiterate what this gentleman is saying about there not being anything available to buy in this city. Um, I work in the entertainment industry, specifically animation. And I always see everybody goes building more apartments, which keeps everybody in a rent trap. And I know because I've been a renter for twenty years and I just would like to know, when are we going to start building stuff that people can buy? I certainly do appreciate the aesthetics um of the worst development, but it's not really helping the housing situation. It's just making it worse. You're just making more units uh for people to be in a rent trap. Thank you for hearing me out, that's it.
Thank you so much for your call. Madam City Clerk, do we have any other callers on the line? We have another coming in just a moment. Great.
The next caller is Jimmy Barnett.
Hello?
Hi, you're on with city council.
Thank you. Hi, Mayor Nick and hi mayor and vice mayor and.
I'm so sorry, we, I'm so sorry, we're losing you a little bit there. Can you try speaking um clearly into your phone and closer to your phone? We can restart your time.
Sure, sure, I'll do it this way.
Clerk, if we can restart their time? Thank you. All right, you're on. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you so much, mayor and vice mayor and city council member. Um, and and our attorney and city planner, uh, city manager. Um, I'm just concerned about the fact that we used to have a three-story regulation for buildings. And um I know that the Verdugo, I mean, not Verdugo, Alameda and Olive intersection is dangerous. People come through there at speeds that are just horrible. So something has to be done with the traffic flow there if they're going to put up this building. Uh, I like the thing of the building. I'm just not sure how people are going to use that green space if they can't get across the street. Um, I I know that the gentleman before me said about the trucks that park on Alameda. Because I drive that on a regular basis, that happens, traffic backs up, people nearly get rear ended because it does. Something needs to happen to slow that down and create a space so that people can get across the street, use that nice green space. Um, I I like the project. I just wish that there were more parking. Um, a hundred and forty-four units or a hundred and eighty-one units for a hundred and forty-four um, uh apartments is, most people have two cars. That's not going to be enough. Where are they going to park? Uh, and is that going to cut off the retail um space also? So I just wanted to put that through. Um, I've been wa- watching most of the night. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you so much for your comment. Madam City Clerk, do we have further callers?
We do not.
Alrighty, there being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, I would like to respond to the public comments that we receive. For the co- for the public comment regarding the the loading space, the project would uh feature a residential loading area as part onsite. Um, it is uh as part of the project's amenities that would be available to the residents to use. So there is a proposed loading area for specifically residents on the on property, on property, uh, along North Lima Street. Um, regarding the residential uh o- open space, comment about the residential open space, there is proposed residential open space. Um, it is uh along the, um, it is enclosed. Uh, it is uh a- along the West Olive Avenue more relevant on that site. Um, as as for the uh publicly accessible open space, that's east of the building, that will be accessible to uh the bu- to the public, uh, but it will be on private property. As for the comments regarding um the emphasis on for sale units, um, for this project, um, the applicant was able to propose um either for sale units or rental. Um, we we do understand uh public cons- um comment public comment about the need for for sale housing, but for this specific project, um, the project is proposing rental units, um, which um is um consistent with um the regulations in our code to propose rental unit housing projects. Um, so that's the answer for that comment. And for the um, the the limitations on the uh that's the building height. So this is a density bonus project. And so as part of the density bonus um request, uh, the back, the applicant is also able to request what's called waivers or concessions to development standards uh that will help build out the actual uh constru- uh construction of the affordable housing project. So one of the waivers is for the waiver for structure height, uh, as presented in the staff report, which is, which was requested by the applicant to build higher uh that uh to allow for um the the construction of the affordable housing project. And then concerns about the, uh, there were public comments about concern about crossing the street uh to access to public open space. Um, so we do have uh conditions in the resolution um that are part of this project, uh, where we presented this project to um our transportation planning and also our public worst traffic, where uh there will be conditions uh where um the applicant will work with the city to implement um off-site improvements. Um, this, uh, one will be the realigning of the crosswalk on Olive. Uh, so that that and also the signal improvements to help ensure that there is a safe uh crossing um, uh, to the open space area. Uh, and as for the more uh comment about the more parking uh regarding the project, the project is 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 complying with the city's municipal code requirement for commercial parking. Um, and they are also complying with this uh state density bonus requirement for parking standards for the residential component. Um, and so they're actually are providing more than um the required density bonus parking uh spaces. Uh, so if in response to that comment, they are um providing what is required of the code in addition uh in compliance with also the state density bonus law.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. I appreciate the thorough response to all of the comments. Um, Mr. Ramirez, looks like you want to say something. And after that, we will have um Mr. Worth, the applicant, if you'd like to say anything.
Uh, just to add to um Mr. Kim's comments, I just wanted to answer two questions. I believe the last speaker on the phone had a had a called out a hundred and forty-four parking spaces, a hundred and eighty-one units. It's actually a hundred and forty-four units with a hundred and eighty-one spaces. So to Mr. Kim's point, they are providing uh above and beyond the minimum standards. The other thing in one of the written comments we received, there was a question as to why could we not require additional affordability beyond what's being proposed, and that is because under density bonus law and of SP thirty-five, um, the developer is allowed to request and the city must allow for the development under those standards. We can't impose a percentage higher than that. And as you all recall, our inclusionary requirements are fifteen percent. So they are meeting both state density bonus law and our inclusionary requirements. If we were going to require higher affordability, it would come through a different vehicle, whether it was through a planned development, development agreement where that's negotiated or if we were to modify our inclusionary regulations, which also requires a feasibility study. And if you go over fifteen percent, that feasibility study has to be considered by the uh state HCD to determine that fact that we're not chilling the production of housing. So I wanted to add that to the uh discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. And now, uh, Mr. Worth, if you have any responses to public comment? Thank you. Um, now, does the council have any questions of staff? Councilmember Mullins.
Thank you. Um, I have some questions. Um, the loading and unloading zone that you're talking about, there's going to be a space for that. That is not going to take away from the hundred and eighty-one parking spaces. That's in addition to the parking spaces.
Yes, Councilmember Mullins, uh, that is correct. Um, the loading spaces actually uh will not take away the uh parking spaces that are proposed.
Okay, thank you. Um, I do want to find out, ask about the affordable units, the fifteen. I didn't see in the report, and if I missed it, I'm totally wrong, but what is the size of the units? Are they all the same size? Um, are they gonna offer two bedrooms, three bedrooms? If you can walk us through that.
Yes, um, I don't have in top of my mind this actual sizes, but the there will be a variety of um units provided, um, including uh studio units, one bedroom, and also two bedroom units.
And and that I'm interested really in the affordable, the fifteen units, so one bedroom, two bedrooms. Um, and that, here's the reason I'm asking. We understand there is a need for affordable housing. And I really want to make sure um the housing that will be provided will be for family affordable housing versus, you know, a college student. Nothing against a college student, but we look at income. Uh, but I want to make sure that these units are big enough to house families. Um, so that's why I'm interested in the size.
So the uh the the unit type, Scott Planback Planning Manager, so the unit types will be proportionate to the number of units in the in the in the in the project. So uh that's something we will work with the developer on with their housing department. Um, I don't, like Mr. Kim said, I don't have the exact number in my head as to the number or the exact number on my fingertips for the number of units. But it is based on, there's proportionate number of two bedrooms and we get proportionate number of two bedrooms, one bedroom and studios. Just just to add to what I was, hopefully I'm hearing what you were asking, and that is I kind of have to bring you back to the fact that this is a ministerial project under SP thirty-five and a density bonus project. So, and it's an inclu- and has to comply with the inclusionary requirements. So the the mix of units for affordable will be in proportion to the same type of unit types that are going to be market rate. So those percentages will be the same. I totally understand the interest to try to create more units that are uh accessible and provide the space necessary for larger families or families with children. However, that's not one of the uh objective development standards that's in our code and it's not one of the requirements under state law. Uh, clearly, there are other ways, as I mentioned before, in other projects where we could negotiate. Or in the case of, like an example, the Civic Center project where we actually have site control. Those are things that can be incorporated as components of projects that we want to consider if we want to add or create larger units. But in this particular project and what the limitations under state and local requirements are, we don't have a specific provision that we can apply and say, the units have to be this size, they have to be these minimum standards. Those can't be applied to the project.
Okay, thank you. And I I wasn't implying that we need to dictate that. I was eh more of curiosity to see what, you know, how many people can actually be in the units, understanding that it is an SP thirty-five project. And the reason also, there's a part two to my question is under typical affordable housing in section eight, we have to evaluate their financial needs and we do that on once a year basis, if I'm not mistaken, maybe every couple of years. Um, so how are we, um, it, does the city have authority? Or how do we find out if in fact the individuals who are continued to live in the fifteen units are affordable? Meaning their their income is below or at the required um income that or at the required income that is qualified under the law for low-income housing?
As councilmembers, so as part of the affordability requirement in our code, we do have a condition that there will be an affordable housing agreement that will specify the units that are affordable and for also the duration of how long they are affordable for. So as part of the, our, or, Burbank Municipal Code, there is, there is a, an agreement that is in place to lock into affordability as far as the process of choosing. And that process that, that would be separate from the housing agreement, affordable housing agreement process. But that, if, correct me if I'm wrong.
The city, we do confirm for tenants rental income for the units. So it's something that we do. We lock in, as Mr. Kim mentioned, for 55 years, 15 units. And our housing department's in charge of confirming income for those units.
So if someone to move out and they bring in somebody else in?
Yes.
Or in the event, let's say this person becomes, when the law to him becomes rich, all of a sudden, that would be great. Okay.
So staff is referring to condition of approval number 88, attachment 1-20, which provides for provision for review and approval of a marketing and tenant selection plan, provision for the review and approval of a waiting list management plan, provision and description of the process for qualifying income eligible tenants and monitoring affordable rents, procedures for establishing affordable rents, filling vacancies, and maintaining affordable units and eligible tenants, provisions requiring verification of household incomes, and provisions requiring maintenance of records to demonstrate compliance. We have a form, affordable housing agreement. We make minor modifications for each project, but essentially it's the same one, similar to the ones we've used for BHC, customized for the private development projects, including planned developments and our more recent SB 35 projects.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Those are my questions.
Councilmember Anthony?
I just have a couple of questions for the applicant, if that's okay. Mr. Worth, I'm going to put you on the spot here real quick. So you're very well-known in the city as a commercial developer. Is this your first housing project?
No, we actually did a for-sale housing project here in Burbank, across the street from our media studios project.
Oh yeah, that's right. Yes.
The cottages.
The cottages.
Thank you.
Yeah, they have the daycare center there.
Right.
And affordable housing.
And affordable housing. Okay.
Correct.
Well, two years ago, you came before us and you had originally put this as commercial. So just walk us through a little bit of why that changed. Why no commercial and now we want to do housing?
Unfortunately, I wish the news wasn't as clear as it is about where we're going with the office world. As you all know, we live it pretty deep. I have no choice. That's my life. But we've sat with this site for a very long time. The family has wanted to see it. The Hope family has reached out to me to try to see what we're going to do about developing. The only prospect I have to develop this building in the short term, and I'm talking about a pretty long period, we've been in this city since the 80s, is residential. I think the challenges for a site like this are the office building being as small as it is compared to the, some of the larger ones that we've done. It's hard to attract a specific tenant group to fill that kind of building. So this is the prospect to get that vacant lot improved in the short term.
Well, I said this two years ago. I would be more than happy to see a housing development come forward for this site. And you put together a great project. You did the work. Thank you for bringing this. It's a great spot for housing. A lot of amenities. Almost, it's almost our second downtown. So appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Quick question and maybe a comment. You heard the speaker about bringing us some condominiums and project zones. So here you go. It's out there and hopefully.
For you. I have some ideas for you.
Oh, great. Okay, we'd love to hear it. So I think that's a good start.
And you will. I think that, I have some thoughts about that and I appreciate the comment. I just did want to answer, respond to, the loading area is actually off the street. All of our parking is underground. So the loading won't interfere with the parking for the tenants, but also will be off the street.
And the 181 spaces with that also, that would accommodate the retail. We don't know yet what's going there, but that's going to supposed to accommodate the retail.
Probably be my largest leasing challenge in my career is renting that retail space. It's, you know, just where it is and what it is and the size of it. But it does, it's parked for a commercial code.
While we're on the retail space, that was my one question I had of this project. What are we envisioning here? One commercial tenant, multiple commercial tenants?
Definitely one, just because of the size of the space. You know, we're to figure out what that's going to be. We'll make it. We may get somebody in there once, but we need somebody who's going to survive. And my guess is probably going to be something fitness-related because we can draw off the people, both in our project, in Guzman's project next door, our office projects across the street, that probably have the most success. That's my guess.
Well, here's hoping you also bring another business back to Burbank.
Right.
I just want to thank you for your presentation today and thank you for pivoting because quite frankly, you saw the need. The need in our community is housing right now. So thank you for continuing to be a good steward and a good partner to our city in that sense.
No, I appreciate it. We got to work together to get this solved. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, did you have any questions?
Just one, and it's for Mr. Worth. So, Mr. Worth, thank you for being here. Excellent presentation. I echo the sentiments of my colleagues. We do need more housing in our community. I also echo the comments from our planning commissioner. Not, this is not a criticism of the project. I mean, we need more housing of all kinds. I guess my question is, just in the context of design review, what were the factors that led you to go with rental housing as opposed to for-sale housing on this particular site?
You know, it's interesting. I know this is referred to as a streamlined process. I think we first applied almost two years ago. A for-sale project would include additional steps, including a subdivision map, things like that, that we, we think would be more appropriate for some other sites that we have in mind. Where we have maybe larger sites that we could do a combination of for-sale and rental that we'd like to look at. Hope that answers the question.
It does. And I would just say that, you know, to echo the Vice Mayor, you've been a very good partner for the city. We appreciate that. And to the extent that you have thoughts on how we can incentivize the creation of more for-sale units in our community, I, just speaking for myself, would certainly welcome a comment letter. Any thoughts that you have, any experience that you're willing to share with us? It's good that you have it. It's even better when you share it because maybe we can make some changes. So thank you, Mr. Worth.
Appreciate it.
Vice Mayor, thank you for handling public comment. I'm done with my questions. Any other questions that came up?
I have one more question for staff and just generally to answer the questions that some of our callers made. Where can folks go to see some of the projects that we have online? Or, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that we do, to the public's questioning, we do have coming online affordable housing, market rate housing of the rental and the for-sale type. So I think it's important that we highlight that. Where can folks go to ask questions about that? Look for that stuff?
Vice Mayor, so we do have, on our planning webpage, we do have a list of active projects that consist of housing projects. So there are, in the city's website, where you are available to view these projects in detail. And also, if you have any housing-related questions or projects, we also have our staff in our housing division that will be available to assist in that question.
And for folks wondering, that's burbankca.gov/communitydevelopment/activeprojects. Please go check it out. Our folks are working on some wonderful things.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other questions? No, then I declare the public hearing closed and the council will now move into deliberations. What is the council's pleasure? Comments, motions?
Comments, really quick. Great project. You know, really can't see anything. You provided us with the great design and open space. And the most important thing is our neighborhood protection. And I give shout out to the neighborhood staff and also members of the community who live around the area for advocating during the Tolaria project and after the Tolaria project. I remember sitting here as the clerk and demanding the cul-de-sac, demanding that to have neighborhood protection. So we already have great segue to having this project without having the concerns that came from the neighborhood during the Tolaria project. So I love the design. You know, I think it's something that I'm looking forward to see in that particular lot instead of having just the dirt right now that we drive by. So I'm looking forward to seeing the wonderful project coming up. So thank you for coming and providing more housing here.
Thank you. Councilmember Anthony?
Yeah, I think the project's great. Like I said two years ago, I was hopeful to see a good housing project when it was first submitted. Yeah, I'll be moving forward with this.
Great. Vice Mayor?
I don't have any further comments. I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, do it.
Alrighty. I move that we adopt a resolution and consideration of the Community Development Director's determination and approval of the streamlined ministerial design review for a mixed-use multifamily residential project at 3201 West Olive Avenue, pursuant to Burbank Municipal Code Title 10, Chapter 1, Zoning, Division 12, streamlined ministerial approval process, and Senate Bill 35, California Government Code Section 65913.4, Community Development Department.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I'll just say, I think this is a fantastic project, aesthetically very pleasing. It's going to be a great partnership with Tolaria across the street. Mr. Worth, if you're still listening, bring me a project with some homeownership and then we'll really be cooking. That's what I'd love to see. But with that said, fantastic project. So let's go to the roll call. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz.
Yes, motion carries. Good work, everybody. Colleagues, do we need a five-minute break before we, I'm seeing some yeses?
Yes.
Okay, five-minute break. It's 10:24 your time. Let's be back at 10:29. We are in recess. We are in recess. Let's come back from break. Okay, everyone, we are back. We're on our final portion of the agenda tonight. We have two reports to City Council this evening. After staff's presentation, the City Council will proceed with in-person public comment only. In order to participate in in-person public comment, please fill out a yellow public comment card and hand it to Ms. Clark, our city clerk. Speakers will have three minutes to speak on the agenda item at the conclusion of the staff presentation. I will mention that Vice Mayor will be handling public comment. And as long as you have not spoken on these items in general public comment, you are good to go. First up, we have item nine. This is a first report of a review of the Charter Review Committee's final recommendations. Ms. Catherine LeBrado, sorry, Ms. Catherine LeBrado from the City Manager's Office, please present the report.
Good evening, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, and members of the council. Catherine LeBrado, Assistant to the City Manager with the City Manager's Office. Tonight, if you guys, oh, there we go. They were reading my mind. This evening, I'm here to provide the council with a review of the 2022 Charter Review Committee's final recommendations. Just to provide a little bit of brief background, the city of Burbank is what's called a charter city, meaning that we're governed by our own charter. The charter provides guidance on municipal affairs of the city and can only be changed or altered by a vote of the people. According to Charter Section 1400, the charter must be reviewed every five years. Council appoints members to the Charter Review Committee, and then the committee recommends either a full review of the charter, a limited review of the charter, or no further review of the charter at that time. So on March 15, 2022, at a City Council meeting, each council member appointed a representative from the public to serve on the 2022 Charter Review Committee. And we have three of the members here today. And I'll introduce them before we get going. They're actually going to join me up here. So we have Chair Christopher Rosati. And we also have our Vice Chair Gloria Salas and Committee Member Isabel Omero. And Isabel actually replaced Gavin Cho. So Gavin Cho was originally appointed, and then in January of 2023, she replaced him. He had to resign due to school commitments. We also have two other committee members, Kevin Muldoon and Alejandro Escobar, who were not able to be here tonight. But Mr. Muldoon was here a little bit earlier. You guys saw him. And kudos to you guys for being here at 10:30 at night for our presentation. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Chair Rosati to continue with the presentation and provide some additional information on the committee's meetings and further recommendations.
Can we get the slide presentation?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Chris Rosati, Chair of our Charter Review Committee. Just want to say, first of all, it's just an honor and a privilege for all of us to be able to serve in this capacity. We had a great working group of individuals. We all debated and dialogued and always found mutual ground. So I found it just very gratifying being on this committee. Starting with Slide 4, the committee met six separate times in the spring of 2022, presented to City Council in August 2022. And at the same time, the committee recommended a full charter as follows. We're going to move to Slide 5. We discussed term limits for City Council members and board and commission members, the addition of a social equity and discrimination clause in the charter, and amending Section 1400 of the charter to allow Charter Citizens Committee to be appointed every eight years at a minimum, one year prior to the election, to an election year. Moving on to Slide 5. Since August of 2022, the committee met an additional eight times. Staff liaisons included Assistant City Manager Judy Wilkie, then Courtney Pageant, Senior Administration Analyst Vivian Garzon, Assistant City Manager Catherine LeBrado, and City Attorney Mr. Dugall. Updates to the committee's original recommendations are as follows. Term limits. The committee initially recommended term limits for Burbank City Council members and boards and commissions. A community outreach plan was developed, and a board commission members were surveyed regarding term limits. Community outreach was delayed several times due to ongoing outreach regarding city election process and possibility of districting. In November 2023, the committee voted to cease work on term limits due to the ongoing litigation. Slide 8. The committee initially recommended changing the charter review schedule from every five years to eight years. In November 2023, the committee voted not to move forward with this recommendation for the charter review. The committee felt that it would not be prudent to change the charter review schedule when there is possibility of the city election process that could change drastically over the next couple of years. Moving on to Slide 9. The committee initially recommended adding a social equity and anti-discrimination clause to the charter. During the fall of 2023, the committees developed a revised preamble to the city's charter to include language aimed at social equity. The committee recommends the council consider placing the revised preamble on the 2024 ballot. It should be noted that the committee also felt concerned about placing this single charter amendment on the 2024 ballot, given the amount of time and resources that would be needed. On behalf of the committee, we would like to thank the City Council for allowing us to complete this work and trusting us throughout the process. The committee is eager for your feedback from the council. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Chair Rosati, and all of the committee members that are present with us this evening. Before we go to questions, Vice Mayor, do you want to see if we have any public comment on that?
Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
All right, seeing no public comment, we can move on to questions from our council members.
All right, that solves that. Who'd like to go first?
Thank you, Mr. Rosati.
Yes, ma'am.
Great job. And I know it's been a long road. And I know I started with you guys when you first were initiated in 2022. And we had a lot of dialogues about everything that you addressed today. So I know it's been a lot of work. I do appreciate all the time all of you have put into this and dedication. I actually don't have any questions for you. I see what you're recommending, and I understand your recommendation as far as to wait due to the litigation that we're currently in the middle of, and that pertains to districting. So I do agree with your recommendation is to put things on hold until we figure out what happens with the litigation. So I know I'm going to hear from my colleagues, but it does make sense to actually put this on hold for right now. The question I have, and I'm not sure if the city attorney or maybe the city clerk, we did get an email today, no, yesterday, I believe. It was from Mr. Sherwood from my Burbank.com. But it has asking that we add language in the charter regarding adjudication of newspapers and advertising. And if maybe we just take a quick moment to remind the public what that means and what would be, what would prompt us to actually add language in the charter to change that?
So generally speaking, there are many state statutes that require the city to give notice in a newspaper of general circulation. And that's the phrase. It's in the Elections Code. It's in the Government Code. It's in the General Provision concerning ordinances. And so our charter essentially uses the same common reference which exists in the general laws of the state today. And that is that publication needs to be in a newspaper of general circulation. A newspaper of general circulation, there's a petition process, but generally means an adjudicated newspaper. And in our area presently, The Los Angeles Times is the only adjudicated newspaper or newspaper of general circulation that meets that requirement. It would be, if we change the charter now, it could be in conflict with state law. But one of the aspects of the comment letter was that their circulation in Burbank is much, much larger than The Los Angeles Times' print copy of the newspaper. And so it would be nice at one time if the general laws that require publication in a newspaper of general circulation permitted other forms of legal publication. So I don't have any disagreement with the comment. It's just a matter of state law catching up and permitting us to engage in other types of legal publication.
And Mr. Sherwood did come to one of our earlier meetings during public comment to state that.
Yes, and I appreciate the answer. And I understand this has been going on for some time now. But I think we owe it to him to publicly let him know that we, it's not because we refuse to put it in our charter, but we're restricted with, of course, the state law. And we hope that they change that and take a look at it sooner than later to make sure that we can include them in the future.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anthony, you want to go next?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up to that, and then I have my own question. If state law were to change and the definition of those newspapers would change, would we have to update our charter? Or would we simply be able to adopt?
So I would say at some point, it's an antiquated reference because I think the LA Times' print subscriptions are vastly shrinking, in which case it may be something else. So at such time as we take up a broader charter amendment on many of these provisions that the Charter Committee looked at, it may be prudent to look at expanding that language so that when the state law changes, just like they did for Brown Act posting, it took years and years and years. Most cities had websites that they already posted agendas on, for instance, before the state had a requirement to do so. So it's a good issue that's worth looking into the next time we're contemplating a charter amendment, once the districting issue is resolved so that we know how we're going to revise the charter. It makes sense to broaden it. But we still need clarity so that it's clear to the public what is legal publication. But it doesn't mean we can't consider, because our charter changes much less frequently than state law. Maybe there's a way for us to capture that.
Thank you. So my question is for, I guess, for the committee. I don't know if the committee discussed this, or maybe our city attorney knows this. There's a number of different possible items here. But the last one, the preamble, the committee was concerned about just putting one thing on the charter for amending. Is it possible to do multiple different changes to a charter on a single measure? To do a full charter change, like have those?
No, you would want to break them up into separate amendments because generally, there's a single-issue rule.
You want people to vote up or down on each?
You make it very confusing for the voters to pick which issue. If you have six issues in one measure, well, what if they like five of them but not the sixth? Not only that, but you also have a single-subject rule. Now, we could pull up many examples where maybe we don't think there's a single subject. But you'd want to make sure that they were clear and that you give them. Because we also, there's a whole requirement. Once you have a proposed measure, well, then you have to write a synopsis, which is limited to only 500 words. Then someone has to write arguments. So you really do need to break it up into concise issues.
Then let me ask this of our city clerk. Putting one item on a ballot is a heavy lift. Does it get easier if we're adding two or three? Does that process, does it cut down the process a bit if we do multiple measures on the ballot at the same time?
Right, so the county provides a cost estimator for adding ballot measures. And so, for example, in our upcoming election in November, say, if we had two City Council member races and one ballot measure, you're looking at a cost of approximately $300,000. If you take away the ballot measure, you're down to $260,000. So it's right around $40,000. Two ballot measures and two council races would be approximately $335,000.
Oh, okay. So it gets a little cheaper if you keep adding, okay.
That's just the cost of the county.
Oh, that's not our cost.
That's not our cost. It's not the arguments. It's not the publication. It's, there's a lot more.
Timing and staff time and staff hours.
And just to be clear, the committee was never given the cost aspect of this. We were only looking at the changes, but we weren't given the breakdown of the cost.
Okay. Okay, I'm done. Those are all my questions.
Councilmember Anthony, I have a follow-up to that question. Do we have the total cost of what it would be to put one item on the ballot?
We have an approximation. If we were to put it, say, on the June gubernatorial 2026 ballot, one ballot measure would be $294,000 was the estimate we were provided.
Okay. Does that include or not include the city?
To the chairs, it would not include the city's cost. To the chair's point, we didn't get, we were looking at, maybe the better word is the opportunity cost of having a committee, the schedule of getting matters to council. When they first started the work, their chore was much simpler. Look at our charter. It got complicated. They got put on hold. Then council sent additional items, which we thought might come. And it, I'll let the chair of the committee take it on from there. But we never, they were never presented cost choices or opportunity costs. But the costs that Madam Clerk is talking about are the cost to the county, for the county to do their process. It doesn't include the cost to the city of, you know, bringing an ordinance to the council. Outreach, because the public likes to know well ahead of time. You know, sessions on the language. The Charter Committee has a very solid recommendation on some of the language. The community may have broader input. And then there's just meeting the schedule. So there are certain things the city attorney's office has to do, the city clerk's office has to do, and then the community has to do in terms of advocates for and against the measure and that schedule.
Great, all things we would have to take into consideration. One more question for you, Mr. Rosati.
Yes, ma'am.
The committee was talking about term limits initially, and it sounds like there was some preliminary discussion on this. Do you have any thoughts, anything you'd like to share about that?
You know, it was preliminary. We had, we did a little bit of outreach, but everything kind of just stopped when the lawsuit happened. So we never actually had like full discussions, whether it was three years or five years, or you come off. We talked about if you come off a year, you run again in two years. We had a lot of open dialogue, but nothing really hammered down. It was just. had a lot of open dialogue, but nothing really hammered down. It was just a free flowing ideas. So we never got that far.
If I could provide a little bit of context, the committee was interested in surveying the public.
Yeah.
At the very time, we started 13 community meetings and hearings on the districting.
Yeah.
And I think there was a consensus that it would be incredibly confusing for the public to be doing a survey about term limits at the same time we were engaging them, sometimes as many as three or four times a week, about districting and, and overlapping the items.
Yeah, very much agreed there. Would have loved to see you all carry out the work. Hopefully we can see that in the future.
I mean, our tour of duty was supposed to be three to six months. We wanted to do in two years. So willingly, I mean, all of us had the opportunity to dive off and then say, but willingly, I mean, to serve. So, and like I said, I think it was a very good working group. So.
Well, thank you for hanging in there with us for these lovely last two years. And with us until almost 11:00 PM.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
You're having fun, aren't you?
Having a ball.
I see it. Yeah.
There's Taco Bell open until like the night.
Those are all my questions, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to ask.
Absolutely. Well, I just want to begin by thanking all of our committee members, not just those who stayed late tonight, although I certainly do, but all of you for agreeing to serve. You know, I'm just, I don't really have any questions. I'm just going to offer some feedback because I think that's always an important part of this. And then I'll turn it back to my colleagues. You know, on the issue of term limits, I think, I agree with the committee's recommendation to take no action tonight, but I like, I like to have some finality to every conversation. I've evolved on this issue. It was something that I was certainly, you know, interested in learning more about and looking what other communities do. I think we have term limits in this community, and they're called elections. And I think it works quite well in Burbank. Generally speaking, we do a pretty good job of turning folks over on councils and boards and commissions. So I, I think the decision not to push further on that issue, for this council member's perspective, I feel very comfortable with, with, with putting that to rest, at least for now. On the issue of the amendment to the preamble of the charter, I absolutely support that language. I think the conversation is when and how is the right way to present it to the voters and what's the most cost effective way to do it. But I think that the language that you came up with and crafted is really exceptional. And I look forward to, whether it's now or later, putting that before the voters to decide to approve. And I also fully agree with your decision, for the time being, and given the circumstances, not to adjust the, the time period with which we do our charter review. So with that, I really just want to thank you all for your service. And, you know, I don't want you to walk away feeling like it was all for naught. I think there were some really great conversations that came out of your working group. And like I said, if for no other reason, you convinced me adequately that term limits are not needed in Burbank. So, you know, that's one person's perspective.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I have a different perspective. I would like to see you finish the work on term limits at some point, if you get the chance. I know it's something you all were looking into. I would love to see that done. I know it's something that our community members have mentioned. And I'd love to learn what other communities are doing around this, because I know folks have asked for it. So I, a little bit of dissent there, Mr. Mayor, but I would love to see term limits come back as a discussion. And I also hope you all get to do that work.
Yeah.
Well, I, first of all, dissent's a great thing. That's why we live in a democracy. Although I did want to clarify, I believe, Mr. City Attorney, if we note and file or whatever action we take, I believe after tonight, the committee will be discharged from their duties. Am I correct?
Yes. And there's a process for council to restart another committee review, either with specific issues or another broad look.
Okay. I only bring that up vice mayor, because I think that certainly, to the extent the committee members have opinions offline, I'm sure they can and will share it with you. But just for the sake of clarity to the community, this will be the end, at least for now, of the 2022 Charter Review Committee, whatever happens tonight. Other comments? Motion? Questions?
I'm happy to make a motion if nobody else has a comment.
Only comment is that I know it's the end, but I'm open to more discussions. I think our charter is always in need of review.
I agree. And I, I think, given the time and the litigation that we're in the middle of right now, as soon as we have some directions ourself, then we're ready to call you back to get to work, you know, or if you're still willing to serve on it, continue the conversation.
I can just share with you that every single charter member thought that term limits were healthy.
Yes. And I agree. I too think that it's something important and we need to take a look at. So with that, I move to note and file the report. And the providing direction, I think we did provide directions. So we, you are officially dismissed as the 2022 Charter Review Committee. We appreciate you. Thank you so much.
You need a second?
Yes, I do.
Give you a second before we dismiss them?
And I did want to say Kevin Muldoon was here.
Yes, we did see him.
But he had early call, work call tomorrow morning. So he had to leave. But he was here and he hung out as long as he could.
He was on camera speaking. So we, yes. So thank you all for your hard work. Appreciate it.
We appreciate it. Thank you for the privilege.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any other discussion? Going once, going twice. Again, Charter Review Committee members, thank you for your service. Clearly there's disagreement even on the council about term limits, but it goes to show that this is a conversation for another day. Really appreciate all of you starting it for us. Madam City Clerk, go ahead and call the roll.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz.
Yes. All right. Motion passes. Thank you Charter Review Committee for your work. And now officially, you are dismissed. Thank you so much. Colleagues, that brings us to our final report of the evening. Actually, before I take the final report, we are approaching 11:00 PM. Can I get a motion to extend?
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting past 11:00 PM.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? I'll just say, I don't like term limits. I don't like time limits. See? Sorry, just a little joke from the East Coast. All in favor, show of hands. All right, Madam City Clerk, that's a four oh. We're going to continue past 11:00. Final report of the evening is our review of the general funds financial status as of December 31, 2023, and adoption of a resolution amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget for the purpose of mid-year adjustments. Mrs. Jennifer Becker, our Financial Services Director, please present the report.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm Jennifer Becker with the Financial Services Department, and I'm here tonight to present you with our mid-year financial report. We recently closed our second quarter, which is the halfway point of our fiscal year. So this is a good time to take a look at the status of revenues and expenses and make adjustments where needed so we can head into next year's budget process ready to go. And I will do my best to keep this entertaining at this late hour. All right, we've got our presentation here. So we'll start with a look at the overall economy before jumping into our second quarter general fund results. Next, we'll review some of the highlights from our list of mid-year appropriation requests. We'll incorporate those requests into an updated general fund year-end projection and a five-year forecast. And lastly, we will preview our upcoming budget process for the fiscal year 24-25. So with that, let's begin. So we're a couple months into 2024, and now is a good time to take a look at the state of the overall economy. For a couple years now, we've heard the predictions from economists in the media that the looming recession is right around the corner. And here we are in 2024, and no recession has arrived. Instead, we saw stronger-than-expected GDP growth, consistent real wage growth across most sectors, and the Consumer Confidence Index hitting a two-year high last month. Contributing to that improved economic outlook has been the recent easing of inflation. The December 2023 Consumer Price Index, or CPI, was at 3.4%, down from its peak of over 8% in July 2022. Those post-pandemic federal stimulus programs are winding to a close, and the global supply chains are beginning to untangle themselves, bringing both demand and supply a little bit more into balance, while those consecutive quarters of federal interest rate hikes have also served to cool inflation. And as inflation eases, we've also seen interest rates begin to stabilize, as the Federal Reserve has opted not to increase rates in the last two quarters, following 11 consecutive quarters of interest rate hikes. In fact, many economists are predicting reductions in interest rates later in 2024, though it's unlikely we'll be seeing those 2% mortgage rates from years ago anytime soon. One of the most important economic developments of the past year was a significant lowering of inflation without a substantial rise in the national unemployment rate. Now, while Burbank has experienced higher unemployment than much of the country in recent months, that had everything to do with the recent writers and actors' strike and isn't really indicative of any outside economic forces. It's still a tight labor market in many sectors, with shortages and recruitment challenges continuing to persist. This is tough on employers, but great for workers who are experiencing that real wage growth as a result. Now, all of this is positive news, but the good, big question is can and will the US economy continue on this path? Sadly, the biggest risk to our economy in 2024 might be those who are intent on leading it. We likely have a very contentious federal election coming up towards the end of the year. And after the last couple of cycles, we know that pretty much anything can happen as a result of that. Lengthy disputes of election results, rising geopolitical conflicts, and Congress's inability to raise the debt ceiling or pass even the most basic appropriation bills, all threaten to destabilize the economy and knock us off this course of steady and stable growth that we've all been enjoying today. And of course, the state of California is experiencing its own budget woes, which we'll take a look at next. This month, Governor Newsom revealed his 2024-25 proposed budget for the state of California, which includes $291.5 billion in total state funding, with $207.8 billion of those dollars coming from the general fund. The state budget projects a $37.9 billion shortfall for the coming year, though the Legislative Analyst Office originally projected a deficit as high as $68 billion. It's always a bit of a concern to me when those two offices are that far apart on their projections. It's kind of an interesting chain of events that led to this shortfall, going all the way back to fiscal year 22-23. The state, as you know, is heavily reliant on a very progressive personal income tax, which relies on the performance of high-income earners in California. Well, in 2023, the federal government granted a six-month extension for filing taxes to anyone living in California who was impacted by last year's devastating winter storms. Now, nearly every county in California was affected, and as a result, the state received the majority of its 2022-23 tax revenues months after it already adopted its budget for 23-24. While the state clearly did not account for a precipitous drop in capital gains tax revenue due to the poor performance of the stock market in 2022. And once those revenues started rolling in, they realized not only were their 22-23 revenue going to fall short of projections, but their 23-24 revenues were going to come up short as well. So now we have two years' worth of deficits that the state has to dig its way out of. And the governor is proposing to do so by drawing on those rainy day funds and reserves set aside in prior years, in addition to reducing programs, shifting general fund expenses to other funds, and spreading the funding of certain items over a three-year period. We've analyzed their proposal, and as of now, we do not estimate any direct financial impact to Burbank. But of course, we will continue to monitor the state budget process as it works its way towards approval, and we'll keep the council updated if anything changes. Now, here in Burbank, our general fund revenues have continued to grow at a very stable pace, boosted by solid growth in consumer spending and new development throughout the city. Overall, revenues are coming in at 5.2% over our original budgeted projections. Tourism is going strong, as evidenced by our hotel and parking tax revenues, and demand for all city services, from permits to passports, remains high. There's no question that the writers and actors' strikes left an impact on our economy, which we'll discuss in a moment. But even those events did little to slow the overall growth in Burbank's economy. On the flip side, our citywide costs do continue to climb alongside our revenue growth. While inflation has slowed and supply chain-related shortages are easing, we are still experiencing higher prices across the board for goods, services, and commodities. Low unemployment continues to create labor shortages, and recruitment remains a challenge in certain fields, increasing the need for overtime and outside consulting services. So let's dive into the actual numbers and take a look at Burbank's second quarter results for 23-24, starting with revenues. You may remember back in November, when we brought to you our first quarter report, we made some significant adjustments to projections for some of our revenue categories for a net increase of $7 million. We also noted a few other revenue sources on our watch list, which we would potentially bring back for further adjustment if needed. Well, tonight, we are going to do just that and recommend adjustments to three additional revenue categories for a net increase of over $4.6 million. This brings our total recurring general fund revenue for the current fiscal year from an original projection of $222 million up to a revised projection of three, of $233 million, an increase of 5.2%. Now, I'll quickly go through some of those more notable revenue category updates we have for you tonight. And we'll start with sales tax. Our most recent report of sales tax revenues received were up from the third quarter of 2023, representing July through September. Burbank's receipts, again, were up 5.2% from the same quarter in the prior year on an adjusted basis. In comparison, LA County receipts were actually down 2.4%, and the state of California overall was down 1.7%. So Burbank is definitely bucking the trend here. Interestingly, the big story here is within the autos and transportation category. While we legally can't reveal specifics on individual retailers, a single allocation adjustment within this category is largely responsible for this 56% increase. The California Department of Tax and Fee Administration is investigating this further to ensure there weren't any misallocations in prior quarters, and is going to work with this retailer to mitigate future errors. Restaurants and hotels were also up 18.4%. We do believe that a portion of this is due to a reporting error with a different retailer. But regardless, Burbank's casual dining and quick-service restaurant categories continue their strong growth every quarter. Business and industry was really the only dark spot here in this quarter's sales tax returns, down 26% from the same quarter the prior year. This comes as no surprise, as the writers and actors' strikes were both at their peak during this time. Motion picture and equipment sales plummeted 49% during this quarter as a result. Overall, though, our third quarter returns are positive, which resulted in higher county pool allocations to the city of Burbank. And I should note, though, that our Measure P, our transactions, transactions and use tax, is actually down 2.7% this quarter. This is largely due to the way auto sales are allocated, as non-residents do not pay the TUT when they buy a vehicle in Burbank. So essentially, Measure P experienced the decline in the business category due to the strikes, without the benefit of the offsetting bump in auto sales that benefited our traditional sales tax results. So while we held off on any adjustments to sales tax during the first quarter report as we braced for the impact of the strikes, we now feel pretty confident that this event is behind us, and we're going to go ahead and increase our fiscal year 23-24 revenue projections by $3.1 million. Moving on to property tax, as we presented during the first quarter report, fiscal year 23, I'm sorry, fiscal year 22-23 citywide assessed valuations increased by an impressive 9.7% or $2.8 billion, resulting in an increase to our 23-24 property tax revenue forecast of $4 million, which we adjusted in the prior quarter. The main drivers of this increase were the reassessments of new development in the city, strong gains in residential and commercial values throughout Burbank, which are reflected when properties change ownership, along with an increase in the values of unsecured property, such as airplanes and industrial equipment, of which we have a great amount in Burbank. The median single-family home price in Burbank for the fourth quarter of 2023 was $1.1 million. And this is actually down 15% from its third-quarter peak of $1.3 million. This is fairly typical of the holiday quarter, which tends to lag behind the rest of the year just because sales are slow. But it's also a reflection of the impact of those successive interest rates hikes are having on the housing market. Fortunately, the housing demand in Burbank still remains extraordinarily high, and we'll likely see further growth in 2024, especially if interest rates begin to recede, as many economists have projected. I want to take a look at two other revenue categories that we are recommending adjustments to this evening, the first being our utility users' tax, or UUT revenues. UUT is applied to electric, gas, and telecom services throughout the city. And while we did forecast an increase in these revenues due to the adopted electric rate increase, the results from the first half of the year have actually exceeded our expectations. This is largely due to an increase in both the price of natural gas and the increased consumption of gas due to some of the cold temperatures experienced in the latter half of 2023. Additionally, the continued return to in-person work and activities for some of Burbank's largest employers has resulted in a rise in overall utility usage among our commercial customers. Altogether, we are revising our forecast for UUT revenues by $887,000 from the originally adopted 23-24 projections. Next up is building permits. At the end of the second quarter, revenues from park, from building permits were at 80.8% of our adopted projections for 23-24. This revenue boon is mostly attributable to several large developments that have applied for permits during the current year. And we tend to treat those for permits during the current year, and we tend to treat those more as one-time in nature because of the scale of those projects. However, we are also seeing increases in our day-to-day permit activity, and that's largely a result of the continuing stream of accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, permits that continue to flow into the community development department. As a result of both of these factors, we are increasing our 2324 revenue projections by $661,000 for this category. And I'll just touch on a couple other categories, moving on to our transient occupancy tax, or TOT. You may remember, we adjusted this revenue up by $1.5 million during the first quarter, with tourism still growing quite nicely since the pandemic. The chart here shows the last five years of hotel occupancy rates in those blue bars, with the orange line representing the average daily room rate collected by our hotels. So while occupancy has not quite reached pre-pandemic levels, you can see that ADR has long surpassed the rates of 2019, likely due to inflation. One thing to note here in this category is the opening of the brand-new Cambria Hotel in December of 2023. While it's still too soon to have any real revenue data from this hotel, we're certainly confident it will be a boost to our revenues in the coming months and have factored that projection into our forecast for the upcoming budget year. And lastly, transient parking tax, or TPT, revenue is still going strong and has actually well surpassed its pre-pandemic performance. As you've heard me say before, 90% of our TPT revenue is derived from parking lots surrounding the Hollywood Burbank Airport, and the chart here shows monthly passenger counts at the airport. And you can see from those last couple of blue bars that holiday travel was way up in November and December of 2023. Having already increased our forecast by $1 million in the last quarter, we are not recommending any further adjustments but are confident that we will meet our forecasted revenue projections for TPT this year. Okay, now I'm going to switch modes from revenues to expenditures and take a look at our second quarter expenditure results. Overall, expenditures are at 46.3%, which coincides with the general expectation of 50% for the halfway point in the fiscal year. The fire department is the only department trending just slightly above budget at 52%, which is typical for them at this point in the year. That overage is largely due to reimbursable strike team expenses incurred during the busy fire season, in addition to constant staffing costs required to maintain their minimum staffing levels. If we factor in the anticipated revenue from those strike team reimbursements, the fire department's expenditures will fall within budget, and all other departments are at or below their anticipated expenditures for the current fiscal year. That being said, we do have several mid-year budget requests for this year before you tonight. Typically, a mid-year request is submitted when there are unforeseen or unanticipated expenses that exceed a department's budget authority, or when the city receives a grant or other one-time revenue that needs appropriation. For the general fund, we have approximately $1.5 million in appropriation requests, with $545,000 offset by increased revenues or the use of restricted funds, for a net impact of just under $946,000. With our non-general funds, we have a total of $2.5 million in appropriation requests, offset by roughly $190,000 in revenues, for a net impact of $2.3 million. These next couple slides will highlight a few of the more significant appropriations being requested this evening. A detailed summary of every line item request can be found in Attachment Four of this report. So within the general fund, the Parks and Recreation Department is requesting to appropriate additional funds for contract instructors that are offset by the registration revenue for these popular classes that they provide. CDD is requesting to appropriate revenues received from the National Opioid Settlement to enter into a contract with Boys and Girls Club for an opioid prevention program. The Library Services Department is requesting budget dollars to fund a media industry job fair in partnership with Woodbury University. And lastly, the Police Department is requesting additional funds to expand their pilot parking prevention program from five parking control officers to eight officers, which will be partially offset by parking control revenue. Within our non-general funds, Parks is requesting funds to address some newly discovered slope failures and damaged irrigation at DeBel Golf Course as a result of the 2023 rainstorms. Public Works is requesting to appropriate refuse funds for an SB 1383 local assistance grant through CalRecycle. And BWP has two requests before you this evening. Within the Water Fund, they are requesting an increase of their appropriation for the advanced water metering project, and the Electric Fund is requesting additional dollars for consulting services to help provide design and engineering support for large developments. So given all that information I just presented, let's take a look at where we stand with our projected general fund balance for the current year. Based on our adopted revenues, our recommended first quarter and second quarter revenue revisions, and our adopted budget appropriations, we are projecting a year-end recurring balance of $15.8 million for fiscal year 202324. With the 2223 fiscal year now officially closed, we can report that we finished the year with $44 million in general fund spendable balance. Add to that 4.3 million in projected budget savings and 4.1 million in one-time resources. From that, we fully funded our reserves with 4.3 million. We adopted 20.8 million in one-time items for the current year. We made an additional payment to CalPERS of 2.9 million, and we deposited 5.8 million into our Section 115 trust. We've also had a total of $7.9 million in new general fund appropriations approved by the city council since the adoption of the budget. Assuming the approval of $945,000 in general fund mid-year requests, net of revenue this evening, we project that we will end the year with a non-recurring balance of just under $10 million. So adding together that projected recurring balance of $15.8 million and our projected non-recurring balance of $10 million from the previous two slides, we get a total projected general fund spendable balance of $25.8 million at the end of fiscal year 2324. So let's look at how those revised numbers play into our updated general fund five-year forecast. The chart here displays projected recurring revenue and recurring expenses for the next five years. As reported on the previous slides, the city now has a recurring budget balance in the current year of $15.8 million, and we expect to see that number decrease to $6 million in fiscal year 2425, as we roll in the recurring impacts of some of the recently approved MOUs, along with some other known cost increases for the current year. Beyond fiscal year 2425, you'll see that our recurring balance declines slightly each year as projected expenditure growth outpaces projected revenues. On a cash basis, the city's position is very strong, with that available spendable balance of $25.8 million growing to $41.2 million over the next five years. This gives the city a comfortable cushion against a potential future unexpected expense or economic event, and it also provides the city council with the opportunity to make strategic investments in areas that could provide the city with more recurring savings in the future, such as paying down pension costs or other liabilities. Of course, our forecast is based on what we know today, and we make frequent updates as circumstances surrounding our assumptions are constantly changing. This slide looks at some of those unknowns that are always acting to help our forecast. Evidenced by our significant growth in assessed value, our revenue base continues to expand as more developments come online in the city. These developments provide us with additional revenue in the form of property tax, UUT, and in many cases, business tax, sales tax, or TOT, depending on the type of development. With the strikes now behind us, our business and retail sectors continue their steady growth, buoyed by a return to the office for many of the Burbank's workers. And tourism continues to grow at a relatively stable pace, even now as we are well past our pandemic recovery phase. Our city council has been making wise decisions with these increased revenue streams in recent years, putting dollars towards paying down our pension liabilities to reduce future recurring costs, and increasing our general fund reserves to ensure a strong cash position for the city that can mitigate the impacts of any future unanticipated events. Now, looking on the flip side, while the recession talk is easing, our state budget troubles certainly are not, and things don't look better at the national level either with a very contentious election looming. Additionally, we are still operating in a very tight labor market, which will continue to impact recruitment and put pressure on the costs of both city and contract labor. And of course, CalPERS investments are subject to the same fluctuations in the economy that we are, and while they came close to breaking even last year, it is clear that they are coming up short on their assumptions more often than they are achieving them. And even if CalPERS does have a great investment year, they will likely use those returns to offset more changes to their assumptions, lowering the discount rate like they did in 2021, which will also impact Burbank's future pension costs. But as a reminder, the city has nearly $109 million in available one-time resources to apply strategically towards making future investments. In addition to the general fund projected fund balance, as we discussed earlier, we have our fully funded formal reserves totaling over $54 million. In addition, we have our compensated absences reserve at $3.6 million, $900,000 in remaining balance from our RDA loan repayments, and our Section 115 pension trust with a balance of $24 million. Altogether, we have one-time funds totaling roughly 50% of the total annual general fund budget. And speaking of budget, our fiscal year, I can't even believe it's 202425, budget process is underway, with all departments actively updating their projections and expenses for the coming year. As the five-year forecast showed us, we are projecting a recurring balance of roughly $6 million, which represents about 2.5% of the projected recurring budget, but this balance dropped to $1.2 million in year five of our forecast, and of course, does not include any new budget requests for the coming year. We will be entering the year with that $25.8 million cash balance that we can utilize towards one-time expenses and investments. And speaking of, as part of our budget, we will be bringing back a request to continue with year two of the council's pension funding plan in order to generate future recurring savings, as well as a recommendation to contribute to our Section 115 trust. So here's a timeline of what that budget process will look like. We plan to distribute our proposed budget no later than May 2nd. On May 7th, we have a scheduled dedicated city council meeting to focus entirely on budget, with a continuation of our budget presentations on May 21st, and then our public hearing and adoption of our citywide budget will take place on June 4th. And with that, we recommend that the city council approve the resolution amending the fiscal year 2425 adopted budget for the purpose of mid-year adjustments. I'd like to thank my staff, Leanna McGurk, Susan Langford, and Joy Escalante for assisting with the preparation of this report, and our department heads are, of course, all here tonight to answer questions about their mid-year requests, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Becker. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment cards?
No, we do not.
Okay, there being no public comment, let's open it up to questions from the council or comments. Anyone like to lead us off? Councilmember Mullins, looks like she has her hand ready to go on the mic.
Yes, I do. I actually have a question. On the staff report, page 8 of 11, Table 3, in regards to the pension. Got it?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to understand, I know we've been paying down our pension liability.
Correct.
So in 2223, we're at 22%, and I'm just going across the board, pick-on police, the first one, and then 23, 24.1, 23, but I notice the dollar amount, the police liability payment, the fire, and the miscellaneous are increasing as we go into 2526. It kind of doesn't make sense if you're paying it down in the percentage. They're also going down, but the liability, the actual dollar amounts are higher. Can you explain the theory behind this calculation?
Absolutely. There are two ways in which we pay for pension. The first is that normal cost rate, which you will see as the percent of salaries. So the normal cost rate is essentially the cost of the employees we have today and the cost of providing that pension benefit to them. You can see over time, those are actually starting to trend a little bit down for the first time in a very long time, and that's largely to do with the fact that as our workforce ages, we're getting more employees that are part of PAPRA who were hired after 2013, who get a different benefit plan, so that's reducing the cost of the pension for those employees moving forward. The second piece that we pay CalPERS is our annual unfunded actuarial liability payment. Now, this is sort of the dollars owed for previous years for our pension costs. So these, this happens when, you know, say you have a certain amount funded in your pension, but then, you know, CalPERS may have an investment loss, which means you're not fully funded. What we're essentially doing is paying off the difference between our percent funded, which I think now we're averaging in the 70s, and trying to get us to 100%. So it's sort of like a mortgage payment. You're paying on these balances that you owe in order to meet 100% of your pension liabilities. Now, CalPERS does an actuarial every year, and they update their assumptions, so this is never a fixed amount like it would be for a 30-year mortgage, for example. It's always changing because their assumptions are always changing. So for example, if they lower the discount rate, you would see your UAL costs go up, or if they change their assumptions like they did a couple years ago, where they revised the life expectancy for CalPERS members, you would also see that amount goes up because they're assuming your liability is higher. So when they phase in these changes to assumptions, it's typically phased in over multiple years, so that's why you sort of see those dollar amounts increasing. So we are paying towards our pension, which makes those future UAL costs lower than if we did not pay them, but it isn't actually reducing our UAL costs yet. There will come a point in time where we sort of kind of hit that peak and then start tailing off on the other end, and what we're doing with those UAL payments that we make is we're trying to apply them to the lines that are at that peak, so rather than going up and then cascading down, we're trying to cut off the top of them out, and so we're not seeing those huge increases in future years. It's probably more than you asked for, but...
No, and the re, well, there's a couple of reasons I ask, because I know we've been paying on our pension liability. The second thing is our PAPRA, I think we were informed it's about 66% of our employees who are now under PAPRA, so I would assume that our liability would go down instead of increasing by year 202526. And so when I noticed the numbers are going actually the opposite side, it's, it kind of makes you question, so why is it going this way instead of continuing to drop, giving all the facts that you have stated?
It has much more to do with what CalPERS earns on their investment earnings, you know, the amount we're contributing, while helpful, and it did lower our payment by several hundred thousand for next year compared to what we would have paid had we not made that additional payment. Their investment earnings still have a lot more to do, so you see it actually went down from fiscal year 2223 to 2324, and that's because that was the year where they had those big 21% returns, but then the following year, they had the 4% loss. We contributed some money, which sort of offset the impact of that loss, but it didn't entirely offset all of the increase that we received as a result of that, so...
So it would be even higher if we were not taking the measures that we were taking?
Correct. You're welcome.
Thank you. Who's next? Councilmember Anthony?
Yeah, on Attachment Four, page 3, number 11, Library Services is requesting $35,000 for private contractual services. Can I hear a little bit about what that money is for and what's that going to go towards?
Yes, I see Ms. Goldman making her way here.
Number 11.
Good evening. Elizabeth Goldman, Library Services. So this is the job fair, yes?
Yes.
I was just wanting to make sure it's the right one. So this was originally way back, there was a, some council discussion about having this media industry job fair, and then, of course, we had the strikes, so we put it on hold. First, we didn't get, we were, the library was still new to taking over Job Connect, so, and then the strikes happened, so now the strikes are resolved, and we've had a couple good conversations with Woodbury. I should say they are not officially committed to be our partner on it because it hasn't been funded yet, so I did tell them I would say that if I got asked out loud, but it seems like it's going to go well. They have a good space available for us, and, and they have industry contacts, we have industry contacts, so we are looking at this point for spring or summer is our hope that we can pull this off. It may not end up in the end costing as much as we put in here, but of course, at the time we were submitting these, I wanted to make sure we would have sufficient funds.
And for the $35,000, what do you envision this media jobs fair being?
So our goal for the first go-around, I think, is to have at least 20 employers there. We do, at the council request, want to focus on the media industry. We also will have, of course, the city of Burbank, the Library Services veterans, well, we'll invite veterans... Well, we'll invite Veterans Administration for Duco Job Center and some other agencies like that. One of the great things Woodbury brings to the table besides space is a student body who would be participants. So some of the challenges of job fairs, to get employers to come, then you need to have an audience for them. And to get the audience to come, you need to have employers there. So this is our first time as a city trying this type of job fair. We'll see how it goes. But we're hoping with the combination of players involved that we can have, um, some of it, um, the bulk of it would just be your typical, you know, booths that people can go around and visit by being on the campus, um, especially depending on the time of day and day of the week, we organize it. We can also have access to some classroom space and provide some learning opportunities, maybe some panel discussions, networking opportunities. Uh, we are, as you know, running the Job Connect Plus program at the library right now. And the networking aspect of that has turned out to be a really huge and important for the participants. So, so, uh, finding ways to add to it where people can maybe get some advice and practice and things like that. Uh, the bulk of the funding will most likely go to, um, providing, uh, to use the Woodbury campus, we, um, use their catering. And so that might be for the employers, speakers, people like that, to provide some food and, and potentially some stipends for people participating. Any AV equipment or things like that that we might need.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate you going through that with me. Thank you. Uh, that was my only question.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Becker. You always answer most of my questions in your presentations, and I appreciate the amount of detail you include in there. Seriously, thank you for that. And then thank you for adding to the theme of our city and media, because you took us on a movie there. The first half was very scary in talking about, I, I guess, the global economy, our, our country's economy, state's economy. But I'm glad to hear that the upswing of that is that we're doing good. And not to take us down again, but have you considered how the potential future media industry strikes could affect our budget? Because there are talks of further strikes this year.
I mean, yes, absolutely. We've now had sort of a, a sampling of what that looks like, right? So, uh, just by having the strikes go on, and we certainly wouldn't want to see that again, especially two at one time. Uh, we pretty much know what the impact would be to the city. We were fortunate in that we had some other good news happen at the same time, which sort of mitigated the impacts of those strikes. But if they were going to continue longer, right, they start to kind of snowball. Uh, and we could be in for like a much rockier road if we were to have a, a prolonged, uh, absence of, uh, you know, an entire industry within our community. Uh, you know, it, it definitely, uh, makes you think about, you know, the need to diversify and the need to, you know, be prepared for future action, because I know we are hearing things in the industry that could happen in the future.
And if I could, uh, fortunately, as, as, uh, uh, Ms. Becker said, we do have all our formal reserves. So we have one-time money along with our formal reserves, which are fully funded. So, so we're able to, not that we want it, but we're able to embrace, uh, at least short-term, uh, a good while, uh, any issues. So, uh, so we're positioned well, although hopefully things work out.
Do you have a follow-up?
I've, just some insight. So Monday, um, IATSE starts their negotiations. They're starting early because they don't want to be caught unawares. They don't want the industry to be caught unaware, so we will know much further ahead of time this go-around, um, as opposed to last year.
I, I've heard the same thing, which is why I, I'm glad we're looking at it because I agree with the idea that we had a good thing happen at the same time. But I don't know if that's going to be what happens again. And also, my concern is more how do these strikes, on top of the strikes we just had, affect the largest portion of our economy?
Yeah, and obviously there's more concern for the individuals impacted by the strikes than for the city as a whole. Like, like Mr. Hess mentioned, you know, the council in previous years has made the decision to increase our reserves, uh, because we analyzed that risk and knew that we probably should have more, uh, saved up for an event like this. So I feel very confident that the city could weather that. Um, because eventually a labor strike does end, so you do sort of consider it a one-time event. But, uh, fortunately, we're well-prepared, and that's because of prior actions, you know, taken here as part of the budget process and with this council.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the work that you and your staff put into this.
Thank you.
Very confident of you.
All right. Thank you, colleagues. I so appreciate the presentation that I'm only going to ask one question, because my appreciation is I'll send you home a little faster here. Uh, one question I have, Mrs. Becker. Great, uh, great job. I'm really encouraged by the five-year projection. Um, as you're crafting the budget, are you looking at other opportunities for us to further our investments in, in prepaying our unfunded pension liability? Is that something that we should be looking forward to seeing come May?
Absolutely. We will bring back, uh, year two of the pension funding plan that was adopted as part of last year's budget. And, you know, we're always looking at ways to enhance that as well, uh, depending on available cash and timing.
Fantastic. Uh, just from my perspective, highly encourage you to do that. I, I think we are in solid financial condition, um, thanks in, in large measure to your leadership and that of your team. Um, but, you know, the one thing that always gives me a little heartburn is just our pension obligations. Those are very fixed set costs. And so always appreciate your creativity in looking how we can repay some of that, some of that unfunded liability. So that's all the question I have. Uh, do any of my colleagues have additional questions or comments?
Doesn't look like it, Mr. Mayor, so I'm happy to adopt a motion here.
Okay, go right ahead.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution of the council of the city of Burbank amending the budget of fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four for the purpose of mid-year adjustments.
Second.
Okay, first and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations. Motion passes. Uh, that concludes our reports this evening. We're almost there, folks. Um, now we're moving on to council comments. So we will be hearing, uh, from council members, uh, including their reporting on attendance at conferences, regional meetings, and/or community events. I'm feeling that Councilmember Anthony is just itching to go first tonight.
I am, I am. Uh, first, I want to, uh, um, congratulate, um, the first step in our budget process. We'll come back with that, uh, later in the year. And, um, I look forward to the, the mayor, uh, going to Oretzo, Italy. Uh, have fun. Um, let's see, I attended the, um, Friday, February twenty-third, uh, third-grade student tour of City Hall. That was very fun. Um, Emerson Elementary School, third-grade class, Ms. Lore showed up with her, uh, her kiddos, and they got a tour of City Hall. And we, uh, walked them through local government. That was fun. Um, on Monday, the twenty-sixth, uh, I had a meeting with the, uh, president of the, uh, Burbank Chamber of Commerce and the owner and operator of Tallyrand to discuss the BRT on Olive. And later that morning, we had the Armenian Business Delegation. Uh, it was a networking event right next door at, um, the Community Services Building. And a lot of great, um, businesses showed up, and it was a interesting, uh, discussion. And that's it.
Thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember Mullins, you look like you're ready.
I am. Um, so on Valentine's Day, February fourteenth, I attended, uh, thank you breakfast for, at Belmont Village Senior Living's, uh, for the celebrated first responders. So we got to spend the morning with the seniors and our first responders. It was really nice. Um, on the twenty-first Wednesday, attended the Police Commission Meeting. They, um, the chief made a presentation regarding the military equipment. Um, also, uh, discussed the safety flyer for, uh, drivers who are purchased, young drivers, I should say, who are purchasing their first cars. It's a campaign that, uh, a few commissioners are working on. And so we, uh, they presented that. Also, the chief talked about the hiring process. Uh, it was specifically talked about, like, the captain position, but he kind of went in general in regards to the hiring process and the, and the steps that they, they take to get to, um, the candidate. Uh, we attended on February twenty-second, the Second Century Tour at Warner. Amazing building, um, really had a great time walking around and seeing all the, um, different floors and the different themes in the building. Uh, Monday, February twenty-sixth, we had the networking, uh, event with the Armenian Business Delegations. That was with Councilmember Anthony and the Vice Mayor were there. Um, and yesterday, I attended the Transportation Commission Meeting. Lots of good discussions on, um, the evaluation of bicycle and pedestrian, um, counts. Also, uh, talked in length about business cards and whether they should have business cards or not. So again, it was an interesting dialogue, and that's all I have to report on.
Outstanding. Vice Mayor, you're up.
Alrighty. So on Thursday, February twenty-second, at eight AM, I attended the Valley Economic Alliance Board of Directors Meeting along with Councilmember Takahashi. Wonderful discussion about all the things we're doing with our partners across the valley to uphold our wonderful businesses here. Um, at ten AM, I had the pleasure of also going on the Second Century Tour with my colleagues. We saw a lot of great things, um, a lot of different themes in that building. It's, it's a beautiful structure. And at, um, Friday, February twenty-third, I also attended, um, the Emerson Elementary School Tour. It was great. The third-grade students had wonderful questions for us. They were very heavy questions about our policymaking and our views on Burbank for the future. So we were happy to host them and happy to host any other students that would like to come and ask us some questions here at City Hall. Um, I also attended a tour of Providence St. Joseph Medical Center um, and heard a briefing about some of the things that are working at both within the hospital and within the community, which was very informative. And on Saturday, February twenty-fourth, I had a meeting with Cub Scouts to talk about my role in government and also answer some of their very riveting questions on the environment. Our young people are very concerned about the environment. Um, and then Monday, February twenty-sixth, I had the honor and privilege of giving remarks and welcoming the Armenian Business Delegation to the city of Burbank. It was a pleasure to attend along with my colleagues and hear about the amazing businesses that would love to import here to Burbank. So that is all I have.
You also received a, uh, an appointment this week, yes?
Oh, yes. I don't know if that's public yet, but.
Okay.
It was definitely sent to the city clerk's office and then to us. I was appointed as the District Forty-two Representative for Southern California Association of Governments. So happy to represent our city, another regional project.
All right, congratulations, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm up. So February fourteenth, um, you know, did a lot of personal stuff. But February fifteenth, I did some city stuff. So we had a meeting with the Child Care Resource Center about the state of childcare, uh, here in the city of Burbank. I know that's going to be a point of continued discussion with the council. I also, uh, with our city manager, uh, presented our monthly report to the Burbank Chamber of Commerce, talked about, um, several items that we talked about tonight and a whole bunch more. Um, Saturday, February seventeenth, I just want to emphasize one more time how really incredible it was to be there for the inaugural, uh, Burbank Adaptive Sports Expo. And as you said, Councilmember Anthony, to actually play wheelchair rugby and really, like, it's one thing to see it, it's another thing to actually experience it. And I got to say, they are incredible athletes. And yes, if you're wondering, I got my butt kicked, but I had fun, so that makes it fun. Um, zooming ahead, Wednesday, the twenty-first, I took a couple of meetings with some concerned, uh, BUSD parents, um, which is going to segue nicely into our upcoming joint meeting in April. Um, also had a chance to meet the new staff of the US Army Recruiter's Office. Will continue to see them in, at community events. And of course, as they often do, they're cutting of the army cake here at Burbank City Hall. They will probably be reaching out to all of you individually, so if you haven't already met them. Uh, Nicholas and Jesse, you'll be, uh, meeting them soon, I'm sure. Uh, Thursday, the February twenty-second, uh, Second Century Warner Brothers Tour. Uh, agree with what you said, Councilmember Mullins. Uh, really incredible building, great design. Um, nice to see it up close and in person. Uh, Friday, the twenty-third, as mentioned, we have the third-grade student tour, and I really want to compliment our city clerk on putting together a fantastic program. I think we, uh, I like to think that really under your leadership, Kimberly, we probably inspired a few future, uh, council members and mayors. And hey, without term limits, you never know. You never know how many will be there. I'm just trying to keep you all awake. Come on. Uh, tour of Providence St. Joseph Medical Center. Uh, had seen the urgent care several times, first time seeing the emergency department, really well done. And then, uh, lastly, but not least, I just wanted to give you all a, a fresh report here from the, uh, APPA Legislative Rally. So I'm here with Jason Maruka, uh, Mondip Samra, um, uh, Richard, uh, all from Burbank Water and Power. We're all here doing our bit to try and advocate for, uh, permitting reform, more money. Uh, we had a great meeting this morning with Senator Alex Padilla and staff, uh, talking about everything from our chloramine boosting project to our plans to convert magnolia to hopefully a hydrogen plant. Um, lot of great support here. Obviously, we have to hope for a miracle with Congress avoiding a government shutdown this Friday. But, you know, we're very lucky to have some incredible federal representatives who are working diligently to get us those, uh, congressional grants and, and funding proposals. Um, that is all I have. Clearly, I'm not staying busy. So next up, uh, now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Do any members of the council have agenda items they'd like to introduce? Yes, Councilmember Mullins.
Um, it's not really an agenda item. Uh, I would like to ask our city clerk, uh, to possibly reevaluate the minutes from January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, uh, council meeting in regards to agenda item rank control, um, to reflect the actual original motion.
Twenty-twenty-three?
I'm sorry, um.
Twenty-twenty-four.
Twenty-twenty-four. Wrong year.
Twenty-three.
It was twenty-twenty-three. That's how far we started back. Okay, I was like, what year are we in? I know it's late tonight. Um, to reflect the motion and the, uh, the amendments in, in the minutes.
There were two friendly amendments, one by yourself and one by, uh, Councilmember Takahashi.
So, correct. So I think in the minutes, the, um, what I'm asking for, if it's possible to bring it back, to reflect those changes in the minutes, because I believe right now the minutes do not reflect the amendments. So, and it's something you can look into, and it doesn't have to be answered right now, and then, um, let us know.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Mullins. Anyone else? Going once, going twice. Uh, just one thing, city manager, if we could get a, just a take-home report, this is not an agenda item. I just wanted a status update on our RFP for waste hauling throughout the city. Just want to know where we're at in the process.
Got it.
All right, thank you very much.
Actually, sorry, I have one, one more. I was trying to rethink my thoughts at eleven fifty PM. Um, I would like, um, to ask for a future agenda item where we can talk about forming a council ad hoc committee around the media industry. I probably butchered that, Joe.
It, is this, do you need a staff report, or you just need it properly agendized for council to discuss the topic and whether it has a role?
Just properly agendized. Thank you.
Okay, with that, kitchen's closed. I don't think we have any other new items. We now adjourn the meeting in memory of Pat Wamsley to the next regular city council meeting on Tuesday, March nineteenth. You heard me correct. It's Tuesday, March nineteenth, about three weeks from today, uh, twenty-twenty-four, right here in the Burbank City Council Chamber located at two seven five East Olive Avenue on the second floor. The public may view the meeting online or on television, and you will be able to provide public comment in the following four ways. In person for general public comment, public hearings and reports to council, by calling in directly to the city council meeting at eight one eight two three eight three 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 five to speak during the general public comment period and the public hearing items only, by leaving an e-comment on the city webpage, which is burbankca.gov forward slash ecomments. And lastly, by emailing city council directly at citycouncil@burbankca.gov. Thank you, everyone, and from Washington DC, have a good night.